Franklin County Board of County Commissioners now in session for this regular meeting Tuesday, June 4th. Glad to see everyone here. We do have a lot of items on the agenda today, so we'll go ahead and get started. If you would, please let's stand and do prayer and pledge. Father, I thank you today for your hand in our life. Help us, Lord, to acknowledge and understand, Lord, that there are things we just don't know. There's wisdom we need. There's understanding we must gain. Father, we look to you today to your strength. Let your strength be made perfect in our weakness. Help us in our decision making today. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Mr. Maroon, do we have any changes to the agenda? Or additions to the agenda?
No additions. A couple of changes, especially for those that picked up an agenda at the door. Speak of Ms. Griffiths. Ms. Griffiths had some changes that were submitted at six last night. The updated report, it was online. It was updated online. It was updated in your package, but I had to put them extra at the desk.
Okay.
When people came in. So that is the only change I see. I don't know, Commissioners, and I might just go ahead and say, so we know there's been a topic recently about an accessory structure. That, and there might be a few speakers that want to speak on it online or basically here. I don't know if at some point you want to pull that, maybe after we get through all the department heads and the other three presentations, you might want to take that if we have time prior to the public hearing.
Yeah.
Or just leave it fall in the order that it is.
Well, I thought about that, and the only apprehension I have with moving it up is our agenda's been published.
Yes.
And I don't want anybody at the end of the day to say they were waiting for later to speak because they seen it was later on the agenda.
Yes.
And we somehow talked about it before they were ready or...
Or before they knew we were going to.
Yes.
I got you. Speaking of which, just to remind everyone, we've only started this year. All times on the agenda are approximate, with the exception of the public hearings, which are 11:00, 11:05. Actually, the 11 o'clock public hearing was actually canceled at your last meeting. The attorney did, in fact, as he had advertised prior to that meeting, the public hearing, he didn't advertise a cancellation. But because it was, because both were advertised, I decided to put it on the agenda, but indicate it was canceled. I did get one or two emails from Alligator Point as to why it was canceled. I said because the county decided at the last meeting to make it a county-wide parking ordinance rather than just for Alligator Point.
So we're not doing that today?
We're not doing what we are doing, the one at 11:05.
Okay.
We cannot start before 11:05, but we can start anytime after, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So do I have approval of the agenda as we've discussed?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders, seconded by Commissioner Kern. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Up next, we're approving minutes and paying the county bills. Actually, it's just bills today, but we have a motion to do that.
So move.
Right. Motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, seconded by Commissioner Amerson. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Yeah, and I neglected to remove the constitutional officer, so I'm...
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, that's when I get accustomed to clerk talking to me during the meetings, and she decided to have to talk to me today, so yeah.
Okay, all right. So up next, I did talk to the three that I have in hand. Ms. Joellen Pierman, you said you want to speak on a public comment. Please come forward, state your name for the record.
My name's Joellen Pierman. I'm a resident of St. George Island. And I just, I would like to bring to your attention, we had two major fires in five weeks' time, burned to the ground. The fire hydrant situation on the island is dire. I know the plantation provides theirs, which they're HOAs. And I, the volunteer fire department has been responsible to add fire hydrants. Our growth rate has been astronomical, and we have not had a fire hydrant added in 20 years. Our ISO rating is about a nine. And I don't know, here's the thing, I don't know what the county's responsibility is. But I do know that 10% of the TDC money's allocated for public safety. And some of that needs to go to the fire, the volunteers. They have one major fundraiser, the Chili Cook-Off. And we, like I said, we have not had a fire hydrant added in 20 years. The price of them, well, in 86, they were $635. Now they're closer to about $4,000, $5,000. And then the water company maintains them for the life of the hydrant. We need so many, the plantation has added some. The plantation alone has 70 hydrants. And they're much, much less populated than the center. We have 57 in the whole center of the island. And we need more. And whatever the county can do to help, because we're sitting ducks. We, I mean, the hydrants we have are so far away, it takes so long to run the hose that we are, we're sitting ducks. And that last fire was right across the street from me. Had the wind been blowing the other direction, I would have lost my house.
Yeah.
A couple other people would have lost their houses. They did an amazing job to save the neighbor's house. It melted to side. But they saved it. But anything that can be done for us to get more hydrants on the island like yesterday would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Maroon, can you make a note of that? We need to talk to the island water department and make sure if that's actually supposed to be their responsibility. If not, we need to find a way to... These are the kind of things I was trying to mention last meeting, when I said something about we need to start being more serious about our fire departments and bring funding to our fire departments. These are the kind of things I was, you know what I mean? There's stuff that's fallen through. I love our volunteer firefighters, and I'm not, it's not in any way disparaging to them. The county needs to get more serious about the money we put into this and not just rely on MSBU funds. That's what I was trying to say last meeting, because there are things like this that are just falling through the cracks that make a difference. So...
Thank you.
Not a problem.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Can I comment on that for just a second? Because I've got the same problem out there at Lanark.
Mm-hmm.
West of Lanark, they are worried to death. They have no hydrants at all out there. So then I agree completely with what you're saying. We need to be looking more at the fire department, actually what they can do with what they've got. But we need to have some mechanism in place to be able to put the money to them if they need something like that.
Yeah.
Right now, we've got this city of care bell that's trying to apply, and I think, I don't know if anyone got the email yesterday or not, but it is some support, some support letters for the city of care bell to go from sewer descent and at that time, in the western part of the district, and at that time, they're going to do the water and try to do the fire hydrant.
Yes.
So, I mean, it's something, but we may have to step in and help them like we always do.
Well, I know, just in my involvement with East Point Water and Sewer, and I'm sorry, I'm not trying to delay. I think this is a very important topic. We're responsible for hydrants. So any project we do has to include adding hydrants, period. The district is responsible for the upkeep of the hydrants. You know what I mean? I just know that because I've been serving on that board for seven years.
Yeah.
You know, so, not trying to throw anybody else under the bus, but if we can help by all means, we need to do that.
Yes, we need to.
Mr. Chairman, it's a problem countywide, really, so...
It is. Well, to not help the problem, and I know this for a fact because it happened in my neighborhood. There was a time when there was a fire, and when it's a fire, yeah, everybody's trying to get to something as quick as they can. And again, this is not disparaging to anybody. After the fire was over, I had some of my local firemen, because it was in East Point, come and ask me about a hydrant. We were having problems finding this hydrant, and when we found it, it wasn't working right. And I said, well, you were heading in the wrong direction. There's one right here. And it was literally 50 feet away from where we were talking, standing. I said, there's one right here. They said, well, I didn't know. I mean, you know, I mean, this creates problems. So they have to be over so many feet legally, you know, 70,000 feet or 1,500 feet. But increasing them is definitely not a hurting thing.
I think Commissioner Kroom was going to cut...
Yeah, I was talking about reference to District 3. I would like to look into that as well. I don't know if the city is supposed to maintain that. That comes from that, but I know out in the county, you know, there's very few. Commissioner Amerson, District as well.
The water districts of each one is responsible, but that doesn't mean we can't help or have conversations with.
Right.
At one point, the city of Appalachia, Commissioner Kroom, that I remember, they, I don't know about the city of Carebell, but I just know because I live there, is they put blue reflectors on the road so that it was, especially at night, they were easier to find all the hydrants.
A lot of those has been now either destroyed.
Yes, a move of that.
They need to go back in and put it back down.
Yes, sir.
Because I see it all the time on the 12th and 11th.
Yeah.
All right. Well, I wasn't trying to hijack the public comments, but I thought it was important enough to talk about.
Mr. Chairman, Michael, we can't hear you.
Mr. Mason, did you want to speak now or later?
About now, no.
Okay.
Still not?
Public comment does require speaker card, I'm sorry.
No, public hearings, you don't need one. Public comments, you do. I'm sorry, Mason, what about now? Still, no? Volume still low?
Well, just some corrections.
No, what I was talking about my mic, the volume's...
Better, thank you. Mason Bean, St. George Island, our ISO rating on the fire department for St. George is a four, not a nine.
Okay.
We do have three brand-new certified Class 1 firemen that are just graduating. And it's unfortunate the hydrant was so far, but I think the Public Service Commission is where we go for Gene Brown and the water company.
Okay.
They probably manage you guys, too.
Right, right, right.
Thank you.
Yep. All right. Ms. Barbara, you want to speak on public comments?
Yeah. I'm on the volunteer fire department board of the island, and we had a hydrant that was damaged at 7th Street, which I believe is the one that they used, because we got it fixed cooperating with the water company. But our water company is regulated by the PSC. The other ones y'all are talking about are not regulated by the PSC. And our water company collects money to put in infrastructure such as fire hydrants. I think one of our problems is when you get on the bayside, your lines are too small to support the fire hydrant. So there are some mechanical engineering issues that need to be looked into besides just the regulatory issues. And we're trying to get on top of it. Also, our firemen locate their fire hydrants by GPS. So there's some program out there that can make that easier. They're pretty techy over there.
Well, that's the way the, that's the way the St. George Island Water District has them.
Right.
They're the ones that actually have them GPS located. They've shared that information.
Okay.
East Point's actually working on GPS locating ours as well.
Excellent. So we're making some small improvements along the way, getting in the 21st century.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, is that something that we might could look at for legislative appropriation for this year, or is that something that...
Possible if we could find a way to write it up that makes it up pretty easy to understand. You know what I'm saying? But yeah, possible. I don't see any reason why not.
Dr. Lobbyist, Commissioner.
All right. So I do have two other speaker cards. Both of them said they want to speak on the agenda item. It was Mr. Mason Bean and Mr. Mike King. All right. All right. So we'll go into the department directors' reports. Ms. Virginia, you here for Howard? Where's Howard about to... Oh, I couldn't see you. Howard, come on up. I seen her, but I didn't see you, sir, sorry.
Yeah, but he is.
He was trying to hide. I know how you are.
Good morning, Commissioner. How y'all doing this morning? I've got no action items.
All right.
But we have been wide open, so, you know, grass season, culvert and driveways and building roads, so...
Yes.
And still, as y'all can see, shoulder of inmates.
Yeah.
We're still, still down to four inmates a day, so. And the way it looks, it's not going to get no better, so...
Mr. Howard, how many, how many vans are we taking to collect four inmates?
I just take two trucks. We ain't got no vans. There's two trucks up there, that's all we take.
Okay.
Just in case we get an extra one, so...
Right. Okay. Well, it's always possible, sir.
Yes, sir.
I just wish there was a way we would know before we went over there how many were going to...
Yeah.
That would be great. But anyway, anyone have anything for Mr. Neighbors?
Mr. Chairman, just real quick, I saw you guys out working in East Point this morning, so kudos to them. I know that's a always-going-on task is mowing grass. There is no such thing as non-grass-cutting season in Florida anymore. But I also wanted to let the public know that I contacted Benny with FDOT. He works, he's in charge of Weber, which is the FDOT contractor, to mow the actual 98 ditches, because I've had issues with driveways being blocked. They were having some equipment issues, but he assured me that once I got back up and running, he was going to try to work on the 98 side.
And what they cut, it looked good, too.
Good.
They did cut it.
They repaired it, and they cut, and then it broke again, so they had to go back to the shop, so, but he assured me that they were working on it.
And then we also got two, two machines that got mower heads. We've been running them. One of them, I think, to start the other one up, too, to try to, you know, keep the ditches good, so...
Mr. Howard, I do have a device I run across lately and just doing research on different stuff to try to help.
Mm-hmm.
That, and I don't know if I mentioned this to you yet or not, but I think we need to look at it ahead of our budget time. I don't think it's a very expensive device.
Mm-hmm.
But it would help you guys in trying to get rid of beavers or anything outside of this blocking, a culvert.
Mm.
Basically, what it is, you can use the tractor to do it. You push it in, and then you can pull a lever, and it spring loads it and pulls it out. It opens up to the edge of the culvert. So whatever's in there, it'll pull it out instead of trying to manually do that kind of stuff.
Yeah, we looked at that, and that would work. That would help a lot, you know, especially a lot of places where a lot of your pipes and stuff stop up.
Right.
A lot of the dirt flows up in them. We bench it through the year and it starts completely up, so...
Maybe now, before we start our budget stuff, if we can get a quote on what one of them might be, it might would help.
We'd do it.
And then we'll at least come look at it.
Mm-hmm. I don't think a whole lot, like you said.
I don't think there are.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Howard, did you get out there to Alligator Point and take care of that asphalt?
We hadn't got to it, we hadn't got to it yet.
Okay.
But we, hopefully, one day this week, we try to get a, probably maybe two loads
Okay.
on the edge of the beach, right at the beach line, so it's way away from the water, so...
Okay, we'll do that. And also, Robertson Roberts is on 67 now paving, so keep an eye on that forest and everything.
I think somebody, someone in the crew said somebody had an accident out here yesterday, and I'm not for sure, with a dump truck, so...
That's what Commissioner...
I don't know if anybody got hurt or whatever, but...
I understand that the individual had to get lifelighted, so let's keep him and his family in our prayers, yeah.
We do it.
Mr. Chairman. Yes. Mr. Howard, thank you for taking care of that issue that I called you on. I'll be getting up with you within the next couple of weeks about another issue.
Yeah, I'd like to pick you up one day. We can ride around and kind of look at different stuff there, you know.
Okay.
You know, whatever's a good day for you.
All right. Anyone else have any questions or concerns?
I don't have a question, but I got a comment to make. I spoke with Mr. Neighbors a few weeks back and asked him how many actual boots on the ground that he had that was working. And I think he told me, was it 14 or 13?
What's that now?
Actual, you know, boots on the ground, staff, we was talking about staff numbers.
Yes, I think we got 18 total, but I'm not counting our secretary of mechanics, none of that.
That's what I'm saying. They're not, they're not on equipment working.
Probably 14, but you got dump truck drivers, then you got equipment operator, motor grader operators, so, but...
So roughly speaking, somebody that's on a mower or stuff like, you got around, what, 13, 14 actual bodies?
Correct.
All right. The point I'm trying to make, and you're averaging four inmates a day, so that gives you roughly 18, you know, the ones that's doing the physical labor.
Yeah.
All right. And the reason I bring this up is because I'm getting calls. People's complaining about the right of ways not being maintained in proper... And I just want to make this a public statement. We've got roughly 18, and let's just be generous. Let's say we got 20 hands and feet on the ground. Look how wide our county is. And now go into the areas, not just on the highway, but look at all the right of ways that 20 people roughly have to maintain. You know, that's, you know, I think the public needs to be aware of that. And that's just cutting grass. Now, if you take into consideration asphalt work, ditches, people having to get a ditch, or culverts put in, all the other services that the road department's doing, I just want the public to understand, be patient. Your right of way will get taken care of. It might be a week past from what you're typically used to, but there's no way the county can have someone sitting there manicuring your right of way every week. And I just want that said in a public state or in this forum anyway.
Yeah. So we...
And I appreciate what you're doing. I understand the stress. But I think what's happened in the past is that the county residents, myself included, was used to a service because we was averaging, what, 30 inmates a day?
30, 34.
Yeah. I mean, now I spread it out, we get a lot of stuff done.
Yeah.
We don't have that manpower, but we are working on it.
Yes, sir. Now, if you're talking about just strictly grass cutting, maybe eight people, seven to eight total of grass cutting, you know, four inmate supervisor, and I got one guy that runs a grass tractor, and about three that's on zero turn, so...
And that's working from all the way from county line to the east, past Alligator Point all the way out, out here.
Basically, the whole county.
Exactly.
70 miles wide.
Well, I just wanted to bring that up in this, in this, I mean, I've had this conversation with individuals that's called me. But I just think it needed to be said here. That way, if anybody's out there watching or listening, they can understand
Yeah, correct.
what's going on with that.
And I've told a lot of them, and we make a path through the county, so, and when we get to one end of the county, but you got probably three months out of the year that that grass could be cut weekly, so, especially with a rainy season, so...
Well, I appreciate what you're doing, Mr. Howard.
You're welcome, Mr. Howard.
Yeah, I do.
Anyone else have anything for Mr. Howard? Mr. Howard, thank you for everything you do.
Like y'all... Like y'all.
Frankly, Kevin. Mr. Albert Floyd, you here for Mr. Fontana Davis this morning, correct?
Yes. Good morning. How y'all doing?
Doing good.
But he doesn't have anything specifically for the board?
Okay.
Does the board have anything for him?
So there's no, no action items? Can I assure you, I have anything?
Mr. Chairman, I just, um, I'm not going to put you on the spot, Mr. Albert, but I did speak with Fontan. It was about nine o'clock last night. We were on the phone about another matter, but I just want, and this, this goes back to, to Mr. Howard and, and any department director. I know all of us probably received an email about the bathrooms over on the island.
Right.
Um, and I've said at many meetings that people want services, they have to pay for those services. So Mr. Davis and I were talking, and it was late, so we didn't really get into a long drawn out conversation, but it is something that we, we do need to, to look at in terms of ideas of how we can probably better manage all that. And it's not just St. George Island, it's Carabel. I just want to say, just like Commissioner Ames was talking about our, our road department, all of our county employees and all of our department directors, I think, do a phenomenal job with keeping up with this county in the way that they do, with, with the limited staff that they have. Because just like Mr. Neighbors said, he has 18 total, minus give or take some inmates. You guys also utilize inmates, but not for the parks. You have probably, I don't know, I don't know, you have, do you know how many Parks and Rec employees y'all have, just for parks?
Probably got about eight.
So eight to cover, again, however many parks that we have in the county. And I know...
Yes.
St. George Island, it was a busy weekend. I know, as Ms. Pearlman stated earlier in public comments, we're growing. You know, we got a lot of people coming to our community. Just be patient, understand that we're, we're trying to do the best we can with what we have, with the staff that we have. Um, I know that me personally, a bathroom, and it was pretty nasty, I'm not going to lie, but it could always be worse. I know that I was out with Parks and Rec one time. It was the July 4th weekend. I smelled like a brewery by the time I got done that day. Um, by the time we got to clean the island bathroom, went to Carabel, came back, it was already messed up again and needed to be resupplied. So there are ideas, there's our ways we can improve it, and I know that Mr. Davis and you all do a great job and the best of what you can do. Um, but we'll get, I'll get with Mr. Davis, we'll come up with some ideas. But I just want the public to understand that it's a, it's a, it's a large job to, to cover a 70 mile wide county with the roads, with the grass, with the parks or parks and the, and the bathrooms. So I just want the public to beware and be patient. But any, anytime we hire people, that's a service that we have to add. That's a service that you want. That means your taxes are going to have to go up. I just want people to understand that, too. I know I'm not a big advocate for raising taxes, but I just want the public to understand that that's what has to happen in order to get the services that they want. So I just wanted to, like, Mr. Amison made a point for the record, I want to make that a point for the record as well. So thank y'all, everybody.
Anyone else?
I do. Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of items in my report, actually.
Okay.
Good. Page 26, Commissioners, actually, the, the heading is on the previous page, but as requested by the board, I've received, and I bring this up because Albert was right there with me, received a vector security quote for a security access system to the Brumman Park concession building. This building has been burglarized too many times.
Yes.
Has been vandalized too many times. So there's a one-time $1,000 installation cost and a monthly $45 monitoring cost for the security system. I also have a quote for surveillance system, Commissioners, but I'd like to hold off on that. Let's see what we can get, um, let's see if it slows down with this, by putting this security access system in the concession stand. I won't, uh, there's a point I want to bring up to you. I do it individually because I, I dislike talking about our security systems publicly, but there's a very good feature on it that I think will stop what was done previously also. So I'm just looking for board action on, to go ahead and have that installed as soon as possible.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Question for you, Michael.
Yes, sir.
So with, like, D.W. Wilson Park and Kendrick Park, have we had any vandalism or anything like that?
Not too many reported, right, sir?
Not, no, not non-reported. Majority of them would be in East Point at Brumman Park.
Okay. Um, my approach is always proactive instead of reactive, so we may want to look at getting, looking at installations at those system as well, and maybe we'll offer some kind of deal with it, but be proactive instead of reactive.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think I've said that before in a meeting, is we might as well just do them all, because that way, because I know one time, wasn't there Kendrick Park, was some vandalism or something there?
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's the way the world that we live in now, and I hate to say that, but it's the truth. Um, I hate it, but, um, but I agree. In addition to that, Commissioner Crum, if you're finished, I didn't mean to...
No, that was it.
Um, this, I, I think Commissioner Chairman Jones at the last meeting was talking about a line, a line item budget for our lights for Duke. We need to come up with a way with anything like, like this, because, because this comes out of what? Is this going to come out of the Parks and Rec budget?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
This is Parks and Recreation, because it is actually relative to that particular segment of the county budget. So you, it actually makes sense for it to be budgeted there just because it's a true cost of the park.
Mm-hmm. Well, we need to make sure that, that Mr. Davis has enough adequate funds in his budget to cover these extra costs. So that's something else we need to talk about when we come up for budget time, is we want to make sure, and I said it before at the last meeting, we want to make sure all our department directors have what they need to adequately and effectively run their departments without any hesitation, period.
So is the board wanting to take action on this today and then instruct Mr. Maron to bring back quotes for all, all the rest of them? You know what I'm saying? Or y'all want, or y'all want to delay this to get quotes for all of them?
Yeah, we've already, we've already got a quote here, so we're not going to...
I know. I just wanted to know what the place of the board is.
Commissioners, I would ask that we start in this park as soon as possible, since this is, right now, that's the most troublesome park that we have, the park we have the most issues with.
I make a, I make a motion that, um, take the recommendation of Mr. Maron.
So we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Commissioners, the item right under that, item four, Mr. Davis, here Solid Ways Director, he was having issues finding a company to haul the scrap metal from the county's landfill. However, Mr. Davis was able to negotiate agreement with Panhandle Recycling LLC to haul the scrap metal from the county's landfill, and they paid us four cents per pound with no cost for hauling. I'll pause there because actually I heard from Mr. Floyd that the other company that they were looking at, him and Mr. Davis, wanted to charge us to haul, correct?
Well...
Maybe you can explain further.
Yeah, what they wanted, they wanted to pay us so much a pound, but they wanted to charge us freight, and they wanted us to load it. I think it was like 500 bucks freight for every load they come out the landfill. And after eight hours, then they wanted to charge us about an hour for having their trucks running. So Panhandle come in with four cent a pound, and the county can make a little with Panhandle versus giving it away to the other country.
So effectively, it sounds low compared to the choice we had. Now, that's the best we can get.
Well, Mr. Chairman, just, he, he tried. He, he looked at other options. This is not the only option he explored.
Right.
He explored other options. This was the best option.
That was the best, well, the best we come up with.
I'll make a motion to approve or ratify the chairman's signature on the agreement with Panhandle Recycling.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Floyd, you did a wonderful job.
Before you leave, and in addition to what Commissioner Ward was saying,
Okay.
Uh, I've been discussing with county staff, and I, I've talked to Mr. Davis once, but we're going to talk about it more. Between now and budget time, I think we need to allow staff to address the labor attorney and see what we can do and how we can do it with especially holiday weekends, for sure, maybe starting out. But we're going to get to the point where we're going to have to have staff more readily on the weekends.
Right.
I mean, I get that everybody wants time off. I, I get that. So what we're going to have to do is see, do we pay time and a half? Do we pay double time? What do we do to make sure these things are taken care of? And I get, uh, having staff to do the island and then go to Carabel. Maybe we need staff in both places and they can just do it.
Right.
You know, it, I'm not trying to run anybody's department, but we have to find ways to improve.
Right, but right now, what we do is, is actually scheduling.
Yes.
We're scheduled a couple of guys out during the week.
Yes.
And then it alternates, and then you have a couple of guys working the weekend. But like I say, you can only schedule so many off, because if you schedule a whole crew, too many off, then you got a skeleton crew and you're not getting anything done.
Right.
And so you still have two to four guys working the whole county over the weekend, which is, is a strain.
Yeah.
And, but like she said, Commissioner said, by the time you clean St. George Island bathrooms, make the Alligator Point, by the time you get back, your time is gone and it's ready to be cleaned again.
And that, and those bags are full.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
I mean, I mean, they are heavy.
They are.
Heavy, heavy.
But, but we need to find a way to address it. So if we have to address it through more compensation, so more people are willing to do it, and do we need to have a discussion? We can have this discussion later. Do we need to have a discussion to say, okay, there's only so many people in Parks and Recs, or what if somebody at the landfill wants to work on Saturday and Sunday?
Okay.
You know what I mean? They're just cleaning bathrooms, picking up trash anyway. You know what I mean? So we need to have a discussion about it to try to do our best to address it, because what we're doing is not working. I, I appreciate what the boys are doing, but it's not working. And we might need to look at, on especially on holiday weekends, if we have two cans out, put out four cans or five cans or whatever, so we can hold more before we get to it. You know what I mean?
Right, I understand that.
Just to make it be better.
I think that they had money for, um, part-time workers.
Mm-hmm.
In which we explored it.
Yep.
Put the word out.
Yep.
Nobody, no takers.
Yeah, I understand.
And I think it's the weekend. You know, people to work during the week. Got a lot of young people, so the weekend is theirs, and so it's actually, but...
Yeah, but there, there's a segment that'll work on the weekend, because they clean houses on weekends.
Yes, but...
I assure you, they just got to get paid better.
It might be, it might be the money.
They just got to get paid better.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
That's exactly right.
Mr. Chairman, we have to incentivize them towards the weekends. I mean, um, but in, in addition, I did ask Mr. Davis about the showers, because I thought maybe we could put a shower next to the bathroom to maybe people rinse off, but there is a shower there.
Yes.
But you can't guarantee the person's going to rinse off to go to the bathroom to, that's why the sand gets tracked in, because they don't really care. They got to go to the bathroom and whatever. But, um, on another note, Mr. Chairman, I think that, um, and I totally agree with you, again, you have to have the staff to do it. Um, there's ways to do it. We just got to come up with a plan. But I, I, I want to bring up a point, and I, I, over the Memorial Day weekend, there was a report, somebody called me. It was Sunday, Sunday night, uh, the, the, one of the playground equipment over at Brumman Park was damaged. The little bridge, a bolt had come out. And I called AJ, which is all, he was on call Parks and Rec one at that time. And I told him, just go out, put some caution tape on it, because I didn't know if we had a contract with the playground people to fix it or whatever, to maintain the equipment.
They will come back, but, uh, but yeah, we'd have to, to schedule that with them.
Yeah, but anyway, he, he went out and he said, I'll just go, if I can fix it, Mr. Ward, I'll fix it. So, and next thing you know, it's fixed. And this was on a Sunday night. I mean, it was like six o'clock when I called him, because that's when I got called about it. And, um, it was fixed like the next day. So I just want to thank AJ for, for doing his due diligence and doing a good job and taking care of that for me on a, on a holiday weekend. I know he's on call, but again, we've got to incentivize these people to be on call, to, to go out and do these things. And cleaning the bathroom does not a, gosh, it's like horrible job. I, I wouldn't, I want to get paid a pretty good penny to do it, especially, it's not my own facility. But anyway, we, we definitely have to look at doing that. But, but tell AJ I said thank you.
I will.
I appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, before Mr. Floyd walks away, I think you need to explain to the public, the board knows, staff knows, that it's not just the bathrooms. I mean, I don't think they understand Parks and Rec, all the parks, boat ramps, there's a lot involved that I think the public may not understand.
Anything to do with, with public spaces, public access, our Parks and Recs departments have them take care of it.
Yeah.
And they do the beach, like the whole beach.
They do the whole beach.
Turtle Patrol.
Leave no trace.
Turtle Patrol, we do, we do the woods, because we got something going on with Forest Street, where we go all the way up to Bloody Bluff, Butcher Pen, and, um, it actually is about a 70 mile radius that we actually cover. And we, we, we do it, but, um, you know, sometimes, sometimes something get left, but a phone call.
So we're having to do places up in the, in the state forests?
Yes, we actually do garbage up in State Park in the woods. And, um, this been going, we've been doing it for years.
It's like road department having the great roads up there.
The state's closing off.[1456.02]
There you go.
Oh, goodness.
Mr. Chairman.
You called me ahead of time.
And if we miss anything, some phone call, we'll get it.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I assure you, I know about that. Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Floyd, I just got a couple of questions for you.
Okay.
Um, the first one was the phone call that I, me and you had, I don't, my time's flying, but the light situation out there, did y'all ever figure that out?
Um, we think when the power went off.
Mm-hmm.
When it came back on, I guess the timer was still set for a certain time, so it, it started, popped on.
Okay.
So we went back and we moved the time back to, I think it was six forty-five to nine forty-five or ten o'clock. It's supposed to go off.
So it was just a stroke of luck, me coming home at two forty in the morning. Anyway, my, my other question is, 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 are you, are you over at the Parks and Recs with the ball fields and stuff? I mean, how, how y'all have that structurally broken down?
Actually, um, with Park and Recreation, that's all of it. Ball fields, beaches, um, boat ramps, um, with a little.
The reason I ask is, is I've talked with Mr. Davis. When he gets back, me, him and Ms. Griffin's gonna have a, a meeting, and I would like to include Mr. Floyd in that as well. And, and I'll, I'll make sure we'll all get our times together. But it's just on some, uh, some improvements out there that we need to work with, uh, work on, okay? If that's okay.
That'd be fine. That's fine.
I know you're busy, but we'll, I, I won't take up.
That's, that's fine. But we got another, um, supervisor, um, Suzie Riley, Suzie Riley. Now, if we have a meeting, I would love to include her, because she's been there for so long and actually she's, she's actually teaching me.
Okay.
For parks.
I, I got you.
So I would love to include her.
Okay. It's not, I mean, it's nothing major, just some ideas I got out there that I think it'll help out in the future, so.
Okay.
All right?
All right.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything for Mr. Floyd?
Um, actually, Commissioners, would you like for me to go ahead and cover the line item in my report about renovation of the old SGI restrooms, because that may actually benefit Parks and Recreation, because we are having to spend a lot of repair and maintenance dollars at that park location. And it's kind of been open, closed, open, closed, uh, just because we're having some plumbing issues. Let's see, Commissioners, so it's, it would actually be, um, item number eight on my report. And it's actually board action to approve sending the attached request for beach park facility funds to the Tourist Development Council for their review and recommendation. Um, and I just kinda wanna go over the conceptual plan for, uh, making those repairs. The letter actually says, "To Tourist Development Council, says Franklin County would like to request funding assistance for the following beach park facility upgrades. A full renovation restoration of the old Saint George Island restrooms and the concrete surfacing roofing, and ADA picnic tables for the new picnic pavilion at the Beach Park's inclusive playground. The overwhelming volume of tourist traffic at the beach park location warrants the restoration, renovation of the facilities, as both bathroom structures are needed to meet demand during peak season and during special events at the park. The requested scope, order, and budget detail is provided below, and all work shall be done by various local vendors, contractors, and suppliers. The playground has also proven to be a favorite attraction for many families on vacation, and additional shaded seating is needed for visitors. Current project grant funds are not sufficient to cover all the expenses for the pavilion and seating, which are the last project elements to be completed. For the old SGI restrooms, that would include removal of the existing damaged tile floors and damaged tile wall covering, repair of floor decking and walls from water damage inside the restroom, pressure washing, cleaning the decking, removing the old partitions and fixtures, repairing and replacing the copper plumbing, installation of new fixtures, run lines for the additional outdoor showers, because we are going to try to add a few outdoor showers right there at the, uh, main exit at Lighthouse Park from the, uh, primary dune walkover and two picnic pavilions that are out by the beach. Uh, so that's a hope as well for limiting the amount of sand that actually makes it into the restroom locations. Um, that would also include the direct purchase of new fixtures, which would be toilet sinks, mirrors, outdoor showerheads, uh, the installation of new pressure-treated restroom partitions, uh, which will actually be similar to what you see in there now. Um, those restrooms are actually probably twenty-plus years old, and they're still in relatively good condition. So, you know, I feel like the, um, durability of the pressure-treated lumber, uh, that has kinda stood, stood the test of time and seems to be resistant to vandalism. Um, the installation of new pressure-treated restroom partitions, install fiber cement board, which would be painted hardy board and battened chair rail to, to the top of the partitions, miscellaneous patchwork of damaged deck boards, addition of slatted wood screening beneath the structure to protect utilities from unauthorized access, direct purchase of new tile material for new floor covering, and installation of new tile floors. Um, the total cost do not exceed fifty-five thousand dollars. Um, this is actually the amount available for beach park facility funds. Basically, that was left after we paid off the improvements to the Carabelle Beach, um, project for this, this current fiscal year, because we actually paid off the line of credit for one hundred and forty thousand dollars for, um, finishing up the Carabelle Beach Park project. Um, and also the ninety-nine thousand dollars, uh, transfer for beach park facility maintenance that TDC does, um, which assists with funding some of the Parks and Recreation activities. There's also the inclusive playground project, the ADA accessible picnic pavilion. That total will not exceed fifteen thousand dollars, and that would be basically the concrete surfacing beneath the picnic pavilion and repair of the damaged or uneven sidewalk surfaces, uh, for ADA accessibility, um, the metal roof for the ADA accessible picnic pavilion, and the ADA accessible picnic tables, um, for that picnicking area. Um, and, you know, again, that's actually within the budget for the beach park facilities funding for the current fiscal year.
Any questions or pleasure of the board?
So move.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
I'll see.
Second by Commissioner Amerson. And Ms. Aaron, with this approval, we're taking this to the TDC board for their recommendations.
That's correct.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Anything else?
Sorry.
Yes, could I just make sure?
I was trying to explain to her that you guys are looking in her report for that, and it's one of the attachments to her.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I was reading it like that.
Oh.
I found that out. Yeah, the additional detail was on the actual request, and I was.
I'm used to it.
I was just lost, but I was thrown.
I was late developing that, so it was like six o'clock yesterday.
I said, if she's not saying what's on this paper, they got something different. My last twenty-three years, in fact, I'd get used to it.
Mr. Chairman, one more thing. Get back to Parks and Rec and, and the TDC. We do have our Parks and Rec, a couple of the Parks and Rec employees get paid by TDC, is that correct?
That is correct. Yep, there is ninety-nine thousand dollars that actually comes from TDC, um, for, for use for the, uh, beach park facilities maintenance.
Okay, so maybe we can look at something along those lines if we need to hire somebody else or something. We can maybe use, of that ninety-nine thousand dollars, I don't know how much, I don't know, it's a salary, a couple of people. But anyway, just a thought.
Yeah.
Trying to brainstorm here, trying to help people out.
Because that amount is, I'm sorry, Commissioner, that amount's ten percent, isn't it?
Um, actually, the beach park facility limitation is ten percent.
Right.
Um, yep, so, you know, basically with this expenditure this year, that will actually, um, completely exhaust your available ten percent for beach park facilities.
Right. But that's for this year. We're about to start a new year.
We are.
Yeah. But the, uh, but we also are kind of getting some of these issues, or not issues, getting some of these projects completed.
Mm-hmm.
And there's not, let's face it, thankfully, we're small, so it's not like we're gonna do another ten beach park facility projects in the next two years. So we might look at adding more funding from TDC to help address staffing needs.
Yes.
You know?
Yep, and I do hope to, uh, actually have that policy for your, your consideration at the next meeting, um, because we have been actually talking with, uh, Trevor Carson, our labor attorney, um, about, you know, instituting some sort of seasonal premium pay for weekend work. So, um, that's something that.
Yeah, something similar to, so at Carquest, when we were changing her from Napa to Carquest, they had a bunch of people working there, but they were working for that week. You know what I mean? They were hired for that time. They were hired for Labor Day and Memorial Day. You know what I mean? So it was to meet a specific need. Yeah, it's a little bit harder to do, but again, if there's enough incentive there, maybe you can do it. Just a thought. All right, any tales from Mr. Floyd?
I'm sorry. I told you five minutes. I'm sorry.
Don't ever tell the man five minutes.
I know.
You can't promise that.
It's like saying we have a short agenda right here.
That's right. Thank you. Thank you, Albert. We appreciate everything you all do. Ms. Jennifer Daniels?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I have no action items for today, um, just a couple of quick things that are more informational than anything. Uh, June first, we started storm season, so here we go. Number two, um, our sign up sixty-seven, our Wanko, the big flashy sign, someone felt the need to shoot it with buckshot. So the, it is, it's still functioning. The buckshot did not go all the way through the plexiglass, thank goodness. Uh, but we're gonna need to monitor it, and we will have to replace the plexiglass at some point. It will eventually break. But we're still functioning, still working, still going.
Now, Ginny, will that repair cost more than five thousand dollars?
Uh, I, I don't know, because I haven't even priced it yet.
Okay.
But if, I will get with you before I do anything with that. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, if it does, we will wanna run it through insurance.
Yes, ma'am.
This is what you're talking about, Commissioner.
I saw.
I can see your face now. This is.
Oh, yeah. You talking about the ones that's been up there, because we've been having the issue with the water coming across the road and all that stuff?
Yes, sir.
That big nice message board.
Yes, sir.
Let's get cameras.
Not a bad grouping, though, I'll say that.
There's only so much I can put security system of the cameras on, so.
Let's just get those little blue reflectors and put them on every county road and have a camera on it. Yeah. Commissioner Ward would be, would be happy.
It's tough.
Cameras not gonna do nothing.
It's apparent.
I just get aggravated, you know. People don't, Mr. Chairman, sorry. I was raised to respect other people's property and stuff, and it aggravates me to no end to know that people just don't care anymore. They just, they don't care. It just, it frustrates me. My, my back door be painted red if my parents found out I did something like that. And that's the problem with society we live in. I don't know who did it, but I just, oof, it frustrates. Because that's our taxpayer money, trying to fix this stuff with. And that aggravates me even more. It's just, it's ridiculous.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
What, what irritates me is it was not for us, it was not for us to be required to put that out there, but I knew what a safety factor it was, and I asked the county to put that out there. Now it's on me. I can't, I can't answer for other people's actions, you know? I can only, uh, answer for mine. And, um, so, yeah, you know, that's not nice. That's not nice. Probably the people don't even pay taxes in the county, you know, um.
Oh, there didn't have to be somebody from there.
That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying. It could be anybody passing through, because that's a long, dark stretch, sixteen miles long. And, and it's a long, dark stretch. That's the reason why we wanted the message board there, where nobody would get hurt. Even though we had, you know, a few fender benders and flying through the woods and everything like that, at least nobody was hurt. I'm gonna say like my momma always says, you can replace that stuff, but you can't replace somebody.
Yes, ma'am.
So, and, and the, and the afterthought of, of things, we did right by putting that message.
Is it still up there?
No, no, sir. We actually, we still have it in use. Uh, the Sheriff's Department is using it at Alligator Point right now to, for parking issues. The, the sign is still functioning. The plexiglass on it apparently is a lot stronger than I expected it to be, because the, the little pellets did not go all the way through. They just indent it. Um, so it, it's still watertight, and so it can't cause any damage, but we'll be watching it more careful.
Now, if it was double-out buckshot, you'd be having holes all in it.
There, there's about thirty little, little holes up, but they did not go through the plexiglass.
That's not buckshot. Buckshot, double-out buckshot, fifteen pellet. Yeah, you know. So, hey, but the point is that, you know, we got out what we wanted to say about it, and we'll do it again. If, if it comes to this public safety, we'll do it again.
Yes, ma'am.
We always do. So, Jennifer, thank you for the job you do.
My pleasure.
I missed my weather forecast Sunday. But I don't know what's happening, and this is something that maybe we need to address here. I'm not getting those alerts, but maybe every three or four days after the fact, I don't know why my phone's not.
Now, you're talking about the ones from the National Weather Service or the ones?
Uh, well, it says Franklin County is underneath a severe thunderstorm warning.
That, that's the one, the National Weather Service sends those out through our alert Franklin. But what I will do is when I get back, I will pull up your, your account and check it and find out why you're not getting them until later.
Yeah, I didn't get it until yesterday when I went to town.
Yes, ma'am.
The service again, but.
Ms. Daniels, what are they, what are they calling for this year for hurricane forecasting?
They, they're calling for a very, very active season, increased, uh, more active than last year. I think the, what I read was at least four to seven major in the, in the Atlantic area. So.
Okay. I had heard something like that, but I thought it better to ask you, since that's kinda what you're doing.
That's me.
On behalf of us.
Yes.
Yeah. That's a lot of storms.
Gonna be a busy season, I'm afraid.
Yeah.
Ms. Daniels, is there ever a storm that they say that we have a decrease, uh, in storm, ever? I'm just curious.
We just, we like to make, yeah, we will make sure the anticipation's there, yes.
I guess it's appropriate for us to ask you, are we storm ready?
I've been waiting for it all day. Absolutely.
Yeah, somebody was touching on my heartstrings. I'm more than sure we asked that question, because it's official now.
It is official, absolutely, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I, I'd like to say, I'm, I'm drinking out of my Cert coffee cup this morning, and for those of y'all don't, don't know, Jennifer, can you elaborate on what the Cert cup is?
Um, we actually, we have, uh, two members of our Cert team here, and our president of our Cert team, Ms. Judy Ring. Um, we, we purchased the cups to sell as a fundraiser for our, our Cert team, and they sold most of them at the, at the Carabelle Riverfront Festival.
Yeah.
And we had a volunteer with us that day, just happened to be my nephew, Beau Melander. He sold.
Over four hundred dollars.
Over four hundred dollars worth of the cups.
Great.
That's good.
It's great.
That's good.
Cups are kind of unusual, because they're made out of bamboo.
Get Miss Judy.
I like the cup.
Yeah.
That is different.
Yep.
They're made out of bamboo, so it's all recyclable, the cup itself. Um, and, uh, they can be put in your dishwasher or in the microwave. And they're, they're a nice size. We had two sizes, a ten ounce and a twelve ounce. Um, and they were very successful. We raised over, over five hundred dollars actually from the cups themselves.
Thank you, Ms. Judy.
Yes, so we've got a little bit of money now. Our Cert group is just getting started. And, uh, and that's always a good thing. We can then, uh, do some special things for the community with that money.
Yeah.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Judy.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes, sir.
On your report on information item number two, you indicated EOC staff met with FCSO regarding the EOC implementation of a duty officer.
Yes, sir.
What does this say duty officer and the roles of it?
Let me, I wanna explain that. That was actually my third explain on, yes, sir. Um, what it is, is when you, when you go to work for emergency management at our EOC, we have three staff members, or right now, we have two. We are actually, uh, finishing interviewing today for our third position. But we are, we are all on call twenty-four, seven, okay? To try and ease that burden a little, to, to let some of the staff be able to go somewhere or do something or, or be more than two hours away from the EOC, we have established a duty officer. And I talked to, uh, dispatch at the Sheriff's Department, Renee Brandon. What we've done is we've provided them with a single phone number, if they have a list of specific incidents that happen, for them to report that incident to us, which in turn will take part of the burden off of them by doing the reporting to the State Watch Office. It'll also, instead of, again, we are still all on call twenty-four, seven, but it, it puts one person in charge of answering that specific, those calls for a specific time period. And we're trying it out first. This is kinda new. We're doing it for a week at a time to start with, and especially while it's just me and Amanda switching back and forth. Um, after the week time period, or, I mean, sorry, after we get accustomed, get our third person hired, get them trained, or if we see that the one-week time period maybe is too short, and we may extend to two, it, it depends on how it works. It is still kind of a new thing we're doing. But whoever the duty officer is, the on-call person is, will be answering all calls that come into that phone from the Sheriff's Department, from dispatch. We will take the information from them and then take the burden off of them for reporting to State Watch Office. And then while we have them on the phone, it gives us that little opportunity to ask, uh, what can we do to help you? Do you need lights? Do you need tents? Do you need signs? Do you need messages put out? What can we do to help?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else have anything for Ms. Daniels? I guess now would be an appropriate time, too, to remind, uh, all county residents and property owners, if you don't have your tag, which don't expire, for exiting the county and entering the county after a storm, uh, now's the time to be going to the EOC to, to get one of those.
Yes, sir, because once we activate, we will not issue re-entry tags. And even more importantly, sign up for Alert Franklin. Uh, something else we're in the process of doing is we are, we are printing some vinyl stickers, and we're fixing to set up our meetings with like our realty companies and our, our, um, RV, RV parks, our businesses in the county. We're gonna do, it's a sticker with a QR code on it that they can put in the door of their business. And it says to receive alerts for, 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 our emergency alerts from Franklin County Emergency Management. You scan the QR code. It takes you right to the page to sign up for Alert Franklin. And we're gonna be trying to get those out to everywhere we can possibly get those out to, to continue to get more people to just sign up for Alert Franklin. The, the better informed you are, the better decision you can make.
Sounds good.
Mr. Chairman, also, isn't this Saturday the day that's tax-free holiday?
It was, I think it's, Lord, don't quote me. I think it's June, is it the eighth through the fourteenth, maybe?
I had it written down somewhere.
I just published it. I just put it out on our Facebook.
Okay, that's what I thought, yeah.
It's on our Facebook, too, and our website. We've put it out.
I think I shared that on my Facebook page. I know it was coming up, so.
Yes, ma'am.
One through fourteen, okay.
And that's any storm-related supply, should get tax-free.
Ms. Daniels, thank you for everything you do on behalf of Franklin County.
Yes, sir. Thank y'all.
Ms. Virginia?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm here for Mr. Polis today. Um, he just could not come in today. He had some other things he had to go be at or do something, so he asked me to just take his place.
Okay. Commissioners, you have the report. Do you have any questions about mosquito control? Ms. Virginia, tell him we said thank you for everything y'all do, and thank you for everything you do on behalf of Franklin County.
Will do. Thanks, guys.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Eric, is he here via Zoom?
Yes.
Mr. Eric Lestrange?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Any action items for you guys today? Happy to answer any questions you might have about my report.
Okay. Uh, did the, just asking, I know there's stuff in your report, but I wanna make sure the residents know about it. How did the, uh, I understand we had some children that done pretty well in the public speaking contest this year? And is that completely over, or are they still, do they proceed to higher levels? If you could, take a moment to discuss that, sir.
Sure. Yeah, it is over as far as, um, our district's participation, and they used to do, um, a statewide competition at Walt Disney World, but that hasn't been done for several years now, so this was the last step. And we had two first-place winners in this county at our county competition that we hosted here at the Extension Office, and they both went to the Wakulla County Extension Office for the district competition a few weeks ago. And, um, yeah, our fourth grader, who competed in the fourth combined fifth grade division, won first place at that district competition, so she did an outstanding job with her speech and just really had the audience engaged and laughing and a lot of good feedback. So we were really proud of her. Her name was, um, Kami Polronus. And, um, we were, it's the first time, um, that I know of, that we've had a first-place winner at a district competition like this.
Well, good. All right. Thank you, Ms. Eric. I appreciate that. Anyone have any questions or concerns for Mr. Eric? Sir, thank you for everything you do on behalf of Franklin County.
Thank you all. We appreciate you.
Yes, sir. Ms. Whitney Roundtree, Library Director. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. There we go.
Good morning. Go ahead.
Um, well, I'm happy to report that the palm trees have been trimmed and the landscape improvements are completed. The Carabelle branch, um, everything looks really good. We've just been keeping it watered. It's gonna be, like I said, a nice little area that we can potentially add some things to, so if you hadn't had a chance, uh, stop by and take a look. We're getting ready to kick off our summer reading program. Uh, if you're not familiar with what that is, we do that every year. We host, uh, live performances. We have reading challenges, incentives, uh, for both students and adults to keep everyone motivated to read through the summer. And we have, uh, staff-led programs and just a lot of fun stuff going on. The libraries are decorated. They look great. Um, the theme this year is adventure begins at your library, so we're featuring adventure and the outdoors, and we're all just really excited for that. So that will start this week. Uh, the East Point Branch will have a kickoff party on Friday at one P.M. So that will start this week, uh, the East Point Branch will have a kickoff party on Friday at 1:00 PM, and then Carabelle will have theirs Saturday at 1:00 PM. So we encourage papers to come out, check out the library, see what we got going on, you can register for events, get free prizes, and some ice cream.
Sounds good, I don't want to get a lot of people there.
Yeah, yeah.
Sounds good, Ms. Whitney.
Yes.
Anything else, I'm sorry? Is that it?
That's it.
Now, you're gonna, the, the library's also gonna be closed on June nineteenth?
Oh, yes, we will, uh, for drinking.
Okay, all right. Uh, just a question, not, not related to you, Ms. Whitney, but while you're here, it's about the library. Ms. Erin, where are we on the East Point Library? With, with the, is there any update on that?
I'm actually gonna toss that one over to Michael Morrow, because we had hooked that with already resolved.
Yeah, we sure did, Commissioners, I'm, I'm, I heard from USDA here recently, they were having issues with their legal counsel up in the Atlanta office, I believe. So she is working on getting us some documentation, that there's a, a couple of options. Probably gonna go with the best but quickest option to get that done, since we've been waiting for so long. Hopefully I'll have something for you at the next meeting on that, actually for your approval.
Okay, well, I just wanted to bring that, while Ms. Whitney was here at the meeting.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, we hear from the friends. All this, kind of, I, I, I get it, I, they're concerned, and, you know, so.
Okay, anyone else have anything for Ms. Roundtree? Ms. Whitney, thank y'all for everything y'all do on behalf of Franklin County, we appreciate it.
Yeah, just one more thing, just, uh, speaking of the friends, I just want to remind everybody that our summer reading program is completely sponsored by them. Um, so we wouldn't be able to do, uh, everything that we do every summer without them.
Yes, they're, they're, they're very instrumental to what goes on at the library.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Whitney.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Randall Walton, you're Ms. Director?
Good morning, Board, how we doing today?
Hello?
Looked busy a little bit in here. Um, Mr. Morrow should have handed you guys a quote from Butterfly. Uh, this was secondary to me telling, or informing the Board that we had got the state EMS grant for the one, and that that's what I wanted to purchase with it, you guys signed off on that, it was a go. Um, they come back and asked me why, just one, and I was like, well, you know, we're getting the grant, we're gonna use that monies towards that, um, and then we'll try to get, you know, more coming forward. Um, and then they were implying, why didn't we have one on every rescue, and I was like, well, uh, didn't, didn't go that way, just wanted to get the grant and take that process, and try to save money where we could. Um, so they requested a quote for me to gather, um, and, and you'll see that this is for four. So that would put one on each ambulance and our QRV, which is a supervisor, and then the one that, or the, either, either one of them would be a backup in case something went broke, or, you know, misplaced or something of that nature. Um, so they give us a total of five. Um, and that's with a case, now, mind you, this, this quote doesn't have, uh, the iPads that we would purchase later on. Um, we have a couple already, so we wouldn't need many, um, so that would, that's just another added action. Uh, this also comes with a subscription, it's a one-year subscription, uh, it's detailed pretty, pretty good in there, but that encompasses, um, training, uh, the cloud, so if we do a procedure such as a fast exam on a trauma patient, uh, and it's positive or negative, we can attach that to the patient care report, um, and that would just show, that, that's like something that would show like bleeding in the abdomen, um, which is crucial. Um, as well as doing like a needle decompression, uh, for a collapsed lung, we can confirm that with the ultrasounds. Um, and then IV access for poor venous access, um, you know, patients with difficulty, or IV difficulties. Um, so those are just some of the things that, uh, you know, that would be accessible with these, uh, butterfly ultrasounds.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Griffith, does this, is there any additional thing we have to do for this amount? Is one quote sufficient with our process, or no?
Actually, Randall was gonna ask about that, um, is there any sort of state contract pricing, or any sort of piggyback, or source?
I can look into that for you.
Go ahead.
This is the only portable ultrasound, I know there's probably some others out there, um, but this is like, I guess, uh, the most known or used, um, so that's why we just grabbed that one, I can, I can look into that for you as well.
Okay, yeah, we, we could do that, you know, if you all want to make a motion contingent upon, um, actually, you know, we can actually get that addressed, and if it is a sole source or some other contract pricing, we can go and issue the purchase order, um, and if not, we may just come back to the next meeting.
Sure, sure, yeah, we can do that, for sure.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, I just wanted to make sure we address it before we started doing motions and votes.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, you said there's a total of four on here, now, does that count, you said five, actually, at the end of the day, is that fifth one what the grant is gonna purchase?
Yes, ma'am, y'all already approved that one, yes, ma'am, that was the grant, and then when I was, yes, ma'am, when I was informing them about the, the purchase of that through the grant for the EMS, uh, state EMS county grant, um, they were, that's when they wanted, you know, more information, and was wondering why we didn't have them all on each rescue, and I was like, pretty much just told them, um, that we were just trying to work our way towards that goal. And then, so they asked for the full quote.
And, Mr. Chairman, the money, Erin, from this would come out of what fund?
It would actually be from Healthcare Trust Fund, because it would be an EMS upgrade.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve this contingent on the quote.
Yeah, yeah, the quote being either for a sole source, um, or, you know, competitive, or, you know, some.
So we have a motion to approve with contingency from Commissioner Ward, and a second by Commissioner Sanders. Any additional discussion, Commissioners? All in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I was just gonna say, this is, this is important stuff, I mean, this is the safety of our, our public. So anything for that, uh, you know, I'm, I'm gonna be in full support, playing, it could save a life, it could, it could, well, it could save a life. So. So.
It's going to.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, when, when we got Randall here, me and Randall had a discussion in my office, and you can do it justice, cause I'm gonna butcher it, but it's about communications.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, would you mind enlightening this, this board on what me and you discussed with that?
Uh, yes, sir, um, I've reached, I've reached out to the Sher, uh, the sheriff, and, uh, Ms. Renee had actually called me yesterday, we're supposed to be scheduling a meeting. Um, but some of the communications issues that the first responders have brought to my attention is, um, you know, either they're not getting dispatched, or they're not getting, uh, their text messages through their app, or what have you. Um, one of the things that I was talking with Commissioner Amoson about, and I think probably just about every one of you at one point or another, um, is, is getting everybody under the same umbrella, um, we currently use e-Dispatch, um, and it would help the dispatchers if they only had one app to use, instead of using whatever Appalachia has, St. George Island, Carabelle. It would all be under one umbrella, and they could just click on the zones they needed. Um, and that also, in that feature in that app, also has the, uh, hydrant locations, it, it, it's, it's got a lot more access capabilities that we could use it for. Um, so then, like I said, I'm just, I've gotta meet with the Sheriff's Department and, and, and work that one out with them, got, them as well. Um, like I said, I hadn't had that meeting, I'm working on scheduling it at this time. Um, is there anything else you wanted on that?
No, I just wanted you to.
Okay, yeah, and it would just basically get everybody on the same page, and that way, if Rescue One here in Appalachia went out, and Appalachia needed to go out, then they could click it. If it was a fire call, and St. George Island, like for the instance with the fires, they need it back up, or second alarm, they could hit another zone, so that everybody, uh, is getting the same message, and they're not having to put in each individual messages for each app. And that's where the, I think that's where some of the, their lack of is coming from, is, is they've got too much going on. Um, if we could get the CAD to communicate with the e-Dispatch, and everybody be under the same umbrella, then it's one text, one click of a button, and we're moving forward.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Piggyback of what you're saying, the dispatch, they got so many consoles up there, they got so much stuff going on, and sometimes there's only one person up there, I've been, I've sat up there and watched, and it's, if you ever, if you haven't ever been, I would recommend that you go, but it's a bunch going on, and to have it under one umbrella, it would be great.
Yeah, yeah, and.
Because sometimes there are missed calls.
Yes, sir.
I get them, I, sometime I get a text, and not get the page, and vice versa, sometime I don't get anything, cause there's so much stuff, especially on a hot call, drowning, or CPR, or anything like that, there's a lot of stuff going on, so.
Yeah, it would, it would, um, definitely eliminate, and, and I think I've spoke with just about each one of you, and, and that coming out of our EMS budget, um, so that the fire departments, the volunteers, aren't having to, uh, to assume that call, so if they already have the app, then, you know, that, that would just fall under our umbrella, um, and then maybe help them out, they could use funds elsewhere.
Mr. Chairman.
Um, with that being said, it wouldn't have to come out from your budget necessarily, like from the hospital trust.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I was, I was gonna say, isn't that this, your report to Triumph thing, okay, I was just wanna bring, go, go ahead, Erin.
Yeah, go ahead and cover it while you're here, please.
Let's get around there and find it.
Number nine, you got the number nine?
I'm saying.
It's on page.
Okay, number nine.
At the May twenty-eighth meeting of the Gulf Coast Pride Board in Milton, Florida, Franklin County Phase One, seven hundred fifty thousand dollar grant application.
For the first responder communication system was approved, the formal grant award agreement with terms will be available for formal acceptance at Triumph's next meeting. The brief project summary, which was presented to the Triumph Board, followed their economic advisor's report on the project, is included as an attachment to this report. As we are aware, there are changes on the horizon with the state's emergency response SLUR system, and at some point, the county will be mandated to transition to the state's P-25 Phase Two system. This project will make that transitions possible. In past events, state agencies and local law enforcement relied upon a handheld VHF radio from local first responders to ensure interoperability with communications, with dispatch serving as the bridge between the two systems. The existing system is vulnerable, as there are no redundancies, should one part of the existing system become disrupted or damaged, there is a lack of connectivity due to the remote and heavily forested areas of the county, uh, and the population density concentrated along the coastline. The communications are not secure and encrypted, and first responders are not able to directly communicate from all agencies. This delay in information, or no access to direct information during an emergency jeopardizes the safety of personnel, visitors, and residents. This Phase One award will provide funding to procure a professional consultant to evaluate the current system, identify options for the upgrade, and assist with the procurement and vendor selection process. This same consultant will also oversee the installation of the equipment and the training of the first responders during the later, and, later construction and implementation phase of the system, which will include the construction of radio communications towers. Whereas the Triumph program has strict criteria for job creation, the ability for law enforcement and first responders to ensure safe communities for existing businesses, new businesses, residents, and tourists is critical to fostering an environment for economic development, which in turn does tie to the mission of the Triumph program. Um, so.
That's good.
I feel like we're heading in the right direction for getting everyone under the same blanket, and this will actually be something that will benefit basically all first responders in the county, because it will be volunteer fire departments, EMS, the Sheriff's Department, um, both city police forces, um, the road department, um, basically anyone that would respond to any sort of natural disaster, um, emergency events.
Yeah.
And also the side benefit of actually having additional communications towers within the community, where we can actually rent that space to communication providers, um, to provide better broadband service.
Up sixty-five.
It better be up sixty-five.
Sixty-five and sixty-seven.
Yeah.
Is this that same, uh, grant that, that, that Waculla?
Yes.
It is, yeah.
Yeah, they're just making us do the stages.
Yeah.
I think this is great.
Yeah, and all of our radios prior to today, that, or prior to this, going forward, um, are capable of switching over, so we don't have to buy a new radius for every truck. Uh, I think maybe one or two of our mobile units and our unit, uh, ambulances may have to be replaced, if, if they're even in service by the time we get this up and going, you know, cause they're older. Um, but, uh, and then a few portables, but that'll, that'll encompass with that grant, so.
Yeah, and Director, too, it, uh, if we can go ahead and address the thing with the app, it'll be good, but it's gonna wind up going there anyway if we do this project. But, you know, if we can, if that's something that can be changed, and will help nail with response, and, you know, by all means, we need to be persistent.
Yeah, I was just gonna get with the Sheriff's Department and Dispatch, I didn't want to step, you know, I wanted them to be able to push this out as well, cause it's, it's ultimately, I feel it's gonna help them out, especially in Dispatch, cause they've got, like, Commissioner Crean was stating, they've got enough on their hands in there. Um, and one added help is, is tremendous, so, um, I just wanted to touch base with them before I, you know, went too far with it.
Literally, every minute counts.
Yeah.
In an emergency.
Yep.
I mean, how long does it take? Um, usually eight, you know, if you quit breathing for eight to ten minutes, it's, it's very vital.
Yeah, our average is eight to ten minutes, um, on the response time, now granted, if the truck's out of the county, or, or coming from a different zone, we, you gotta factor that, but average time's eight to ten minutes, so, um, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to bring up, too, um, I was contacted by, um, uh, somebody from school. It was kind of like a time-sensitive subject, that the ninth graders had to get CPR certified, and had to get CPR certified within like a certain amount of time.
Yes, ma'am.
And this individual reached out to some people, and it wasn't getting anywhere, so she called me, um, I called Mr. Randall, and, uh, he went to school and certified the ninth graders in CPR, so.
Yeah, we got it done in one, or two days, two days, we got.
I appreciate y'all doing that.
Yes, ma'am.
But basically dropped everything he was doing, and went out and got that done, so I guess that's a requirement now.
Uh, yes, ma'am, yeah, but, yeah, the governor passed that, uh, I think about, it was in his first term, um, and so that ninth and tenth graders gotta have at least one hour of CPR first aid.
Wow.
Um, done, so that's, that's good, uh, that, that helps our CPR bystander, or bystander CPR, excuse me, um, percentages go up, so that, you know, they're more than likely gonna be the ones that see their loved one, or, uh, just happen to be there whenever somebody, uh, uh, goes unresponsive.
Thank you for doing that.
Yes, ma'am.
Anyone else have anything for Mr.?
One more thing, Randall Walton, thank you for inviting me to come down here.
Yes, sir.
Did a little lunch, and I know you wasn't there, but it was, uh, you got a good team, I got, you got a lot of good personalities there.
Yes, sir, thank you.
It was, it was fun chatting with them.
That was actually my next thing, um, real quick, uh, I just wanted to take a second to thank Franklin County's, uh, small businesses. Um, so as I've spoke with each one of you, I went out starting in February, um, and just went out and asked for sponsorships, um, from the businesses, whether they'd like to donate a gift card, I mean, I've got, uh, Appalachia Airboats did like four seats on his excursions. Um, Adventure Island, or Adventure Boat Rentals, they, they donated a boat. Um, Williams Outfitters, they donated a charter trip that I give away to the crew, everything was given to the crew members, and if, um, and then I invited all you guys to come out for lunch, and I appreciate y'all showing your support and, and making it out, and if you weren't, it was understood why. Uh, and we still appreciated it, and it was, it was passed along. Um, but if you don't mind, I'd like to take a second and just, uh, read off, um, all the small businesses in the county that, that supported us over this week, and I was truly humbled to know that, um, it was that much appreciated, um.
This was done, before you start, this was done because last week was EMS appreciation week, correct?
Yes, sir, that was right, yeah, it was, uh, March, uh, excuse me, May nineteenth through the twenty-fifth. Um, and each day, I was able to get, um, one restaurant to sponsor lunch, um, and then, and that's where you guys were invited to come and eat lunch with the crews, uh, meet and talk with them, and just show your appreciation, and, and like I said, everybody was very, um, welcoming and thankful that you guys were making it out, and, and showed your support. Um, but it, so real quick, I'll just run through the names, uh, Williams Out, Williamson Outfitters, uh, Ace Hardware, Jackson Auto Parts in Carabelle, Fisherman's Choice, Bayside Coffee, Allen Seafood, Morning Bite, Appalachia Cola Ace Hardware, Fat Daddy Smokehouse, Family Coastal Restaurant, Blue Parrot, BJ's Pizza, Oyster Catcher, Appalachia Airboat Excursions, uh, the Fort, uh, Pottery Garden and More, Weber's Donuts, Patty's Raw Bar, Taylor's Building Supply, Red Pirate Family Grill and Oyster Bar, Half Shell Dockside at Sipio Creek, Izzy's Cafe, Adventure Coast Boat Rentals, Appalachia Outfitters, Appalachia Cola, uh, Chocolate and Coffee Company, Bell's Winery and Saloon, and a Century Insurance. All took place in part, sponsored the crews either getting a gift card, or whether it be a lunch, or, um, like I said, even as much as a, a fishing charter was given away. So, uh, we had a good time on that Friday, we, we, um, we did like a bingo raffle type style, um, where I just took bingo numbers and threw them in a bingo thing and rolled them out, and when your number got drawn, you got to pick up a gift, and it was kind of a white elephant type, so they, they got a little, they had a little fun with it. And then, uh, we actually played a round of bingo for the, the big prizes that were, uh, you know, like the fishing charter and stuff like that, so if they won bingo, they got, they got the charter. Um, so it was a real good time, um, and it was really nice to know that, you know, that they're appreciated, um, in the county that well, and it was that well-received, so.
Kudos to those businesses, Commissioners, that's, that was really good.
Well, and thank you for helping put that together.
Oh, yes, sir, it was.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
That's all I have, good.
Yes, sir, thank y'all for everything y'all do for the community.
Yes, sir.
Chairman, would you consider taking a break?
Yes, let's do that.
We have two questions, thank you.
Franklin County Board of County Commissioners is now back in session. Next up on our agenda is our interim airport manager, Mr. Ted Mustell.
Good morning, Commissioner Steph.
Good morning.
Quick show and tell this morning, on your right there you'll find some screws out of the building that you see on the slide. This concerns the rusting screws at the airport on the T-hanger buildings. I had intended for Scott to do this, but he is very, 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 very busy at the moment, and we don't have the time for him. So I did contact Jason Fisher last week and for some advice, and he has proposed something that Ms. Erin can probably tell you about. But there's several scenarios that I'd like to put forth. One is for Scott to do it. The other one is to hire someone else to do it, part-time. As I mentioned last meeting, we do need someone else. We need a second person out there, at least a second person. We do have a high lift, so we're in good shape to get up on the buildings and what have you. Another one is for the contractor to hire someone like Jason to do it. So this is sort of, it's not an emergency, but it's something that needs to be done sooner than later. Replace all these screws. My estimation is over 2,000 screws per building, and there are five buildings that we're talking about. I estimate a few more than that, but Jason came down to about 2,000. So it's a lot of screws.
So did Mr. Fisher give us a quote on doing it?
Yes, he did.
He did, yes. Mr. Fisher actually said that he could actually do it for $7,800 per row of hangers out there. So one thing I've told, I've asked Mr. Ted to do is to actually determine which hangar complex is the worst, and we would actually start with that particular one, and then kind of do it as, as Mr. Fisher's schedule allows, and then also as, you know, budget limitations for the airport as well. So we'll try to do, you know, one hangar, and then perhaps it'll be, you know, five to six months, we'll do another hangar. And also my suggestion for that as well, for the hangar door repairs, would be to actually do that, that same scenario, whereas, you know, whichever hangar complex we select first to go ahead and get overhead door down, to actually look at all of those hangar doors in a particular row, and get us one comprehensive quote to fix the, you know, entire issue with one particular row of hangers.
Okay. That would be good.
As far as the screws, I estimate 99% of them need to be replaced. I would say 100% need to be replaced, because they're 10 to 15, 15 to 20 years old now, and according to industry standards along the coast, that is normal life for these screws. So we're within the ballpark there. So what would you like to do on this, other than advisory at the moment?
I think we're going to get a quote from Mr. Fisher, and then we're coming forward, correct?
We do have the quote from Fisher already, it's just, we just need to decide which particular hangar row we want to go with first. Do you have any idea, Ted, of...
They're pretty well equal. This is building number C Charlie here that we're looking at. That's the helicopter hangar that we call. That first shot that you saw was the opening to the helicopter hangar. That one, well, well, to the right of that.
Go back?
That's the person door there.
So is that the one you want, you would like to begin with, is C?
That would be fine.
Okay.
It doesn't really matter which one.
Okay.
They're pretty well equal.
We do still need the quote though from overhead.
That's the helicopter, there's the opening door.
Overhead door. We would need the quote from overhead, because they have not been out yet.
Okay. So let's do this, let's get that, that quote and the quote from overhead door ready and on our agenda next meeting, so we can take action.
Okay, sounds great.
Yep.
Thank you, thank you.
Yep.
On the other issues, you have it before you, if you have any particular questions. I do have very, I am very, very concerned about number F, no, I'm sorry. The incursions on the runway. We've had several incursions lately, Scott among them, County Commis, County Road Department with dump trucks on the runway. Friday, I personally observed a contractor from Collins Land Clearing running across the end of the runway, and a jet trying to land on top of him. So it's a real problem. Surveyor was there at the moment, it's the reason I was there, and he observed, and he said, "I sure am glad I saw that, because your warning tells me what to do." So I want everybody out there to stay away from the runway. Yes, ma'am?
Can I, can I direct, Mr. Ted?
You're the operations manager, you're supposed to take care of that, Mr. Ted.
I understand. That's the reason I'm on top of it.
And if they're doing something they ain't, they're not supposed to be doing, you take care of that.
Yes.
Because you're the operations manager after. That's why we make it today.
Mr. Chairman, I got a question too. These NOTAMs, you initiate when things like that happen, right? So that the aircraft pilot will know that they can't run, land on this runway because there's workers, vice versa?
That's correct.
Now, you can, you say those NOTAMs, when you issue them, you can issue them for an hour, for two hours, for a day.
That's correct.
But you don't want to, you don't issue it indefinitely, because you have to still have people landing and taking off the airport, right?
That is correct. Now, however, the NOTAM issued, talking, telling about the contractors, we have it there at every moment, they're working, I don't know exactly when they're working, and the NOTAM clearly states that they're in the approaches. They should not have been on the runway, or even across the end of the runway, as this person was Friday.
In addition to that, Mr. Chairman, do, there needs to be some kind of, in my opinion, lights, like, like some kind of amber, you know, and I don't know from the air, I think they would probably be better off seeing a light flash, like a flashing light on the top of this vehicle, versus seeing a truck, or a vehicle, or a tractor on the runway.
Yes.
Do you guys have, or you can maybe, I don't know, a cigarette lighter, I don't know if cars have cigarette lights anymore, but some kind of light that you can put on certain vehicles that are going to be on that runway, so that the light is flashing, so that the pilot could potentially see before he even tries to land, so we don't have those issues, like for the tractors, for the mowers, for all the equipment, for the trucks. Is there a way we can look at getting those types of lights?
We have those.
Okay.
Matter of fact, this incursion Friday, he was flashing his lights.
Okay.
But there was no reason for him to be where he was. He could have gone around the end of the runway, the approach, or somewhere else, but he cut right straight across the end of the runway, and the jet was right over the top of him.
And that's where education needs to come in, and say, listen, this is the, this is how we do this. I mean, that's not cool.
I'm confused, Mr. Chairman. Was this a county vehicle, or was this part of the contractor?
This is contractor. Collins Land Clearing.
Did you speak with the...
I have, on top of it, like I say, I called John Collins immediately, who called Mr. Collins, what's his name, it's Owens Collins Land Clearing?
He's from Carrington.
Robert Collins?
Not, it's, the, well, just calling him Mr. Collins at the moment. It's Nan Collins's son.
Yes, Robert.
Robert.
Okay, Robert, okay.
That's what I knew growing up.
He goes by Edwin, or something like that.
Yes.
Okay. But he's, he's on top of it, and he warned the driver to stay off the runway, to hug the tree line, and don't go anything close to the end of the runway, if you don't have to.
Here's what I'm confused about.
Yes, sir.
This is not the first time we've had a discussion about somebody being on the runway.
That's correct.
When they didn't need to be there. And it's been our people, somebody else's people, we've talked about, the bill did issue NOTAMs.
Yes.
You mentioned them ago, when the Commissioner was asking about that, you didn't know where they needed to go. Well, all this should be clearly laid out where they're working. And we knew before, when Scott almost got hit, I mean, he's working for us.
Yes.
So we definitely know where he's at.
Yes.
So why are we not issuing appropriate NOTAMs to make sure people aren't trying to land on these runways, when there's work going on?
We have initiated that. Even Scott has the authority to do that on his own now.
Yeah.
I put him on the list, called the FAA, and issue a NOTAM. Now, let me make NOTAM clear. The pilot has to be updated on those NOTAMs. He has to look at the airport and say, what NOTAMs do I have on that airport? We have so many people who land out there, it's an uncontrolled airport, you don't know who they are, don't know where, when they're coming.
Right.
They don't even have to announce it on the radio that they're there. But it's good common business for the pilot to do that, and most of them do.
Yeah, but we, we still can take care of what we need to do.
Yes. We have flags, we have some new flags ordered for all the vehicles, flashing lights, the whole ball of wax.
And even, even with contractors working at the airport, in other words, we know what sections they're clearing.
Yes.
They're not just going and clearing where they want to clear.
Yes.
So, I mean, I don't know how we can't coordinate and at least do what we need to do, that's all I'm trying to say. Of course, we can't be responsible for how other people either don't check the system or whatever, but we need to do what we need to do.
That seems to be the issue, because Ted was saying, the driver went where he was not supposed to go, but Commissioner Ward, you kind of said, we need to, there needs to be some education or protocol, something that if you're going to do work on the airport, okay, they're handed a sheet, okay, here's all the things you can't, can't do, or do, this is how you get permission to go on this runway. Something that they, they sign off on and accept responsibility on, because, I mean, the NOTAMs is only, but good for so much, but like Ted is saying, well, what if the pilot doesn't check it, or, you know. Still, yeah, it's, yeah, we need to do a little bit better with making sure that people on the runway are, well, I'm sorry, on the airport are acting more responsibly. It's a contractor, you know, with, with Scott, I, Mr. Tom Mesher, he volunteered, and he had two or three days of training with Scott after that issue happened.
Yes.
So now Scott is good to go, you know? But it seems like it's more than just that, you know, contractors and other county departments, maybe, I don't know, but, Mr. Chairman, you're right, we need to get a better grip on what's going on there. Change the, our procedures and operations out to the airport slightly, to, this doesn't happen too often. I hear Commissioners Ward's concerns about this, which is valid, you know, we've got to fix this.
Okay. Unless you have some questions for me, that's my report. Steve does, he will address also the T-hanger screws. So their recommendation is to go forward with something on that. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I got something too, a couple more things. Before you leave, Mr. Ted.
Yes.
One, the, this decommissioning of this NDB, do we need to, is that a board action that we need to do?
I would like permission to do it. We talked about this some times back. It's obsolete, it's going to cost about $26,000 to repair or replace, in this case. My recommendation that we decommission it, get rid of it, it's, unless you want to keep it, that's up to you, but we will need about $26,000 to replace it. It's obsolete, like I say, and very few people use it. The military is actually the last ones to use it, to my knowledge, and I have spoken to Tyndall, and they said, because we own it, they're not interested in repairing it.
Of course not.
I thought we'd already talked about decommissioning, yeah.
We did talk about it, sir, and, but I didn't have a clear understanding of permission to do it.
Let's go ahead and do that now, I'll make a motion to decommission it, so we don't have to deal with this again.
Check it.
Okay, so a motion to decommission this non-directional beacon radio, by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Sanders. And any discussion? My own discussion would be, if it were functioning, could the military use it?
They, they could, and they, they would. Those Pilatus 12s that you see circling around, they use it all the time, because they're going to third world countries where that's all they have.
Okay.
And that's what we used to have, and we still have it, it's still there, but it's a problem of the maintenance. Who's going to pay for it?
Well, follow up question. Is it going to, say for instance, just out of a wild discussion question, Tyndall actually decided next month they want to start doing some kind of MOU with Franklin County to use the airport more for some kind of proceed, is it going to require a non-directional beacon? Or is it truly obsolete stuff that we don't need to really worry about?
Yes, you're right, it is obsolete. Most aircraft do not have the ADF receivers in their aircraft anymore, but some of the older aircraft do, still. And it's repair, maintenance for them, the pilot, and if they're not using it, they depend on the GPSs.
Okay. Well, if it's truly old technology, I agree with the rest of the board, I think we just need to decommission. Okay. That was all I had. All in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, one more thing. I know this whole roofing situation, I think I asked, I was a couple meetings back, about an update. Do we have an update from Mr. Collins, and to when this grant money is going to be available for the roof replacement? Do you have a timeline?
Actually, we'll be here next meeting to give you an update, but that and a number of grants.
Commissioner, I could address that a little bit, if you like. I did talk to Mr. Collins about this last week, before I brought it up, and he said that there's no money available for the T-hangers. Now, the roof money that is available, and the project is due to start any time, is on the FBO roof.
I, I think I was under that understanding, Mr. Ted, I think I remember that was the FBO, but I was just saying, I want to update on that too, because I went out to the FBO not too long ago, and it's still leaking, it's got the same issues that I had two years ago when I went.
Yes.
So I just want to make sure we're still online, and get that money to replace that roof, because it's not fair for our FBO to be in that building and have the roof falling in.
Right.
I mean, it's just, it's not.
So...
And, and that's the first thing people look at, and I was out there, and when, as I was out there, there was a private plane landing with multiple people heading to the island. What do you got to do? You got to go inside, like, I think it was Commissioner Amoson brought it, you got to, you go in, you got to go to the bathroom. That's a reflection of our airport.
Yes.
And I want to make sure that it's nice.
That, that has been taken care of, the restroom situation.
Yes. So I could tell you, I'll just go ahead, so in talking to John, so what will be fixed first, because to make sure we have enough funding, it would be the office space and the storage space in the back. He will leave the, the hangar area last, because that seems to be the best part of the roof. So in case there's an issue with funding, at least we fix the office, fix the storage in the back, and then we'll move forward to the hangar. But I'll defer to him to give you more detailed information in the next one. So I think it's over, it's likely over $400,000 that's there right now. One estimate came in to do everything all at once with about $600,000. Commissioner Amoson is having that same reaction he had when I told him that number last week, so, yeah. But yes, that's where we are. But again, he'll be on the next agenda to update the board.
If I may, I will let you know this, I personally did patch that roof again last week, and I fixed several places that were obviously looked like they may be leaking. As, one place was especially where the old antenna was that we just replaced, and we're waiting on a rain to see if I did any good. We haven't had a rain yet, so check it out.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else have anything for Mr. Ted? Sorry, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioners.
Mr. Steve Kirschenbaum?
Hello, members of the Commission. It's a pleasure to serve, a pleasure to be back here. Steve Kirschenbaum, Chairman of the Airport Operations Economic Development Board. Just wanted to address one thing that Michael said, I was going to say the exact same thing. There needs to be a document with bullet points, very clear, somebody steps onto that airport, it's the exact same thing that's given to a vendor at the airport, to say, here's the do's and don'ts with pulling on the airport. And I think if we have one voice in that document, we're not going to have to worry about anything in the future, because people are getting bits and pieces from different people. First item on my agenda, action item, the county applied Department of Commerce a community planning and technical assistance grant to engage an engineering firm for the development of a comprehensive report to do an 1,100-foot runway extension in Appalachia Cola for the purpose of creating jobs in industry. Before we go ahead with that, and John Collins was supposed to be here, but he had a conflict of interest today with another meeting, he suggested that we do a initial wetlands evaluation, determine the wetlands' impact before the comprehensive plan that we're applying for. And it's only $4,000 for, for Garlic Environmental to look at all the data that's in the system to see if this runway extension is even possible. And I think it's something that we should definitely do. John kicked in with the purpose of this preliminary wetland evaluation is to provide the county with preliminary understanding of the wetland limits off the end of runway 1432. This will assist the county with planning for the runway extension, since wetland impacts will be a big consideration for design and permitting. So it's a preliminary thing that will let us know if this is a possibility. So what I'm asking for is somebody to make a motion to allow AVCON to retain Garlic Environmental for $4,000 to do this preliminary.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to defer to Ms. Griffin. Could you explain what, to the board what you explained to me earlier about the wetland study?
Yes, we had included that actually in the Community Planning Technical Assistance Grant. We do need to reach out and see, you know, where that application stands, because that was included as part of it. So if they're not going to fund it, then maybe we will pursue, but I would probably say...
I have an update.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, it was in my mail this morning.
Okay.
We actually are not going to be considered. They removed ours, they were, in their language, they had, it was competitive process, and they had so many grants that they, at this time, they're not going to be pursuing ours. I read that this morning before the meeting, so we don't have to worry about that.
Okay.
We can move on with business as usual.
Okay.
All right. But still, we're going to be pursuing other avenues to get that done, and I think the most important thing is to find out if it is possible with the wetlands. And I think a $4,000 expenditure to decide on the economic future of the county and the airport is a good expense.
Yeah. It's a pleasure of the board.
Steve, Mr. Kirschenbaum, I don't disagree. Would you allow staff to have a discussion with Mr. Collins about this a little bit more, before we agree to that today, just to make sure?
Make sure what?
About this wetlands preliminary.
Well, if you're going to do that, if the board's good with that, I want to say something else. So we, we're only a year removed or so from having a really big problem, potentially at the airport.
Mm-hmm.
And it was about wetlands, and about what they were saying with the FEMA flood map. We've never tried to mitigate all that, because here's the thing, so the FAA is saying our elevation at the airport's 22 feet, and that FEMA map was saying it was 14. We also need to do something about that. We need to handle that before it comes back to us.
Yeah, and I, you're right, and I do need to talk to our flood plain manager to see where we are, because I thought we were, we were going to, the county was going to hire its own surveyor to do that entire airport, so we have some evidence to deal with FEMA when they come back at us.
Yes.
That's what I thought.
Yes. Well, that's what we discussed, but we never have taken any action.
Yes, so...
So, yeah, that's still something that needs to be done, because if they would have adopted their initial that they sent us, we wouldn't be talking about this right now.
So that would include what, well, let me ask John, if that would include what Mr. Kirschenbaum is talking, would it be part of it, or is it still something separate?
That could be in addition to and separate, I'm fine, I'm just saying, it brings up something we need to handle, yes.
A bigger problem we have, yes, that we never addressed.
I guess we did and never did.
And I think it's very important, because all we're doing is pursuing grant after grant after grant to try to make this happen. If we don't know if it can happen, why waste our wheels turning trying to do it?
But I agree with you.
Yeah, it's true. So, what's the pleasure of the board today? Do you want to take action on this one item, or waiting to address them all together? What do you all want to do?
I would say let's just address them all together. I mean, I don't, I don't think anything that immediate right now, that we can't look at this at the next, when we convene the next time. I mean, I don't think we're going to have anybody to come in with any, you know, I don't think there's going to be a unicorn floating in in the next 30 days. So, let's just err on the side of caution with that, and then, and just put it all together, and, and that way we can make a better decision.
So, since it is in action, Adam, do we need to table it?
I would ask, yes, Commissioner, to answer your question as a chairman, yes, I would ask to table, because let Mr. Kirschenbaum and myself speak to John. He's actually going to be here at the next meeting, like I just explained to Commissioner Ward, so we could have him give an update on that, and then we could get some Q and A and then decide to move forward. He can wait a couple of weeks to do that.
Okay, sounds good.
I'll make a motion that we table.
All right. All right, so we have a motion by Commissioner Amoson to table to the next meeting. Can I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Crowe made the second. Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Five oh.
Okay. And our next recommendation was going to be, but Ted has already discussed this with you, about the roofs and the doors and the sides on the hangers. And I agree, that personally, I agree, that we initially were going to ask for a scope of work order from our airport engineer, and I think that'll be a whole ton of money. But it's not just the roofs, it's the walls on the T-hangers. The screws are just getting old, and I think it's good to do it in phases, like Aaron was saying. The next thing is, a few minor changes were made to the license agreement for the T-hangers in anticipation of this airport inspection. They look terrific. The airport board voted in favor of moving forward with it. The county attorney reviewed it, and basically, we missed one thing. The A and B hangers have individual electric meters. So, now there's going to be two different types of agreements. One, that's going to be for the A and B hangers, that they have to get their own electricity and their meters, and one for the other hangers. So, they're already put together. I think you've been emailed copies of them. So, we'd just like to, the AOEED is recommending accepting these agreements as the future standard for all T-hanger rentals and current renewals. So, I wonder if we get a motion on making that the document, the official document for the airport.
Attorney, sure, you've looked at this?
Yes, sir. I'm the one that actually made the changes and sent it to them for review, and they've approved it as submitted.
Okay. So, the only thing that concerns me is what Mr. Kirschenbaum just mentioned about that A and B need to be considered separate. We don't have that language in front of us, so, because of the need for power meters. So, I'm fine if that's what the board wants to do, but we don't have that language in front of us. Do you know what he's referring to?
Yes, sir. The-
I have it here if you want.
Do you want me to answer your question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
After the board initially approved the T-hanger license agreements, it was brought to my attention, I think through maybe Mr. Kirschenbaum, maybe from Avcon. Anyway, it was brought to my attention, there are two different types of hangar arrangements at the airport. Some rows of hangers have individual electric meters, some of them do not. There were some other changes that I wanted to make to the insurance requirement for, basically regarding uninsured aircraft. So, I revised the agreements into, the set of hangers that have their individual meters will have their own type of agreement. The T-hangers that have one meter for the entire row of hangers has a different agreement, but it's only in regards to the utilities and the responsibility for utility payments. Again, I made the, cleaned up the language regarding uninsured aircraft. In your prior T-hanger contracts with your, with, not Avcon, Centric, they, essentially, if you have an uninsured aircraft, they charge an additional fee. The AOEED did not want to have any uninsured aircraft at the airport, which I, I agree with that, there should be insurance coverage. So, that, that language was cleaned up. And then also, the other change was, the original agreement had provided for the county to provide county locks, and I think staff had internally discussed that, and said they did not want the county to provide locks. The individuals provide their own locks and then provide keys to the counties. Those were the changes that, that I made to the contract. But I personally made the changes and sent the two forms of the T-hanger leases, license agreements to the AOEED to review and make a recommendation, since that there had been changes made after the board had approved the original form. And I wanted to go through that same process again, send it, the revised draft back to the AOEED for their review and return it back to this board, which is what you're considering here this morning.
So, those revisions were actually done by you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's what I wanted to make sure.
Mr. Chairman, go back to the, to your agenda on your tablet, please. You see right above with Mr. Kirschenbaum, where it says click here for reports and all attachments? Now, Mr. Kirschenbaum, I'm assuming that the ones you sent me are the ones to upload, are the final versions?
Yes, the final versions. And also with the electric meters, I'd like to commend Centric, because Centric was the one that brought that to our attention, that there were meters on those hangers. Meanwhile, the electric use, if you look at the county electric on those hangers, is almost nothing, so.
So, I'm clicking on the wrong tag.
I was going to say, if I'm confused with where I put the attachments now, I apologize to the board members. I do. I just, you know.
Yeah, that's on me. I clicked on the wrong tag. That's why I had questions. I was like, what are you looking at here?
I mean, Mr. Chairman, because I changed, basically, since I had to put a link for the attachments for the public, I just use this one link for everybody, basically. Easier than, you know, everyone. Everyone sees the same thing. And if we have to update it, it's a lot easier to update it this manner than it is the whole way.
Yes, sir.
So, I do apologize for that.
All right. So, do we have, what's the pleasure of the board? Did we make a motion yet?
I'll make a motion and go ahead and move forward with it the way it is. I mean, I think they've done a diligent job.
So, we have a motion to, to move forward and to accept this, these recommendations from the AOEED board by Commissioner Amoson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Crowe. Any more discussion, Commissioners? All in favor? Any opposed? That is a five oh vote.
Well, that's fabulous, because that's, that's needed for in about a week or so. The other thing was, in rate sheet with the rates for these hangers, the AOEED recommends in lieu and condition of the hangers, the county should maintain the current rates, and upon renewal next year with repairs completed, update the rates of renewals, maybe 5% or 10% increase, but once the hangers are repaired. I forwarded the county coordinator and the county attorney a copy of the current rates, and I'm just asking the county commission to adopt the current rates that are being charged at the airport right now to be the blueprint for the next year until we do renewals. So, it's basically accepting the rates that we were charging already. I believe I have them here. Michael, I gave you copies of those earlier.
Yes, that's the handout?
Yeah, that's, that's the, that's funny. I don't see my own papers. Here they are. It's going to be for the A and B hangers. The A hangers are the biggest. It's 330 a month. The B hangers will be 295. The C, D, and E, which are the smallest, are 265. What I missed on this was the end units, which are storage units on these T-hangers. The row A ones are very small. They're $189. I didn't realize B, C, D, and E were bigger. So, it's, it's, I'm sorry, it's, the smallest ones are C, D, and E, I'm sorry, 135. And then the row B will be 150, and the row A will be 189. And those are just for the end units on the hangers. So, I'm just asking the, the commission to adopt the current rates that are at the airport for Centric to renew all these license agreements, so we have all our paperwork in order for the inspection.
All right. Pleasure of the board.
Mr. More question. So, these, this, the, the agreement that we just approved, these rates are in that agreement, correct?
These rates are the attachment for that agreement, yes.
So, do we need to do that in a motion, since it's already in the contract that we just made a motion to approve?
They set it up. They wanted to do it separately.
Okay.
I didn't see any procedural reason not to allow that, so it would be done in two steps. It could have been done in one step, but this is perfectly fine as well.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. So, we have a motion to approve this recommendation. Second by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Crowe. Any discussion, Commissioners?
I got, real quick, just, just for my fellow board members up here, my fellow Commissioners. You know, I'm always the one that's out there saying, hey, we need to get a little more bang for our buck on what we got out there. With, and at first, I'm going to be honest with y'all, I was, I was in profit mode, I guess, but, but, but then I had, I did a 180 on it. This weekend, I got to thinking about it, and I had some offhand conversations with people that weren't, you know, wasn't a tenant, just on the standard, the shape those hangers are in. And I, and I got to thinking about it. It'd be like me renting a house from somebody, and the roof's leaking. They come to me and tell me, hey, I'm going up on your rent, but I'll get to it. I'll fix it down the road. With this in particular, I just feel like we need to at least start getting some repairs done out there before we try to, you know, beat on these. And that's, that's no, nothing against Centric. But, you know, in the past, we did increase certain things with Centric this past year. We have done some improvements out there. Not all that we need to get done, but keep in mind, these are tenants. They're not, they're not a business where Centric is a business, so I don't want, Centric to feel as though I'm kind of going against the grain of what I've always done with them. But at the end of the day, I just could not bring myself to ask somebody else to pay a higher rent whenever the building's falling in, so to speak. But anyway, I just wanted to let y'all know where I stood on that, because I know in the past, I've been kind of vocal about it, but.
Makes sense. So, we did have a motion, a second, but we have not voted, correct?
I do not have a motion or a second for the rate sheet.
I made a motion.
Yeah, she did, and Commissioner Crowe seconded it. Right, yeah. All right. Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
I would like to say something too in regard to that on a positive with Centric Aviation. They said if there was a rent increase on those hangers, that they would take 100% of that money and give it back to the county for hangar repairs. So, that was very nice on their part if it was increased. The other thing, we had one resignation from the airport board and a second followed with Ken Weeks. Ken Weeks, who was an alternate, is now in Pensacola. So, what we're recommending the AOEED is the board recommends the county advertising for two AOEED board seats, members at large with a resume, and hopefully we can take a look at them and advise you to get the best person for the job.
Pleasure of the board.
Is there a move?
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Amoson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? All right. We have four to one vote.
Okay. And the last thing is, the AOEED board recommends getting a scope or a work order for an outside vendor to take a look at these areas that are being cleared by the airport, that they're, that they are mowable. The RFP for, for doing those areas for clearing has nothing to do with grading or bulldozing. And there's a few areas in the new parks that are being cleared that either we need to get the road department in the slow season to take care of, or get a bulldozer. I don't know how you guys want to handle that, but we put down, the AOEED board recommends getting a scope work order for an outside vendor to help make these areas mowable, or if foliage permits, wait till after the growing season and rent equipment again. So, what would be your pleasure you'd like to do with that?
I would definitely like to see us proceed with, taking, airport, taking care of the airport. I mean, I know in the past, maybe 20 years, we have used the road department. We talked about this morning about how short-staffed they are.
Right.
We don't need to take them off of doing stuff that they normally do to go work at the airport. So, the airport needs to take care of the airport, is how I feel about it. But whatever the board wants to proceed, I'm good with it.
Mr. Chairman, I, I got a question now. These areas, you talking about like the 1836 out there?
No, where they just cleared outside the fence for, I think, 14, the area.
I'm familiar with it, trust me.
Yeah. It's, it's, that's the area they're complaining about, where it's a little bit bumpy. Just, we need a machine to go through there and just take down the ones.
Are you talking about inside the fence or the area outside?
Outside the fence.
They just cleared it. I mean, nobody's going to go out there and put a piece of equipment on it right now. Last year, what we done, let me finish, please.
Right, right.
But what we did last year was, we waited till it was the non-growing season, and we got a piece of equipment out there, and the road department had employees, and they got out there and, and graded it out somewhat with the bulldozer. That's basically what we need to do now. There's no need in going and, and exhausting funds on something that's not, I mean, it's not immediate. You, you follow me? I mean, we can get that piece of equipment right back in, say in November, December, January, and we can put that person back out there, and it can just, it can look just like the end of 1836.
Right. That was just brought to me at the board meeting. It was a pleasure of my, of the airport board, but I agree with you.
Okay.
So, we'll just kill that one. And the last thing is informational items. We accepted the resignations. George Wilkerson, an amazing asset to AOEED board, has been working with Haney College School of Aviation. I wish he was here to speak today. He's sick. He said it continues to look favorably. I gave him Jennifer's number with Florida's Great Northwest, and they've been in communication. And I think there's going to be a follow-up meeting in June with the dean of Haney College and with Florida's Great Northwest and George Wilkerson and whoever else is going to be at that meeting. But I think we have a real good chance of bringing that educational facility to the airport, and that will be the catalyst to bring jobs to the airport, because the skilled workforce could roll right out of it. And a few people are saying to me, we're in the middle of nowhere. Where are the students going to come from? Look at Gulf Coast College over there in St. Joe. They just started a nursing program, and they're coming from all over to come down to it. So, I think we'll do real well with that school. Last thing is, last commission meeting, I said we were approved by the Department of Defense and the Air Force for flybys for the July 3rd celebration in Apalachicola. Well, the commander of, I didn't have aircraft and I didn't have pilots. The commander of Tyndall went and said, thank you, and he said, I got two jets for you. So, we have two F-35s. They're going to do a flyby July 3rd at 3:00 over the waterfront for the opening ceremonies of the 4th of July celebration in Apalachicola. Chris from the high school ROTC program, the cadets have volunteered in their spare time to do a color guard on the National Anthem for the flyby. So, we're all set with that. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a question, but I do have a comment to make on the educational thing to just kind of echo and, and what Mr. Kirschenbaum was saying. When me and him, me and him went over months and months ago, when we initially talked to the commander at Tyndall, we went and visited with Haney, and they have such a high demand on those classes that they, they're limited to a certain number that they can take in. And if we can get this educational program here, they're going to come, because there's such an overflow. The same thing is happening with the nursing program, which I'm sure Commissioner Ward's familiar with that part. But it, it's definitely a positive thing, and, and I could honestly see the guy, when I met, I met with Haney and Mr. Wilkerson, his, his eyes were just, you know, he had stars in his eyes. So, I think it's something that, that's going to benefit us, and it's definitely going to benefit Haney, so.
Well, thank you for taking that trip with me, and I think that's going to be something amazing at the airport. And I think a lot of good things are happening with Department of Commerce and other venues, and God willing, the appropriations that we have out requests for, hopefully they'll get earmarked to us within the next couple of months. And thank you for having me today, and thank you for all the support and help you've been giving us.
Mr. Chairman, I've got something real quick, not necessarily for you, Mr. Steve, but the T-hanger, when we're talking about the roof and the replacement of the screws, did the $7,800 quote that we get, that we got, does that include the screws on the walls as well, or is that just the roof?
It is. It's actually roof and wall.
It says it's actually roof and walls.
Okay, I, I just wanna make sure we were on the same page. Okay.
And Erin, is that for the whole row, the individual row?
It is.
Okay, that, that's a fabulous done.
Yeah, it sounds like a lot of work for.
Yeah. All right, well, thank you very much for having me today, and I'll see you in a couple of weeks.
All right. So now we, uh, turn to Joe, you ready to do, we're, we're not having one of these hearings, correct? It got pulled?
That is correct. The eleven o'clock public hearing regarding the parking ordinance at Alligator Point was canceled by this board at the last meeting because the board's decision was to make the parking ordinance countywide as opposed to just Alligator Point. I have not yet drafted that new ordinance for your review, but I, I plan on having a draft for you at the, the, the next meeting is my plan.
Okay.
The ordinance, uh, that will be heard today, uh, was scheduled for eleven oh five. Uh, it is an ordinance amending County Ordinance eighty-two dash six to provide for additional prohibitions on the use, location, and occupation of travel trailers, providing definitions, providing for retroactive application, providing for penalties, and providing for severability and an effective date. And I just wanted to highlight for the board and the public, uh, the provision of retroactive application. That, that's the first time that, that this board has had to deal with that issue. And what it means is that the prohibitions of, of this ordinance, if you do adopt it as submitted or as amended by the board, um, it, it will apply backwards in time, at least to the nineteen eighty-two ordinance, because I, I felt that would be necessary and wanted to be able to address any defense that comes up from someone that says, well, I, I, my RV was in place before you adopted that ordinance, and that ordinance prohibition does not apply to me. So that is the reason for the retroactive application, uh, that I'm suggesting that you approve in today's, uh, hearing. Uh, excuse me, the, the consideration of this ordinance, and, uh, if the board's ready for me to proceed, I will do so. Okay, well, as I said, in nineteen eighty-two, the, the county adopted a ordinance providing, um, restrictions, limitations, and penalties for the illegal use of travel trailers in Franklin County. Uh, this board is proposing to adopt some additional prohibitions, uh, to that nineteen eighty-two ordinance. And as I understand it, this is what the board, uh, is wanting to consider. Uh, travel trailers shall be an accessory use of land in Franklin County, Florida, and shall not be a dwelling within the meaning of the Franklin County zoning code. That no person shall occupy a travel trailer within any part of the following areas of Franklin County, St. George Island, Dog Island, Alligator Point, Bald Point. No person shall occupy a travel trailer within one thousand feet of any water body, and as the water body is defined by the ordinance. No person shall occupy a travel trailer on property zoned as R one. No person shall occupy a travel trailer at a construction site with an active building permit. Uh, that, that is to address an issue that's addressed in the nineteen eighty-two ordinance, which specifically allows an older builder to occupy a RV as they build their structure. If, if this ordinance is adopted today, that older builder will have to live somewhere else while they build their dwelling. No person shall use a travel trailer for storage at a construction site with an active building permit. The area to be governed by this ordinance is the unincorporated areas of Franklin County. Exclusions from the ordinance, travel trailers may be used and occupied within a properly permitted travel trailer park or a properly permitted recreational parking and camping as provided by your C-three commercial zoning provisions, uh, or a state park. So state, I, I know that at one point the board had, uh, discussed banning RVs completely, uh, or travel trailers from St. George Island, but since they are allowed on the state park there, the board has chosen to make that as an exception, uh, from this ordinance. Uh, and further, this ordinance shall not apply to travel trailers located within properly permitted and zoned RV parks. It's defined by chapter five thirteen Florida statutes. Uh, I do have a couple of, uh, changes I want the board to consider in the definition and rules of construction, uh, specifically on the definition of occupy. Uh, as drafted, occupy is defined as, um, the act, state, or condition of holding, possessing, or residing in a travel trailer, including but not necessarily limited to sleeping overnight in, or parking a travel trailer in any location or at any site longer than twelve hours, except as authorized by this ordinance. I'm suggesting, uh, recommending to the board that you delete the or parking, uh, from the definition of occupy, and that we add in as a definition, uh, or a rule of construction, I should say, that the unoccupied storage of a single travel trailer shall be allowed on a parcel of land. I, I've had some, uh, some expression to me of concern that somehow this ordinance, the board was intending to ban people from storing their unoccupied travel trailers on their own property, and I don't think that was your intent. So I tried to clean that up a little bit by adding in the rule of construction. Again, that unoccupied storage of a single travel trailer is allowed per parcel of land. I provide a definition of person, which includes not only, you know, natural born human beings, but it includes all artificial entities as well, because I was concerned that someone may say, well, my LLC's not covered by that, uh, ban saying that, you know, I can't store my, uh, or can't occupy my travel trailer within a thousand feet of a certain water body. So all individual human beings and artificial entities are covered by, uh, this ordinance. The definition of travel trailers, I took, it's a very long definition, but I took that straight out of Florida statutes because I wanted to have as broad a definition of travel trailer as possible. And then the prohibition that says, no person shall occupy a travel trailer within one thousand feet of any water body. I have defined water body, for your consideration, uh, as meaning the following bodies of water. St. Vincent Sound, Appalachia Cola Bay, East Bay, St. George Sound, which I misspelled as Senior, sorry about that. Alligator Harbor, Oklaugney Bay, Appalachia Cola River, Carribean River, New River, and Crooked River. So unless the board wants to add or delete any other water body, that, that would be the statutory definition of water body governed by the ordinance. And then the penalty, uh, would be, for the violation of this ordinance, would be a misdemeanor of the second degree for a landowner to allow a travel trailer on their real property, and it shall also be a misdemeanor of second degree for any person to occupy any travel trailer in Franklin County, Florida. So it should say to allow occupation of a travel trailer, so it's.
So that first sentence should be about occupation, not just about having a travel trailer on the property, correct?
Right, it would, it should not allow the occupation of, so that, that would allow for the storage. Uh, I apologize for the lack of clarity on that draftsmanship, and it would be a misdemeanor of the second degree. So it's not, not only for the person occupying, it would also be if the landowner was improperly allowing someone to occupy. So it would be a penalty for both, is the intention of that penalty. Uh, the, 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 the specific intent of this ordinance, that the penalty shall apply to both the landowner and the owner of the travel trailer who are in violation of the ordinance. It also has a provision for other methods of enforcement, which essentially would allow, you, you can enforce it either as a criminal second degree misdemeanor offense, or through your newly adopted code enforcement process. And then paragraph twelve is that no grandfathering in the ordinance shall be retroactive in application. Uh, it is the express intent of the Franklin County Board of County Commissioners that this ordinance shall be retroactive to December seventh, nineteen eighty-two, the date on which Ordinance eighty-two dash six was adopted and gave notice to the public of the limitations on the use of travel trailers, motor homes, and mobile campers in Franklin County, Florida. Ordinance eighty-two dash six has been in full force and effect continuously since its adoption on December seventh, nineteen eighty-two. And then I put in, uh, some additional savings, um, provisions, just, just in case a judge should not agree to the retroactive application. There's some savings provisions in here that any grandfathering that a court, uh, order may impose would expire upon the sale or transfer or ownership of the land or the death of the owner, of the, the record owner of the property. The effective date would be, of this ordinance would be as provided by law, which is essentially if the board adopts this as presented with the amendments that have been discussed, or any other amendment made by the board. Um, once it's signed and filed with the state of Florida, it would then become effective. And then there's some technical language involving severability and repealer. Essentially, if a court should decide that some part of this ordinance is, um, declared to be unenforceable, then they will sever out that unenforceable part and retain the remainder of the ordinance. Uh, without that severability provision, if a judge were to declare part of it invalid, and you didn't have the severability provision, then the whole ordinance would have to be redone. So Commissioners, if you have no questions for me, it would be an appropriate time to take public comment.
Any questions for the attorney?
Mr. Chairman, I've got a couple. You addressed the one I had a question about, which was the allowing the travel trailers as storage. So essentially, if I have an RV on my property, I can store it, just can't have people living in it, obviously.
Correct.
Furthermore, the, in the old ordinance, it stated that people could stay, family members could stay in said RV on my property up to seven to fourteen days, seven days, you know, with, with or without sewage, I guess. So we're eliminating that altogether?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
At, at, within the limitations of the ordinance, so if you're, uh, you know, outside of a thousand feet of a water body, or you're in some other residentially zoned property other than R one, then they would still be allowed to. But in, in R one areas and within a thousand feet of, of the defined water bodies, they would not be able to.
Okay, and then, uh, i- i- in terms of natural disaster, fire, hurricane, um, this, obviously, in the way I'm reading it, basically says, it don't matter, if there's a hurricane and your house gets destroyed or damaged, or there's a fire, you can't live in this RV on your property until, I mean, you can't, you can't do that. You have to find alternate housing.
Well, this would, to try to answer your question, Commissioner, this would be day to day, just how things are carried on. But anytime we have a natural disaster, like we had the fires at East Point, this board made a, uh, uh, emergency order that allowed all those residents to live in that RV on their property for a year and a half. So I mean, that's something we can address through states of emergency.
Mr. Chair?
Correct.
Yes.
Is that, but is that something, 'cause I had that question too?
Yeah.
Is that something that we can put under the exclusionary, um, section?
It would.
Or?
It would be handled under a state of emergency, the best way to do it, that way it's, it's clearly defined. Uh, because, I mean, there's no reason to have, I think, I'm not the lawyer, but I don't think there's a reason to have exclusions to an ordinance you're trying to do. If it's gonna handle truly an emergency situation, because we already have protocol and procedures set up under state of emergency to handle those situations.
Commissioner Crum, I'm, I'm sorry, sir.
It's okay.
Commissioner Crum, uh, if the chairman doesn't mind, so what you would wanna do is keep it, uh, uh, during a state of emergency, because you wanna tailor your ordinance or exclusion to that particular area at that time for what's needed. Like the East Point fire, you see, you wanna make sure that that ordinance met the zoning, whatever needed to be dealt with at that particular location, because that, though, they're mostly R two and R four, I believe, if I'm not mistaken. So it, it's kinda tough, if you, if you do something, it's, now, what happens when you get to that time where you need to be more specific for that, again, that particular area, you see, so that you, you give yourself more flexibility than you, you know, doing it as a, a state of emergency? Yes, sir.
I do have a, just, sorry. I do have a question, just to, to kinda cover that subject. What if there was only one impacted homeowner, though? I mean, what if, you know, basically?
Yeah, like a fire.
Yeah, like a fire, where it's not necessarily an entire neighborhood that's destroyed. That wouldn't necessarily trigger a state of emergency, um, so that's.
And that's, that's why I brought that up, is.
The answer is it would be prohibited if this ordinance is adopted.
Yes.
If they fall within that defined, you know, water body or a thousand feet of the defined water body or an R one zoned area, or again, the following areas, St. George Island, Dog Island, Alligator Point, Bald Point.
If, that is where Commissioner Crum, what Commissioner Crum is asking for would, would be an exclusion to, uh, some sort of a, I hate to use the word emergency, but let's just say situation for right now, that.
Yeah, that would almost be a hardship exclusion, not a state of emergency.
Better term. Uh, I would say you make an exclusion for hardship that they have to apply for so that this board still have, still has some control as to what it's issued for, for how long, you know, you, you get some parameters set in, in.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I guess I'm a little slow to the party here, but I could easily draft a provision that says, I think this is where the board's going, if, say, your home is destroyed and is uninhabitable as determined by the county building official, um, and you have to demolish and, you know, replace, put a new dwelling, uh, that, that you could carve out a, basically, an exception that says, for a period, a defined period of time, eighteen months, if, if we go with the East Point fire area, that if your, your residential dwelling is destroyed and cannot be occupied and has to be, you know, razed and rebuilt, then, uh, they can temporarily occupy the property with, with a travel trailer of a certain size. I mean, you could require it to be, you know, two hundred square feet or a hundred square. I mean, you, you could put a, a definition in terms of the minimum size requirement, and then define a period of time that they could then stay on their property while they rebuild.
I, I would be fine with having a discussion about that, uh, and, and then it looks like, just where I see it going, we have a lot of language here that needs to be amended, so we're probably gonna table this and get a redraft so everybody can see the language that we're talking about adopting.
Yes.
Instead of adjusting on the fly, but where, I would be more comfortable, me personally, with not restricting what size their travel trailer has to be if they're doing it for hardship.
Yeah.
'Cause then we're putting another thing on top of somebody that's going through hardship. And I'd also be in favor of not necessarily requiring them to demolish the house if it's repairable. You know what I mean, if it's, you know, if it, the house caught on fire and it burnt the back room and messed up some of the rest of it, but they can actually repair it versus demolishing the whole thing and starting over. I mean, that's just me, but that's the way I feel about it.
What?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Schuler, in reference to your item number five, does that conflict where, say, no person should occupy a travel trailer at a construction site with an active building permit? You know, say, for example, like, people lost their house on the island, you know, they had no place to stay. They were staying in a travel trailer. So that's the, that's another thing we're to think about.
Yeah.
They plan to rebuild.
Y'all are the.
Hypothetically.
Well, the board is privileged with interpreting this ordinance as, I, I mean, I can provide you with guidance. I, I could easily make a distinction between the two, but I, I do see the point that you're making. But, but the problem that you've run into in, in the past, I think, and the reason for that provision in paragraph five is you have these individuals that, you know, say they're going to apply for a building permit, or they do apply for a building permit, and then they never get started. You know, I, I know there were a couple of instances that the board has chatted about, uh, in the county where that's happened. I believe particularly over in Commissioner Jones's district where that's happened. Um, and there, there could be a way to address that. I mean, you could say, you would allow an, an older builder to, you know, occupy a travel trailer once they pull their building permit. However, if they don't commence in construction within, uh, you know, a defined period of time, say thirty days, then that, that right, occupy the travel trailer, an older builder is revoked.
Well, my, one of my thoughts.
Black lines are just, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. One of my thoughts is, Mr. Chairman, you still got East Point people over there from the fire, still living in those campers over there. That, that means we're gonna throw them out?
No, ma'am. I don't think they're in the R one zone.
Well, how about, another thing that the people's been telling me about, they don't think it needs to be a thousand feet from the water body. They think it needs to be more like five hundred feet, so I mean.
There's, I'll look at that, I'm the one to push for a thousand, I'll be honest with you, because looking, but looking at the map, that would mean that some people could still use the back of their property, but not the front of their property.
Yeah, yeah, I know that. I was just saying.
That was the reason why we came up with that number.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, if, can I give some, some history and some basis, especially for like Commissioner Crum, you know, that, that wasn't here when we went through this whole process, with, uh, we had the workshops throughout the county for code enforcement, and, you know, we have, we've had a lot of discussion over the years, you know, the board, uh, is still wants a code enforcement officer. Commissioners, the biggest complaint your staff gets are RV encampers. Let me just put it out there. But in, in different ways. In, in different ways, you know, for different reasons. I just got one week before, last, last week, you know, another one. And, and Commissioner, the way it's written, my opinion, your building departments, even Mrs. Banksen, who does, a lot of your, your code enforcement are violation. There, there are too many loopholes, and we have to find a way to tighten it. Now, I'll be honest, did I probably ask for too much? Yes. But I'm hoping by asking for more than what I think we need, we will basically negotiate it down to what is going to work. You know, Commissioner Sanders used an excellent term yesterday. She said, well, one of the things I want stated in there, that a camper cannot be a primary structure on the property. That's happening. And, and here's the deal, it's happening on some of your prime lots. People are buying waterfront lots. They might get a, a dock, or maybe not, or power for the dock, whatever. Never build a, a home.
I know.
They use a camper. That has to stop, commissioners. I mean, I'm, I'm sorry. I get frustrated, it, it has to stop.
And to add insult to injury, a lot of them are being used as VRBOs and Airbnb.
Let me stop that.
So we, we're going to have to do something. We've got to put enough teeth in there, because whether we get code enforcement or not, we're still dealing with that question. We got to have something that's enforceable, that is not from nineteen eighty-two, it's from twenty twenty-four.
Yes.
You see what I'm saying? And a lot of these, a lot of these was back when you had less than five thousand people in the county.
That's true.
You see what I'm saying? So we need to do this, and I know it makes a lot of people upset. But if you do it, if you're using a RV on the normal way, that's what you're supposed to do, you ain't got no problem. If those folks is trying to get up underneath the radar, you know.
Yeah, and Commissioner, to go along with that, that's, that's why Attorney Schuler, I know it is, because we've discussed it with him, I know I have. Number five, that's why he added it in there, because, so I have a resident that's finally built a house in East Point, that this is the third set of permits that the county's made him buy, because it's been that many months since he originally done it, and he's been living in RV the whole time. And I assure you, his neighbors aren't good with that. And they haven't been good with that for a long time. But now he is finally building, so, but it took, again, if you look at eighteen months, this is his third set of permits we've made him buy. So that's what we're trying to address. And I think if we list it as an exception, and it's known, then you're talking about a whole nother, a whole nother deal. But, you know, that's, people have kind of gamed our system with the eighteen months, and they know if they can get it there, they'll be there long enough, and say, well, I haven't been here for eighteen months, what's the problem? You know, so, anyway, that's what we're trying to address.
Okay, so let me get something straight with Mr. Schuler, too, in my mind. So the state forestry has campsites all around the county? That has nothing to do with it. That has nothing to do with what we're talking about.
The board has exempted state parks.
Okay. Well, it's not state parks, but it's camping area.
State area, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it also should probably include.
How about change it to state lands?
There you go.
Yeah, state lands.
There you go. That's what, exactly what I was fixing to say.
Yeah.
Make it easier. That way the state is covered, and we're not trying to tell the state what to do with their property.
That's right.
Which, which includes?
Mr. Chairman.
Which I'm glad.
How about that?
Yes, it does.
I, I kind of sit there, and just, just bear with me. I took some, I jotted down some notes with this whole ordinance. I'm going to kind of pick it, pick it. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Don't call me a bad word. Anyway, uh, and, and now, keep in mind what I'm about to say. This, this, this has nothing to do with a hardship, which we discussed, or a state of emergency. But just hear me out on this, and this is the, the moment we can all have this discussion, so I wanted to bring it up. Number two, St. George Island should just have a zero tolerance period for camps, which, I mean, it's a barrier island. At the end of the day, that, you know, we don't, we don't need somebody in a primary camp, or, you know, a primary resident shouldn't be a camper on St. George Island. With the exception of Dog Island, Alligator Point, Ball Point, that should also be the same. But now, you know, are we going to not allow people to, like, why, why, why wouldn't we just give them like a seven day permit or a fourteen day permit, like you have, like we have in the past, to allow family to come in and stay? You know, and then if we do have the code enforcement, we're called to Sheriff's Department and say, hey, make sure they're out. You know, and they can come in, buy a twenty-five dollar permit or whatever. Now, this is just ideas. Now, number three, no person should occupy a travel trailer within a thousand feet of a body of water. Again, without a temporary, I think that goes hand in hand with what I just said, with, with, with those, with regards to the island and Dog Island, Alligator Point, Ball Point. We can still issue a temporary permit. If you've got family coming in for the Fourth of July, and you want to throw your father and, or your mother-in-law, you want to get her out here in a camper. You know, you know, there, I don't see anything wrong with that.
Before the day is over.
It's fine. I live in a state of trouble. But anyway, I, I think we should take this into consideration. And I mean, I'm not saying that, that we don't need to do anything, I'm all for it. But I'm also sitting here trying to not take away a, 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 a property owner's rights at the same time. So that way we have some type of exemptions in here. The, the, no person should occupy a travel trailer on property zone as R1. I, I completely agree with that, with the exception of an owner buyer. Now, the, the easiest way to clean that up, and possibly, and this, I'd love y'all's input on this, is, you know, make sure, you know, we can put some stipulations in there. You have to be a resident of the county, you have to be a resident of the state of Florida. That'll, that'll eliminate our, our, our friends from Alabama, Georgia, or wherever. I'm not going to pick on those two particular states. But coming in, parking a camper, and having a, a weekend getaway in Florida on R1 waterfront, or whatever, you know what I mean? That would eliminate that. And, and also, it would allow a taxpayer, a citizen of the county, to build and, you know, sit, stay on the property while they're building, if they're doing an owner building, an owner builder. I mean, that, we, we could put that in there to where it would show that this person is, you know, is, is a citizen of the county. They are employed here. At least make them a citizen of the state of Florida. But, uh, I, I think if we could plug some stuff in with that right there, it should be an easier pill for everybody to kind of swallow. I think it would, would cover the bases of the folks that actually live here versus the folks that, that are coming in trying to cheat the system, so to speak. Now, I do understand what, what you're saying with times with the building permits, but that's easy. You could just put a three-strike rule in, that gentleman there.
We were, you were close to it, actually.
But, uh, I mean, we can put it in right, and, you know, you got six months per permit. Whenever you run out on that third permit, get the camper and go, you know? Or we can do it on two. It could be a two-strike rule, you know? I mean, we could get kind of creative with this, to where we're not coming in such a hard line, where we're creating a hardship for our citizens, because, let's face it, we have these conversations every month about workforce housing. If we're not careful, we're going to basically put some, you know, some folks that are, that are working, that are trying to better theirself homeless. I mean, think about it, if you want to build a home, or just say you want to upgrade your home, you got, you got a, a, a trailer somewhere, you're living in a mobile home, and then you decide, hey, I want to build a house? So I'm going to just, you know, get rid of the mobile home, park me a camper over here, and I'm going to sub this house out myself to save some money? You know, what are we doing to our citizens? You know, that, that's why I'm saying we need to kind of really get creative, and, 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 and we can do this. We can do this pretty quick, too. Uh, my only other thing is, is, uh, you know, we can always have a, you know, if you got people that, that, that have certain situations, we, we should have some clause in there to where we, as a board, can, can grant them a variance.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, and it doesn't have to be necessarily a fire. I mean, if they want to come here and explain their situation to us, just, just let's think about it. If somebody's trying to cheat the system, they're not going to come in here, know, you know, in front of this commission, knowing that we're going to sit here and pick their little hopes and dreams apart. But if we got someone sitting there saying, hey, look, you know, this is what I'm trying to do, and they, they explain it to us, then we should have that, that exemption in there. And of course, the top of my notes was a storm or emergency clause. Last thing we want to do is, God forbid, we get a hurricane in here, and then everybody's trying to come home, and then their home's gone, where are they supposed to go? They supposed to move to Tallahassee for? You know? We got to be able to allow them to come back in, you know, possibly stay in a camper until they can get back on their feet and whatnot. But I'm, I'm, I'm ready to have this discussion, so.
Good. I'm really glad you brought up the permit thing, because, Mr. Chairman, if you remember, it was over a year ago, you, myself, Courtney, Ms. Banksen, we went to the sheriff, and we had a series of meetings with the sheriff. And that's exactly what we came up with, and he was agreeable to that. If we issue permits and force them to put the permits on the outside where his officers can see them from the road by driving by, he was good with that. We just, it, it never got passed a previous board makeup. But, yes, Commissioner, you're right. If we're going to go to the permits route, yeah, then we could allow more, because then we have, we have guardrails. We have a control as to who can do what, and we, and we have a database here. So it's like you said, you call the sheriff, hey, we have suspicion this person is, is still there. They're like two weeks past their permit, so we need someone to go do something. I'm with you. If we agree to the permits, then yes, we can allow more, Commissioner. We really can.
And I'm good with that discussion, too, but, so the issue we have right now, I think it's actually written in the ordinance to be able to issue permits, that we've never really done. Because without a, a permit, without a starting point, we don't know if they've been there one day, or ten days, or four days, or two hundred and four days, you know what I mean?
That's a loophole.
Mr. Chairman, I've, I've already drafted that ordinance, I can dust it off and send it to everybody.
Well, it sounds like you might be adding some stuff to it, with what we're talking about here today.
No, I don't mean this, I mean, I've actually drafted a ordinance that required the permits and the guardrails.
That might be better. And Mr. Chairman, I was going to say, too, you know, that there was a loophole with the travel, travel trailer has to be moved on a certain piece of property. Well, they could just move it one feet and then get an additional seven to fourteen days, and so there's loopholes.
That, that's, that was taken care of in the, the ordinance I've drafted that's required the permit. I mean, it, it, it closed a bunch of loopholes. But I'll, I'll dust that off and just send it back to the board, because it sounded like the chairman's inclined for the board to consider table this, then we can have a further discussion at the next board meeting.
I still want to move through and let people comment. I know we have people that might want to comment. I'm not trying to bypass that. I'm just saying, I would prefer for us to consider all the language from here today, put it back in something that everybody can see in black and white, and they know what exactly, if we say yes or no, what we're voting for. That's all I will say.
With Aaron.
Yes, I'm serious.
I do actually like, I would like to say that I agree with Commissioner Amoson as far as actually having the affordable housing shortage in the community, because actually, we did owner builder on St. George Island back in twenty eighteen when we built our home. Honestly, we had sold our other home, and we did not have a place to live until about a week before we left our existing house from the sale. Now, in our case, you know, we also had, you know, two dogs, you know, four indoor cats. You know, so for us, our options were very limited. And fortunately, one of our friends came through for us, and we were able to rent something for two thousand a month. But had that not been the case, I was actually up there at RV World looking for somewhere for us to lay our heads. And that's something, you know, there's just not a whole lot of options. And owner builder is actually one way that you're actually able to better your life. You know, and that's something, too, that you see with a lot of, a lot of the sheriff's deputies. I know there's several there who have actually built new homes recently, and, you know, they found themselves in the same situations, where they actually did a pole barn, also, you know, had a travel trailer that they lived in. So that's something that, you know, the working class, basically, your workforce, you know, is struggling. So that's actually something that does make it possible. So just, I did appreciate that comment about, you know, if someone is a Florida resident or a Franklin County resident, you know, there may be, you know, some situations where that does happen.
Well, and to the, I think the bigger thing is, just like any, any mechanical system. So I think, I don't know what the procedures are, but I know we've had the eighteen months before. I'm fine with that if we're going to put some guardrails up with it. So if you're, get a, you're owner builder, and you have it poured your foundation in six months, well, you're not an owner builder. You know what I'm saying? That there needs to be some kind of, just some other guardrails put up to it, which is going to be outside this ordinance, but it needs to be something that's a communication with the building department, you know, to, to, to clarify, so you're not, you know, waiting eighteen months to see if they're going to start building, kind of deal, you know what I mean?
Or, Mr. Chairman, they, they pour the foundation, wait six months, and then put studs up, and, but I was going to.
I'd go as far as saying dry it in.
Dry it in, right, yeah. But, um, I was going to, those were everything that Commissioner Amoson brought up. I, I had my notes here, which is, was, was the contractor, owner builder staying on the property. But in addition to that, you know, if, if I have family coming, and I have an RV, I don't, I don't see any issue with them staying in my camper on my property for three, four days, you know, if I don't have room in my house. I mean, that's something that I personally feel like we should add language to. Now, obviously, sure it up and make it strict and concise in terms of, you know, you have, this, I know it gets lost in translation in terms of days, but I just, I, I don't know. I think that people, a lot of people have that prop, that thing where they have people coming to stay with them, and they have an RV, and they stay in the RV for the weekend and leave, you know?
Is your property zoned R1?
Yes.
And this, this would make it where you can't do it?
You can't do it, I know.
Yes, I mean, we can get tied up in the weeds with this, but I mean, just, you know, we could say, don't, don't sit there and let them hook up the subject. Trust me, they're going to move it eventually. I mean, they're going to fill up. I mean, we can, we can just get weeded down. But, uh, but, but yeah, I think we need to definitely clean this up and, and make it where it works for everybody, and we can do that, so.
And, and Mr. Chairman, one more thing, and I'm, I'm calling out somebody in my district, because in my district, there's a piece of property, it's right on the water. I know this covers the thousand foot from the water, but it's a VRBO where the people bring their own camper, they set it up. And we need to make sure that, and I know, again, I've said it in the past, ordinances are good, it's only what we enforce it. Like, it, it, we can put ordinances out there all day, it's the enforcing of it that we have to take care of. And what I need, what we need to start doing, too, is contact these VRBO and Airbnb owners of these properties and say, look, this is, goes against our ordinance. You're going to start getting penalized if you allow this. And I don't know if this person that owns this private, done any research to see who owns the property, but they may not be aware that we have these ordinances on the books. Now, I don't think that it was their intent for them to stay indefinitely, but I'm just saying, we've got a lot of people in our area that have RV, uh, VRBOs and Airbnbs that are basically abusing the system, abusing our ordinances and such, but, anyway.
Anything else from the commissioners before we take public comment? Is anyone in the room wish to comment publicly? Please come forward, Ms. Barbara.
Barbara Sanders, resident, St. George Island, in an R1 zoning district, which I think means single family. The last time we had a workshop on this article, and I didn't write the date down, but it was written out as twenty twenty-three. So we've been talking about this for a while. Y'all had a workshop on it, Ms. Ward moved to table, Mr. Amoson moved to second. I was so thrilled to see we're actually getting it back on the agenda for consideration, and it sounds like we're not any further along than we were the last workshop you had on it. I wholeheartedly support what Mr. Maroon was telling you passionately. You need a bright line rule for your plant, uh, your building inspector to follow. All of these kind-hearted exceptions, when there was probably five thousand or so, I lived in a trailer and rented my, I mean, built my house a stick at a time. But you've got people VRBOing, you've got multiple trailers. How are you going to go in and find out if it's their family, or my long-lost cousin from Wisconsin that wants to come rent for me for a few days? You've got so many exceptions and ins and outs. This ordinance, I, I was here today to say bravo on this nice, clear ordinance. It's a lot cleaner from what you had at that prior workshop. I agree with all of you, if there's an emergency, or your house burned down, or whatever it is. But there's properties on St. George Island, one zero zero nine West Pine Avenue, right it down Michael Maroon, that has had two old ramshackle houses put on piling since twenty eighteen, maybe twenty seventeen. There's an RV underneath it, I doubt there's a current building permit. You don't have time to go around, and you don't want to pay me to go around, and tell you all the current violations in your R1 zoning districts. This gives your building inspector a nice, clear roadmap to write to the people and say, you're violating our ordinance. Now, guy comes in, says, my house burned down, I need a place to live in the meantime. in, says, my house burned down, I need a place to live in the meantime. There's a variance, uh, system already in place for that. He goes to Board of Adjustment or Planning and Zoning or whatever, goes through the variance process. We don't want to be cruel to people, but we don't want to be schmucks either. And we're, we look like rubes when the people come down here. Oh, well, nobody's ever gonna enforce anything in Franklin County, so let's move in our travel trailers and VRBO them. There is already a prohibition against ca- camping on St. George Island. Your section in your code is five dash five. There are other areas that you can't camp. Um, the other issue about the, um, there is one typo, Michael, on page, um-
Only one?
Only one that I could find. I didn't even find the one you found. Uh, but it is on your penalty for number 10. I think you want to say it's a misdemeanor of second degree for a landowner to allow any person to occupy a travel trailer because you, you're making the exception for storage. Maybe it wasn't a typo at the time, but it, you wanna be able to store your RV on your lot, but you don't wanna-
Occupy.
Yeah.
Yeah, we addressed that earlier.
I know that. You, you address the storage, you need to address number 10 also.
It is.
It is? Okay, cool.
I got it.
So I encourage you to go ahead and enforce or adopt this ordinance. Deal with the other issues. As Mr. Amison says, you get in the weeds eventually, and you don't get any regulation. And then you have your building department bombarded with complaints, and their hands are tied, and that's not fair to them. So go ahead and adopt this one. All the other issues that you're talking about, owner occupa- uh, occupation, you could draft a different ordinance for that. Emergency or, uh, dam, you know, disaster for an individual, you can address that separately, but please, let's adopt this ordinance. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Wanda Rose at 159 Hinton Street in Carrabelle. We started on this RV ordinance thing back in 2013. Here we are again. Uh, I know you get tired of seeing me come up here about this. You, you, you have a very difficult situation. Uh, I don't think anybody wants to put someone out of their home. I certainly don't, and I know how expensive things are. If I had to find a place to live now, I wouldn't be able to do it because I couldn't afford it. But we do have zoning here, and, and that's the big part. Uh, we have RVs, people living in RVs in a residential section. If it was zone mobile homes, it wouldn't be so bad, but they wanna live right in your neighborhood. Um, I'm in real estate, and all the calls we get on vacant land is, we wanna put our RV there and vacation there. We're not gonna build, we just wanna put our RV there, and we've been told that we can do that in Franklin County. They're all up and down Highway 98. They're in my neighborhood. I have a fifth wheel stored at my house. When I have company, I don't want my grandkids in a hotel room. They come and stay in our fifth wheel, which is not against the rules, like Jessica said. But with this ordinance, it would be, I have a, I don't think it's wrong for somebody to have a visitor come. It's when they stay permanently, or you have a VBRO. I don't know what the rule is about FEMA, but I think FEMA has some kind of rules about mobile homes being close to the water. When I've talked to Mark Carrington, he said, you can't have a mobile home fifteen hundred feet close to the water. Now, I don't know where that goes with this, so, um, as far as building your home, living in your RV, I would want to do that because I don't want somebody stealing my products I have laying on the ground to put in my house. I, you know, that's only common sense to me. Uh, back in May 2013, I think it was, I sent all of y'all an email listing two different ordinances for, um, Naples, Florida. They have an RBO, and it's the only reason I used that one is because I used to live there, and I knew where to find the ordinances. Ocala has one. They were all small communities. Now, they're large, so they've had to do ordinances for the same thing that we're trying to do. So, you know, why do we have to reinvent the wheel? Can't we look at their ordinances and adapt ours similar to what they have with what we need here? So that's, that's it. Sorry. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone in the room that wishes to comment publicly? Mr. Maroon, is anybody attended by Zoom that has their hands raised?
No, sir, but I'll ask anyone attending by Zoom that would like to speak on this matter. You did not need to fill out a speaker card for this. You can just raise your hand, you will be recognized. Hands raised, sir.
Okay. All right. So it comes back to us then. I'll say, I'm, I'm fine with the discussion. I wasn't trying to delay anything today. I just didn't want residents to be, uh, thinking that we've done something wrong by amending language on the fly and them not having a, a direct look at the language we're adopting when we vote. That's the only reason I said what I said. I am not trying to dictate what this board is gonna do today. I, I'm, I'm, I'm good with what we have. I do think we can adjust things later, if that's the pleasure of the board. I have no problem with that. I will say this. So, uh, they brought up a good, a good thing that I'd forgotten about. So the fifteen hundred feet on mobile homes is actually a federal rule that's passed down to the state, that's passed down to us. Franklin and Gulf County, the only two counties in North Florida, they have the distinction of being tied to it.
Yep.
Uh, all the rest of them are down around the, the tip of the state because, because of, uh, which hurricane, that was Andrew, because of Hurricane Andrew. But us two in the north have the distinction of, and you, you guys will know what I'm saying, every time a storm makes it into the Gulf and around the tip, the first word out of their mouth usually is applejack cola.
Sure is.
That's part of the problem, but that is a, for mobile homes, they can't be within fifteen hundred feet of the water. So, you know, that, that's a valid distinction to be made. And one of the reasons, uh, that I'm very comfortable with, with having the discussion about no RVs on St. George Island, Dog Island, Alligator Point, and Ballpoint are because most of those, if you take a thousand feet either way, you're gonna cover it anyway. But we already have a restriction for mobile homes on St. George Island. They're not allowed. So we definitely don't need to be allowing RVs. You know, I, I don't know about the other areas of the county, Alligator Point and such, but I, you know, we already have a restriction for mobile homes. So if you're not gonna allow a mobile home, why don't you allow a roll-around mobile home? You know, so that's why I'm out with that. Any other questions or discussion, Commissioner?
It just sounds like to me, Mr. Chairman, that we're gonna take the, uh, ordinance, Commissioner Schuler, Attorney Schuler, his lunch. I apologize. Attorney Schuler did before this one, kinda compare them at some point. It looks like we're gonna create a hybrid from the two. That's what it sounds like to me, but I, I could be wrong, you know? Uh, because I'm, I mean, again, I'm with Commissioner Amison with the permitting because permit, there's a control there, and you can allow more with, with the controller. But, board's pleasure.
It is.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If the board is inclined to consider, um, a permit requirement, that is a totally different subject matter than what was advertised in this ordinance, so it would require a redraft and a re-advertising in the newspaper.
Or, or could it be addressed as a separate ordinance?
You could adopt this ordinance and then come back and amend it in the future, of course.
Okay.
I know. I'm trying. Can't catch it.
However, would the ordinance take effect immediately, like as far as?
Well, it's already under effect. We already have an RV ordinance.
Yeah, but as, I mean, as far as like the owner builders that may be utilizing the RVs on site now?
I, I would recommend a grace period of some sort. You have, yeah. Can't turn it on today and expect everybody to be-
Yeah, but we can amend that language though.
Yeah.
Because it's currently in what we have. It's just the pleasure of the board. That's all I'm trying to say. Anyone? Have any ideas?
Well, I think we need, Mr. Chairman, I think we need to just go ahead and let Mr. Schuler gather all this up, give us a copy of it, and go from there.
Hold ordinance, then.
Yeah, and, and go from there.
What are we, what are we talking about as far as advertisement? Uh, you know, are we gonna have to re-advertise this, have another public?
If the board is inclined to adopt the, a, a permit procedure-
Yeah.
Then my recommendation would be for me to redraft an ordinance and then put a new advertisement in the newspaper because the subject matter of this ordinance does not include a permit process, and I, I would be concerned about some due process challenges if we were to add a new subject matter in, to table this, add in a, a, a new subject matter, which would be the permitting procedure, uh, without going back through the advertising, just basically start the process over again. If, if the board is inclined to consider a permit process, I, my recommendation would be just to, um, you know, reject this ordinance as submitted, authorize me to redraft, uh, and reschedule a new public hearing.
But the earliest we could have that would be the second meeting in July, wouldn't it? Because the first meeting's right at July 4th. I ain't nobody come to that meeting.
The board's current instructions to me, unless I hear otherwise, is all ordinances are to be considered at the second meeting of each month. Now, y'all have made some exceptions to that because y'all consider there were, you know, timing was urgent, but, uh, the general instructions I'm under right now is to schedule ordinance hearings at the second meeting of each month.
So that would be the second meeting in July as we're sitting here, if that's what the board did.
That would be the soonest, unless I receive different instructions from the board.
Well, Mike, why couldn't we just have it at the first meeting in July? Because I mean, we're having this meeting right now.
That's what I just got this thing.
This is July 4th. I mean, if y'all wanna do it.
But what I'm getting at is, 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 is the reason I would, uh, more than likely go and make a motion to table it if we can get it into that, uh, that first meeting in July.
I, I certainly can do that, yes.
And the reason why is that where I, where I have, uh, an issue moving forward with approving it as it is, we're already right here close to the biggest holiday that we have, which is the Fourth of July. How many people have family that's coming down that that's gonna stay in that fifth wheel? Uh, you know, like, like the lady said a while ago, I mean, we're, it's on top of us. If we, if we go ahead with what we've done now, look how many lives we disrupted over the next month. I know that may not matter to some, but it matters to the ones that it affects. So, uh, we need to be looking out for them as well. I'm gonna make a motion that we table it, come back on that first meeting in July and have all this cleaned up and, and, uh, and get it, get it done. I'm gonna say goodnight.
Okay. So a motion to table to the first meeting in July to advertise for this and have it ready to be for reconsideration then by Commissioner Amison, second by Commissioner Krum.
Wait a minute.
Yes.
I'm sorry. I just listened to Attorney Schuler. I, I think what he's saying, if you wanted to add the permitting into the new, uh, well, then, he, what he's saying is reject this one and just have him schedule a brand new-
My, my recommendation would just be to-
A redraft.
Yeah, a whole redraft.
A motion not to adopt and then authorize me to, to reschedule a, a new public hearing the first meeting in July.
With a whole, with a whole new draft, Commissioner, what he's asking for.
Okay. So he, the first has been rescinded, so the second doesn't matter. Uh, pleasure of the board?
So move.
To deny?
Yep.
Okay. So we have a motion to deny by Commissioner Amison?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Krum, an additional discussion. I will say this before we vote. And I don't mean to be melodramatic, you know, that y'all guys know that's not the area I live in. If we can't pass something with RVs, we might as well hang up code enforcement.
Oh, yeah. I agree with you.
Point blank period. So if we can't get to a place where we can say, yep, this is what we're doing, just let's not even have the code enforcement discussion anymore because it's not happening. Any more discussion, so, before we vote? All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, when, uh, looking at the time, would you, since the sheriff has basically launched for us all, including you?
Hang, hang, hang on a second, Mike, before we do, I need a, a motion from the board authorizing me to schedule a new public hearing on the RVs.
So move.
All right. So we have a, a motion to approve scheduling this new public hearing on the RVs. Uh, and is it still gonna be possible, time and place certain, right? The first meeting in July?
Uh, yes, sir. I, I, I've already, yes, sir. I, I can have it ready.
You can come back that weekend and work on it.
Ju- July, July 2nd at, at 11:00.
Okay. So that's the motion. Do I have a second?
Is it? Oh, July 2nd then?
Yeah, July 2.
It is July 2nd, right?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Please tell me yes.
And I have a draft for y'all's comment at the next board meeting.
No, July 2.
I'm sorry? Said that I will have a draft of the proposed updated RV ordinance at the next meeting for, for the board to comment on in advance of the July 2nd public hearing.
I like that. I like that.
Perfect.
All right. So, uh, we do have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. So we have a motion by Commissioner Amison, second by Commissioner Ward. Any more discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, um, can you guys hear me now? I don't know if I have the microphone today. So, um, the sheriff just texted me wondering where we are. Uh, any chances of taking a thirty-minute break, watching over, get a quick lunch, and come back over and start at, I don't know, quarter till? You guys pick a time.
Uh, 12:45?
12:45?
Just coming to bring us plates.
I'll, I'll bring, Commissioner, I'll-
All right. So we, we'll, we'll, I'll take a recess to 12:45.
Franklin County Board of County Commissioners now back in session. Next on our agenda is the report of Ms. Erin Griffin, our Fiscal Manager, Grants Coordinator.
Erin was right.
Okay, Commissioners, item number one. The county is in the final stages of project closeout for the Careball Beach Historic Preservation Project. As part of the conditions of the grant award, the county is required to record a restrictive covenant on the project site guaranteeing the Department of State that there will be no further modifications or renovations at the project site unless the Division of Historic Preservation approves the plans and specifications, and that the site shall be maintained in accordance with the Secretary of the Interior's standards for the treatment of historic properties for a period of ten years. Board action to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the restrictive covenant to be recorded in the public records of Franklin County.
So moved to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward with a second by Commissioner Amison. Any discussion, Commissioners?
I just want to say that they did a phenomenal job and it looks so much better, and I've always gotten compliments, been getting a lot of good compliments about how good it looks and how we do, we did want to keep that historic aesthetic, so I'm all for this.
All right, any more discussion? All in favor?
Wow.
Any opposed? That's a five oh vote.
Okay, Commissioners, next item is number two. Construction bids for the ARPA-funded courthouse repair project were opened at the April 2nd Commission meeting. Unfortunately, both bids that were received were above the project's anticipated budget. At the April 16th meeting, the board authorized staff to pursue negotiations with the lowest responsive bidder. Monolith construction at $1,155,221.73 to see if there was a way to bring the bid back into the budget of $1 million, with $900,000 coming from ARPA funding and $100,000 from the county's fiscally constrained distribution. Monolith construction has negotiated with suppliers and subcontractors and will perform the work as specified in the original base scope, except for the hire of a certified arborist to prune the bushes and the hedges. Monolith construction has also stated that they can be onsite within thirty days to begin the project and will have 180 days from the notice to proceed to complete the project. Board action to approve the removal of the certified arborist from the project scope and approve the negotiated base bid and authorize the chairman to sign the attached notice of award and subsequent construction contract once available. And we have received approval already from the projects architect. We did receive that late yesterday.
All right. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Amison. Any discussion?
I just have a question. It says the, the arborist, is that a requirement that if we get these funds, we have to have that?
It, it was not a requirement. The, um, the architect actually just included that because, I mean, basically with it being historic, a historic structure and then also located within the city limits of Apalachicola, but we don't plan on really removing anything, so we didn't feel like it was necessary.
Okay.
All right, any more discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Uh, next item number three. Duke Energy's Economic Development Grant Program funding cycle is now open, and as the county is working to foster economic development and diversification, consultant Mary Swope has con, con, connected the county with the Retail Strategies Group. Retail Strategies has worked with a number of other small counties and municipalities in Florida to actively recruit new retailers, provide data and market outreach to support existing local businesses, and actively market business development opportunities. The Retail Strategies Group won a competitive, competitive solicitation with the city of Lauderdale Lakes and other small communities have been able to piggyback onto the same scope and contract award for the Economic Development Services. The full cost of the Retail Strategies program is $40,000 per year. The Duke Energy Grant, if awarded, could cover the first year cost of $25,000 with a county cost share of $15,000 for the program. If the county and the two cities see economic benefits in the first year from the partnership, the program could hopefully then be continued with a working partnership between the three agencies. As this first step is simply submission of a grant application, Franklin County does not need to go any farther beyond conceptual approval. Months ago, Chairman Jones sat in on a presentation made by Retail Strategies on a project related to the airport site and saw firsthand the economic data and outreach services which would be available to local businesses and how this program could provide insight as to where retail dollars are being spent, how much is being lost outside of the community, where the, the customer base is located, and how to better fill demand. A link to the program information is included in this report, and should the grant application be funded, a full presentation will, will be made by Retail Strategies prior to any contractual approval. A day in the life of a retailer recruitment video on Vimeo is also a brief link to a video tutorial of the services offered by Retail Strategies. Board action to approve submitting a grant application to the Duke Energy Foundation for the Retail Strategies Retail Recruitment Program.
We have motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? I will say this, having said in this presentation, we all know that our Franklin County residents, that we have economic leakage because we don't, frankly, don't have what our neighbors have for facilities, for shopping facilities, for any kind of number of things. It is very interesting to see just how much economic leakage we have. It's pretty tremendous. But yeah, th- those are just one of the factors they talk about in trying to help you with economic development, but it was, it was pretty, pretty high, it really was.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know, you know, after listening to that second presentation, I know we recently passed the orders for the business license and inspections and stuff. I think after this starts, I don't know if we'll put a pause or, I want to say this, or kind of tweak that, because what we will need for this program, I believe, is just the, the business license, business license program to gather the data we would need to help with this particular grant that we're doing, not necessarily for inspections of homes and of some of the rental homes. So I just wanted you guys to keep that in the back of your minds, so as this develops, we might have, and, and I know you put a January 1 on that, but prior to that, we might need to, to tweak that particular ordinance, just to gather the data we need for this program to be successful.
Well, Michael, talking with staff, I know it's not really what we're talking about here, but what you're talking about, talking with staff, we're, we're trying to, we're trying to stand up a department, code enforcement, hits a whole nother department, but I do think some language needs to be tweaked, looking back at it. I agree with what some residents have input they've given me as a commissioner. The way it's currently written up, every home has to be inspected every year. We could hire two people and still probably not get that done. I think every home needs to have the ability to be inspected once a year. You know what I'm saying? In other words, it needs to be something that you, you don't know if they're coming to you or not, versus they're coming down the street and they'll be here two weeks from now because, you know, it takes about seventy days, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So it needs to be a little bit freer to implement, because if you're having continual calls to, to a resident, that's what you're trying to do is code enforcement. You're not necessarily trying to just have something else that needs to be done. Does that make sense?
It does. And, and we've gotten, the office, building departments have gotten calls before, you know, about homes that are rental and they want you to come in and inspect the garden. There's a bunch of things, and I don't, I think it's two different type of inspections we're talking about, what it is. We want to make sure if you filled out your business license, let's call it that, application, and, you know, you said, okay, this home has the aerobic system for eight people, we're only renting it for eight, that we walk in there, one day you're not sleeping twenty, basically.
That's wrong.
That's what we're looking at.
Right.
You know, not so much more along the lines of a, close to a building department where they're inspecting more, like, different things along that line. Just leave it at that. But I just want to kind of plant that seed right now.
We'll swing it hand to hand with this, because that's how we're going to be able to, to get this data.
Yes, exactly. That's kind of my point. Thank you.
And actually, in the, in the presentation, Retail Strategies actually looked at, um, Appalachia Outfitters was one of the retail trailers that were selected, where they were actually tracking cellphone data to see, you know, where the customer base was coming from, um, and then also the Dollar General location in East Point as well, um, and even did, were able to actually tell us, like, the vehicle count and for transportation projects as well, which would be helpful, because they could actually ping cellphone data as well for that.
All right, any other discussion before we vote? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, Commissioners, now, next line, item number four. Franklin County has finally received the DEP permit for the CR-67 Phase IV Widening and Resurfacing Project. This permit required that Franklin County purchase .70 Wet Prairie Wet Flatwoods Mitigation Credits from the St. Mark's Mitigation Bank. The cost of this credit will be $66,500. This is a reduction from the previous cost estimate of $108,300, as Dewberry was able to make some minor design modification to reduce the impact of the project. There are funds provided in the FDOT grant to cover this cost. At this time, the county is still waiting for the permit from the Army Corps of Engineers before the project can begin. Board action to approve payment of the $66,500 invoice from Lestervelt Ecologo, oh, sorry, Ecological Services for the stipulated mitigation credits as part of the CR-67 Phase IV Project's DEP permit.
Pleasure, the board.
Can I say several times?
You can say whatever you want to say.
We're doing it again, I think, okay. So we're going to get paid the $66,000 to be able to do this?
Correct.
Okay. But we're waiting on the Corps of Engineers?
Correct.
How many times have we heard them?
I'm not doing that.
So I'm not, I'm not in no real big hurry for the fourth phase of 67 to be complete, if that's the case, but, um, I've always had a problem with mitigating something in Franklin County and taking it to Gadsden County or Waukesha County or somewhere. I've always had that problem. So I think if it needs to be mitigated, it needs to be mitigated here, but that's my, um, thought. But I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that's the way we can wait on, on the Corps of Engineers and their permit.
So we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, Commissioners, uh, next item number five. Contractor Roberts &amp; Roberts have submitted a change order for the CR-67 Phase II project that will substitute 30-inch elliptical pipe for 36-inch round pipe for some of the crossdrains. We'll remove the replacement of 148-inch crossdrain that is still in good shape. This change order will save the county approximately $20,332 and extend the project period by five days due to the delay in the approval response. The design engineers recommend approving this change order, and FDOT has also approved the modification. Board action to approve deductive change order number one for contractor Roberts &amp; Roberts in the amount of $20,332 for the CR-67 Phase II Widening and Resurfacing Project.
And they only need five days' delay time on that? Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion?
I just, I just got to make a note, they're removing one crossdrain that's still in good shape, but they're saving us money by doing that.
Oh, they're removing the replacement of one, so, um, so basically that one's being left untouched.
Okay, okay, I gotcha. Remove the repla, okay, gotcha.
Oh, sorry, I had like a double negative.
All right, yeah, I was, but I, I'm all about saving money, so yeah. I said I, I second her motion.
Any more discussion before we vote?
Just one thing, I, I noticed the big 48-inch pipes that they've had out there, those things are quite big, and, uh, but apparently they, in here, they found that it's still in good shape.
All right, any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's a five oh vote.
Okay, uh, next item number six. Attached is an agreement between the East Point Civic Association and the Franklin County Board. The Civic Association to perform the planting scope outlined in the county's FDOT landscaping grant for East Point. The East Point Civic Association will be paid an amount not to exceed $57,500 to furnish and install the plants. Board action to approve and authorize the attached contract with the East Point Civic Association.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders. Second by Commissioner Amison. Any discussion?
Just a, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, question. Did Attorney Schuler go over, look at this contract?
Don't remember.
Actually, Attorney Schuler did not. Um, I know Mark was actually dealing with the Division of Historic, our, sorry, not Historic Preservation, Department of Transportation. He did run the contract modification by there, um, but we, we will go ahead and get Attorney Schuler to review as well.
Just approve it, subject to Attorney review. Do I need to amend my motion?
Yes, but who made the?
I think I said, you made the motion.
You made the motion. Do you want to amend your motion to reflect?
I made my motion to, big contingent on the attorney approval.
I'm in my second.
All right. So the first and second have been amended, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I, I just want to say something about East Point Civic Association, that, I tell you what, I was amazed at the job that they've done along East Point with the seniors' pictures up there. That is something that was so nice, so nice. It would've been nice if we could've gone all the way through the county, but we didn't have the sixty seniors, so, uh, but I just wanted to make a comment that they are doing some good work.
Yeah, they are, and this, this project's actually been in the works for a while, and honestly, there are going to be some, the installation of some signage. The problem is, we're still waiting on DOT for some of those permits, so they're wanting to go ahead and move forward with doing the, the plants and planting and the different stuff like that that's part of the project. But yeah, no, the tremendous work, we're looking forward to it. Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, uh, next item number seven. Attached is a contract amendment with the Division of Historic Resources for TDC's Franklin County Heritage Museum Exhibit Grant. This amendment adheres to the grant's project completion deadline of December 31st, 2024, and amends the deliverables to substitute six reenactment videos illustrating various phases of Franklin County's maritime heritage for the interactive 3D component of which the county was unable to find a subcontractor to produce. Board action to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the attached contract amendment.
So move.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Amison. Second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? So Ms. Erin, I'm going to ask under discussion, does that, can we reasonably expect by the end of the year that this maritime museum's going to be open?
We certainly hope so. Yeah, that is, that is our plan at this moment.
Okay, all right. Any additional discussion, Commissioners? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, um, actually, items number eight and nine were already covered earlier in the meeting, so next action item is number 10. The property appraiser will certify to the county the certified taxable value on July 1st. The preliminary budget is then due to, to the commission by July 15th. The clerk of courts has confirmed that there are no court activities scheduled on Thursday, July 25th, and Friday, July 26th. Board action to approve Thursday, July 25th for the constitutional officers, county departments, and other government agencies, and Friday, July 26th for the non-governmental agencies.
So move.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sanders. Everybody good with those days? That's what I'm doing right now. So it'd be Thursday and Friday?
Correct.
Okay, your thing reads Thursday and Thursday.
Yes.
Sorry.
Apologies, it was late.
It's all good. I just, just asking.
It starts getting close to like six.
Now, this would start at, what, nine o'clock in the morning?
Nine AM. Yes, it will start at nine AM on Thursday and 10 AM on Friday.
Nine, okay. So nine AM the first day and then 10 the second day?
Correct.
And, and Mr. Chairman, if you can, from Commissioner Crone, because I, I think this is his first budget type thing, we think, we normally have this draft budget, so we kind of have an idea of where we are with money.
Yes.
Before the September, uh, October, September.
Actually, September would be the public hearings for final adoption, so what, whatever happens at the budget workshop is actually what, um, what goes out on your trim notices.
Yes.
Yeah, and they can, and you all can actually go down, but you cannot go up.
And we're not going to send the department heads any letters?
Uh, we are sending them letters, yes.
You are?
Yep, they.
Well, don't count them to maintain the budget that they had last year.
We, we did that the last meeting.
Yes, but I want to make sure, we need to hammer it to them.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it will be sent along with their forms.
We're going to need more money for these departments.
So do, do we already have a motion to second on those days?
We do.
We do, okay. Any additional discussion, or is everybody good? All right, all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous, five oh.
Okay, uh, next action, item number 11. Attached is the annual consolidated solid waste grant application. In the current fiscal year, the award was $90,909. This annual operating grant helps to offset some of the costs associated with the solid waste department by providing funds for some fuel expenses, waste tire recycling and disposal, hazardous waste disposal charges, and testing fees. Board action to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the attached consolidated solid waste grant application.
So move.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Amison.
Second.
Second by two, Commissioner Ward and Commissioner Crone. Any additional discussion? Ms. Erin, I do want to ask, this does also include the, uh, used oil dump that we do in, in the three places across the county, doesn't it?
Actually, uh, the processing of used oil is actually paid by the solid waste department.
It is? It's not covered by this grant?
It is not, unfortunately.
Hold on, why is it not covered by this grant? Because when we first started, it was covered by the grant.
Yeah, that, that I don't know, Commissioner. Um, I do know that it does pay for approximately $2,500 of the household hazardous waste roundup, um, but beyond that, it, it does not cover any of the, the waste oil pickup.
Yes, I'm not trying to slow down what we're doing today, but we need to have another conversation with them, because I remember when we were fighting to get those used oil containers in place, I basically presented to the, the state agency that was saying, yeah, we don't know about that. I said, okay, well, I'm at a place that sells oil like other places sell beer, so tell me where the oil's going. It's going in the bay, it's going in a aquifer, if it's not being collected properly and disposed of. So the fact that they've now pulled it for being paid for, for, by the grant, that's a discussion we need to have with them. Who, who of that department is, I'm sure Mr. Davis can help direct us with that.
Yeah, Mr. Davis would be the contact for.
That's fine. Any additional discussion before we vote? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
And if you all have any questions, we're, um, actually, Landarch EMS Station, uh, we actually have the bid specs ready to go on that. We are just waiting for the grant award agreement to come from Department Health to get going on that, so, um, that's one that we will be ready to get going pretty quick.
Another item.
Yes.
Uh, Gulf Store, I mean Gulf Boulevard down there in Carabel, what we call C-30 down in Carabel, um, did you ever get that straightened out with FEMA on the GPS?
We are still working with that. Yep, it is extremely hard to get any sort of approval, especially as, once they leave Hurricane Michael, you know, they've actually had Idylia since, um, Hurricane Ian as well, so unfortunately.
They need to go back, they need to go back and feel their commitment to the county.
They do.
And if we have not heard anything from them by the next meeting, I would like to, at the next meeting, do something, something about it.
Okay, okay.
And, and let's contact them about it. I know you don't want to contact, but we're waiting for a negative meeting.
Yeah, Commissioner, that brings up, you asked me a while ago about Mr. Evan calling me, now I know what it was about, because you just mentioned it. So we were talking last Thursday at the Regional Planning Council meeting afterwards, uh, with some of the people that do the environmental side of things for the Regional Planning Council. They are going through now, they have residents that are wanting to, that have changed their mind, that want to be a part of the, the Franklin 98 project, so they're looking at doing a second round, and he mentioned doing some in other places throughout the county, because there's a push from, uh, NIFWIF to do that. Uh, they like what's happened and they want to do more of it, and I mentioned to him about C-30 outside of Carabel. You know, there's definitely that one really bad spot, so if they could do Leaven Shoreline or something like that to protect that road, that would go a long way. So that's probably why he was calling me.
Well, and it's right there at, at, at the intersection of 98. They've got part of it at Salt Park right down there, off of Bloomquist Channel, but right there at 98 and, and, um, and, uh, C-30. The next time we have a storm, it's going to be just like Alligator Point, it's going to be washed up underneath there like nobody's business. It's going to stran, it's going to have some people stranded in there, what it's going to be. All because I can't understand the GPS coordinate.
GPS is supposed to be more, better than that, right? Uh, Ms. Erin, what about the, where are we with the, uh, the environmental review or whatever they're doing for the EOC project?
Actually, I'm still waiting on a proposal from Kayla for the Geotech work.
Geotech, okay, okay.
There was some, I'm sorry.
No, you're good.
There were some other Dewberry questions you were going to ask me, can we ask now in case?
Yes. Uh, one of the questions, Mr. Chairman, is the, we talked about, uh, the wetlands delineation on the 55 acres on 65. We're going to need it regardless, because whether, you know, we were talking about this affordable, this workforce housing thing, and of course, I was talking about potentially moving the Humane Society. We don't need all fifty, I mean, it's a lot of acreage, but I, we're going to need a wetlands delineation no matter what we decide to do on that property.
Actually, I had, I had flipped my mind. Um, I did hear back from Thurman Rodenberry on that, um, and he said that he can actually do a boundary survey and wetlands delineation for $4,200. Um, he said if the wetlands location goes faster, um, then it would actually be, um, less than $4,200, so $4,200 is going to be the, the maximum, so up to $4,200 will be wetlands delineation, um, and boundary survey.
Okay, and that's something that would come out of our, um.
Professional services.
Professional services budget?
Right.
Do, can we put that on a motion for the next meeting?
Can we do it now?
Or can we do it now?
Call for public comment now if you all want to do that as like a laid ad item. I do apologize, I should've put that on there.
That's okay, that's why I always have my notes about, all right, we're going to talk about this, and then we got to follow up on it, so, um.
I would.
So it's $4,200?
Up to $4,200.
That's the max, and we don't have to go out for any other bids, because there's a spe, a specialized, and it's under our.
It's under 10.
Less than $10,000.
$10,000, so, so, I guess we need to call for public comment?
That is the current policy, board, yes, ma'am.
So we're. So we're apparently going to undertake looking at approving, potentially, doing a wetlands delineation study and a boundary survey on the 55 acres that the county owns up Highway 65 for future things that we might want to use it for. But before we take that kind of action, I will call for public comment. Is there anybody in the room that wants to comment publicly on this item since it was not on our agenda? Mr. Morrow, will you check by Zoom, sir? See if anybody has their hand raised?
Anyone on Zoom would like to comment on this, please indicate by raising your hand. Once again, anyone like to comment on this, please indicate by raising your hand? No, sir, no comment, no hands raised, I'm sorry.
Okay, pleasure to the board.
I'll make a motion to approve the wetlands delineation boundary survey.
So we have a motion to approve this wetlands delineation and boundary survey by Mr. Roddenberry, by Commissioner Ward, and a second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Ms. Erin, I know we mentioned it earlier, and I know there's a lot going on. If, whatever we have to do or whoever we need to talk to, I would like to have it on the next agenda, if not the agenda after that, to really discuss how we're going to approach doing what we need to do with the airport unless we've already handled that. As far as, did we already handle that or does it still need to be?
No, that would be, Angela, she was addressing that with FEMA, so let me ask her where we are with that. I'll have something for you at the next meeting.
Okay.
One item I have for Erin, Mr. Chairman. The Courtney letter, did she send it?
She did, and that will actually be part of our report for the next meeting.
Oh, for the next?
Yes, I did respond to Courtney, she sent it late yesterday, and I went and responded for it, it would be on...
So it's something that's not time-critical?
I don't believe so.
Make sure real quick, Erin, because if we do, we need to get that letter out now that's based on a timeline. Did we all write it?
It's downloading, she said. It's taking a minute.
Oh, it's downloading?
Yeah, sometimes computers do that.
Downloading, yeah.
That's a different computer in there, don't you need a new computer or something?
It's a refurbished one.
She left the work one at home.
While that's waiting, Mr. Morrow, I know we're kind of in both, so I won't forget about it. I know I've discussed with you before, and I don't know how many we have. So we have a couple of, at least a couple of what I would call surplus iPads, something that we no longer use, some that's not, we have what we have, and those are ones that have been used before. I think we need to, at a future meeting, be able to address, maybe give them some of those to EMS to meet their needs.
Okay.
And if, if there's enough to do that, then I also would like this board to consider as a donation to the East Point Water and Sewer District. Because again, they're working off the same software that St. George Island Water District has now. We've made that switch in the last couple of months. They're trying to GPS locate all their valves, all their, everything, not just the Firehundreds. And they're going to need iPads to do that. But if we have surplus, I would like us to consider it, like the clerk did a couple of months ago when we declared something surplus and got rid of it.
I'll take inventory and get back to you. Just know that I, I'm the type, I use it until the wheels fall off.
I understand.
Yeah, this is all correct, right?
Yeah, the big ones you're looking at, those are, those are the first generation of those particular iPad.
Well, that's consistent with guys, everything has a lifetime, you know, it's got to wear out before we get rid of it. Ms. Erin, did you ever get that downloaded?
It is still thinking.
It is still thinking? We'll come back to it.
Well, I've got a couple things, more things, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind.
No, go ahead.
And again, you know, I don't know where to put this, whether it's on Michael's report or Erin's report, but they kind of come, in my opinion, involves them both. But we also asked, if I remember correctly, at a recent meet, a previous meeting, about getting our own survey of the East Point Channel dredge project.
Yes.
To ensure that they actually did what they were supposed to do.
Yes.
And so I was wanting an update on that.
Yeah, and I don't have one. I'll have to go back into my notes and see where we are and get back to you, Commissioner.
Um, the other, one more is, I know we had discussed about a workshop with a department director, especially before budget, about some certain inconsistencies with things that I wanted us to get together with the, we talked about maybe doing it in a workshop fashion, that way everybody could be involved. So I didn't know if we had went any further with that either in terms of like scheduling one or...
I have not.
Talking to the department director.
It's something we want to do before budget, correct?
Well, I mean, you have to be because it's just talking about what we discussed this morning earlier about making sure they have what they need, and there was some inconsistent, I don't want to say inconsistencies, there were some oversights, I guess, on some that we probably need to address. I'd have to go back to my notes and specifically find which ones were...
I'll just go ahead and contact them, I'll see if I can schedule something at one of our meetings.
Do we, Michael, do we have anything scheduled for the afternoon of the 16th of July? That would be before our budget things.
Not that I can tell you.
About five o'clock. If it's going to be a workshop setting. But anyway, we can discuss it next meeting, but maybe that's a potential date, we could hold that workshop and it'd still be done in time before we start doing our budget process.
There was no time limitation on the request, that was actually relative to the...
So we'll just handle it next week.
Commissioner Ward, did you have anything else? I'm sorry, I went through...
No, the next thing will be for Michael. I know for sure that's a Michael thing, not an Erin thing.
All right, anything else for Ms. Griffin before we proceed? Mr. Morrow, you're up next.
Okay. All right, Commissioners, item number one. At your last meeting, the board directed Mr. Patterson, your building official, and myself, we met with Mr. Rod Gaddis to inform him of the complaints and concerns that the county commission and the county itself was received regarding the construction of his accessory structure at 841 West Bayshore, and request that he appears at, that he appear at today's regular meeting to discuss this matter with the board. During that meeting with Mr. Gaddis, he informed us that he was aware of the complaints and that he was consulting with his attorney. In addition, I was informed that an attorney representing the neighbors that submitted the complaints contacted Attorney Schuler to discuss this matter. Also, there was language in an email to the commissioners that stated the case would be filed within a certain time if the board did not take certain actions. With all that said, Commissioners, and with advice from Attorney Schuler, previous advisor, prior advice from Attorney Schuler, I postpone Mr. Gaddis's appearance at today's meeting until the board had the opportunity to discuss this matter further with, with your county attorney. And, and I believe that this is a chairman's district, he might want to initiate some of these discussions to start off as we deal with, with this matter further. And then I'll stand by for further direction.
Well, I can say this. I know that there, and we talked about it at the last meeting, there are some ways that the county has handled their business now for years. And it's something that honestly, as a commissioner, I didn't even know about because it's never really come up. It's never been an issue. There's never raised an issue with it, or at least to our level. I've only been doing this for seven years. And I can say as a commissioner, just on the initial complaint, yeah, I was all for stopping work, you know, doing what needed to be done. Still would be. But the thing is, you're going to have to make sure you expand it beyond just one property owner. If you're going to start stopping work on something we've allowed for the last 30 years. The other issue I have, and I looked this weekend, I didn't have nobody else's input, I'm looking through what we have written down. And our problem that we have is for accessory structures or for secondary structures, I don't see anything in any of our wording that says they have to be XYZ square feet. It's not found anywhere. So, you know, if this board wants to stop work order, then we, I think we need to be looking at stopping work order on every secondary structure we got going on right now if we're going to stop it because we've been allowing it. And that's the discussions I've had with several residents that have called me, emailed me, come to Carquest to talk to me. Because at the end of the day, you're, and I don't want to say anything I'm not supposed to say, I'm trying to be very guarded in what I'm saying. Please, help me if I get off the rails, Attorney Schuler. Because both sides are talking about something, so that's why I'm being guarded in what I say. The, the way, the way things have been done, I'll, I'll say this. I believe this is something I can say without running to a foul of anything. If someone comes to our building department, they check every box we tell them to check, they pay their fee to get their permit, and they proceed to do their permit, we better have a really good reason other than we didn't know we allowed it to be done that way to tell them they can't do it. And then I, I was good with all that discussion until over the weekend, that discussion morphed into not us just stopping the work, but us pulling the permit. And I said, "Yeah, I don't know that we can do that. I guess we could do anything we want to, but that don't mean we won't get sued for it." But I also had a couple of residents I talked about, and this is not related to this, but it's just property issues on St. George Island. There are still residents on St. George Island that think that the county was the one that allowed, pursued, made sure that we supported the skinny menis on St. George Island. No, that was a court order. Because some things were done that the court deemed were wrong by the county, some actions were taken wrong by the commission, and the court said, "No, you got to let them do it anyway." And the other, so I think some of that morphed that way because as I was having a discussion with residents in my district about putting a stop work order, I said, "Well, you do realize that's only a delay." That, you know, if they build their, so if we're saying it's because they haven't built their primary, if they build their primary, then they're not going to be able to finish the secondary. It's not going to stop this one. If we've truly had a way we've conducted business and allowed it to be done, it might, we might correct it for the future, but it's not going to stop this one. And I think that's where the discussion came in of actually pulling the permit. Again, this board probably can do any of that, but I don't know that we can do it illegally because property owners have rights. So that's, that's where I've been all weekend trying to think of the best way to, to handle this because the last thing I want to do, and I've done it before with other issues, trying to do the right thing, people look at it the wrong way. You know, we had issues with people clearcutting our places that the county owns on St. George Island. So we shut them down from doing that. We weren't trying to block public access. But at the same time, property owners have rights, and we as the property owner had a right to do certain things. But I just want to make sure this board knows, whatever the board wants to do, I support it because I'm sitting in the middle, not making a motion to second. Okay, I'm having the chair. Whatever this board wants to do, I'll do it. But if you, if we're going to entertain stopping work and our pulling the permit, then we have a bunch of accessory or secondary structures that are taking place right now that will include mother-in-law suites, apartments above garages, stuff that we've, and they're on the island. This is not a precedent today to not pull this permit. This is 30 years of what's been going on in the county. There are secondary structures already on the island, this is not brand new. What is brand new is the size of the secondary structure. And my problem as a commissioner is, I can't find anywhere that we've limited the size, so we need to do something about that. That's all I wanted to say with leading the discussion. I'm fine with how the board feels, I'm not trying to lead you guys anyway. I'm just trying to give my input and my thoughts on the matter.
I, I'm going to go ahead and say how I feel about the situation. I was called and said, you know, we mentioned a little bit of it last week, and I just blanked that picture, I didn't think nothing of it. Well, it said, "Well, the man, Commissioner, what happened is the man built his pool house, and I have to be careful of my words too, Mr. Chairman, built pool house before he built his record house." I said, "A pool house? Ain't nothing wrong with having a pool house. I got a pool house. But my pool house is 10 by 12 where I keep all my chemicals. It's not that. We're going to have to look in the future, not now, but in the future, like you said, the square footage, what are we going to allow on that sec, that secondary? What is the square footage you're going to allow? The other thing is a concern of mine, like it has always been of all this board, is I'm concerned with the capacity of what that aerobic system can take over there. Now, this is my problem, and that's of any kind. You know, I've always said that the worst enemy for St. George Island is the aerobic system. Well, before it was set, it takes, and then we made the ordinance where you have to have an aerobic system. But it is. It's like you're bubbling there, and one day, one day, you don't ever know what's going to happen. But that was my two, my two thing. Well, you know, because if it's a house with two and a half baths or two and a half, two baths, two and a half beds or whatever, you know, I'm saying, well, that's a house, that's not a pool house, that's a house. But I don't understand, you know, that. So my main thing was the capacity of the, of the aerobic system, that's my only concern. And that's a concern with everybody in this county, not just on the island.
And I will say this before we go into further, I'm not trying to interrupt you, but we do have speakers that want to speak. So before we make any motions, I would be calling for public, for those public comments. But go ahead, Commissioner.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I would like to say, just to reiterate, I'm going to be honest with you. I've been 10-8 hot about this the whole time, since I found out about it. But can we tell you something? I went actually physically right out to where this is being built. I've seen the pictures, but pictures sometimes don't do things justice. This is a pool house on steroids. I'm sorry, I'm being mindful of my words too, but it's just a fact of the matter. I've never seen a pool house with bedrooms and a bathroom, and it's two-story. I've seen the plans. You can't tell me and make it, make it, make me understand what this guy's... You can never assume what an intention of a person is, but I can tell you right now what I think this guy's about to do. We all know what he's probably about to do. But as the chairman said, it's not written into what, how much square footage a secondary structure is. Now, that being said, that's something that we need to look at. Square footage of a secondary structure, how big are pole barns? Pole barns are secondary structures. I know they're not enclosed, but that's something that moving forward, we need to look at. Also, what's considered attached and detached? Who's to say this isn't, he can consider this an attached dwelling? So that verbiage needs to be hammered out. And I know I'm probably going way beyond what we're talking about today, but this...
That's part of it.
This thing today boils down to something that we, in my opinion, I've been here my whole life. I've been a commissioner for almost four years. How many times have we had a secondary structure to this enormous extent? Never. This is, this is the first time that I know of that we've had to deal with this. And I think it's setting a precedent that if we do allow secondary structures of this nature, it's just going to continue on. Also, the R1 zoning. R1 zoning allows for one dwelling, not two. I look at this as a second dwelling. I know it's up for speculation and interpretation, but any house that has a bedroom or two bedrooms is a, to me, a dwelling, not a pool house. So those are just my thoughts on it. I've had calls, I've had emails, I got a little heated in some phone conversations with some individuals about it. But those are my thoughts. You know, we've never had to deal with this before. Yeah, we have pole barns, yes, we have sheds, but this, this is, I think, taking advantage. But I see the chairman's point and the attorney's point is we, you know, we don't have anything written in black and white. I'm all about black and white, as stated at the last meeting. It's not written how much square footage is allowed. That's something we, we need to have a discussion about. It needs to be limited to 400, 500, whatever square footage, not 1,000 plus. Because 1,000 plus is a limited amount of a, a home, that's what the limited square footage of a home is per our current zoning code for R1. So I know I'm kind of going outside the box, but these are, this is, I think this was an eye-opener for me personally. Because I've never seen such as a secondary structure as such as what's going on at this address. So those are my thoughts.
Anyone else before I call for these comments? Ms. Barbara, you want to speak under this?
I am.
And Mr. Chairman, while Ms. Sanders... And Mr. Chairman, while, while Ms. Sanders is coming up to the podium, not to interrupt, but we also need to have verbiage on the accessory ver- structure versus secondary structure. Because, because everybody's verbiage is different on what they consider a secondary structure versus a primary structure.
Go ahead, Ms. Barbara.
Hey, Barbara Sanders, I don't know what the legal issues are, but I would be more, um, hopeful if I heard you all say we're gonna actually pass an ordinance now with those parameters. Instead of the precatory, oh gee, Willa Cruz, golly gee, we really need to do something like trailers, like fill ordinances, like secondary structures, I can go on and on and on. Do something about it. Whether you win a fight about whether you did what was right or not in the past, but we can turn the page today. Direct your zoning department to bring you an ordinance by the next meeting. Director County Planner to address this for the future. My dogged in the fight, because I live a few blocks down, but there's one right around the corner from me that's on the ground, and it's, well, actually, there are two. The unwritten Alan Pierce rule that they follow in the zoning or planning office is if it doesn't have a 220 plug, there's no limit. You can have whatever secondary structure you want as long as there's no 220 plug. And Ms. Sanders, I see you acting like whoever heard of that, but go ask the building department if that ain't true. I've heard it, ah, we got denied by Mr. Maroon. It's an unwritten rule. Put in a microwave, a coffee pot, a refrigerator, don't put in a stove because my long-lost cousin from Wisconsin ain't cooking the turkey dinner at Thanksgiving. And voila, I got me an extra VRVO on my single-family zoned lot. Do something about it, pretty please, do something about it sooner the better. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mason? Mason Bean, I'm sorry, I should've said your whole name.
No, Mason Bean, uh, she's always hard to follow, I don't know. Hey, and I, I think, Commissioner, uh, you're right, homeowners have rights, but also the county has rules. And I think Commissioner Ward, you got it right, because I think the problem here is two residents on one lot, I think that's where we're headed. I think the P and Z got fooled, and I go back to Gander Street years ago, it was a different commission, you all weren't up there. But when you abandoned Gander Street, the next thing you know, it's changed its hand, and then someone, they're setting pilings on the end of Gander Street. When I called and complained, they said, let me get back to you. Well, a week later, they said, well, it's a pool house. Well, right now, it's a three, it's a three-bedroom, two-bath at the end of Gander Street, a different color, different name. It was a different septic, different everything, anyway. Yeah, what I'd probably like to see is, um, a stop work order, and let's figure it out. But I think when they originally have a plat- plan, when they come to, to planning and zoning, uh, it would show the residence, the pool, and the attachment would be right there too. I, I think there's other things you can see that, that lead to that. I was gonna say something else, but that's enough, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mike King?
To go off of, uh, Ms. Sanders' point, the 220, they've got a laundry room spec into this pool house. So that, uh, Mike King, nice to meet y'all. There's gonna be a dryer in there, so it's gonna need two, 220 for the dryer. So that's not gonna apply. This thing started out, to shed some light on, on it for y'all, this thing started out in August of 2023. The lot was cleared. I live right across the street. Uh, I noticed a porta potty dropped off and a permit box nailed to the tree. All of a sudden, the next day, a company called Docs for Less came out and installed, installed wooden pilings. I was curious, because it didn't really look like a, you know, a conventional house, you don't see a lot of wood pilings going up on St. George much. And they were kinda close together, so I called the building department. She said, yeah, you can see the plans, it's all public. She asked what the address was, and I gave it to her. Permit had never even been applied for. This is a builder on St. George Island doing this. Building 101. Go get a permit before you start building. Uh, it's set vacant for six months, I assume the building inspector, Steve Patterson, put a stop on it. Well, about February, I was periodically checking the site to see if a permit had been applied for. The permit for the primary resident had been issued. The pool house was pending. So I made a call to Planning and Zoning, Steve Patterson, multiple people, and there's some couple of people on this, in this room right now that got notified this was something that was a pending violation, because that's the first time I saw the actual plans. This is a secondary dwelling on a lot, on a R1 lot, that says one unattached dwelling per lot. This is a second unattached dwelling on this lot. It's not anything that's any gray area. It's another house. So I would hope that the board at this point would just say, we're gonna do the right thing. And whoever, what side sues, we're just gonna have to take our lumps. Because doing the right thing is the right thing at this point. We haven't gone down the street too far that it's gonna make this unreasonable burden financially on getting it gone. It could've been stopped between the time that the permit, that secondary permit was issued, which was April the 5th. I started making some calls three weeks before to a lot of people. And at that time, permit could've been stopped. Mr. Gaddis wouldn't have been out, any money. Everybody would've been happy. No litigation, just do the right thing. But everybody kept trying to cover it up. Steve Patterson, I don't know anything about it. No, that's not right, Steve, you signed off on the permit. You know exactly what I'm talking about. A lot of people knew about this before that pool house permit was issued. And it could've been stopped now, and I just hope the board does the right thing now and stops it, and whatever happens, happens. But this is a second dwelling on a R1 lot. Simple as that. Second unattached dwelling. So that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. All right, most pleasure to the board. I mean, if it's a, if it's a second unattached dwelling, that's, if that's how we're looking at it, I, I'm good with whatever the board wants to do. It is within our power to issue a stop work order or not, but we need to discuss it and get past it. Whether we're doing it or not.
Mr. Chairman, I say I'm gonna motion to put a stop work order on it. And the only reason is because it is not going with our current zoning code. I know about the secondary structure, primary structure, I get all that. But I just, that's my thought. And with that motion, let's just do one motion at a time. Because I'll make a motion to stop work order on this right now.
So is that, I just wanna clarify, is that until we hear back from our attorney or gives us advice that we've resolved the issue, I mean, what, I'm just asking. Please help us, because I don't know where we're at here legally.
Well, it's a difficult situation all the way around, because the code says what it says.
Yes.
And it's the same code that we went over at the last meeting when I had talked about accessory structures as they related to docs, because the board has had a lot of issues dealing with docs. So that was the reason I was bringing up accessory issues and structures and uses, and then this issue came up with the, the pool house on, what was it, 841 West Bay Shore, I think's the address. So the code says what it says, which is you're not supposed to have a secondary use until the principal structure is erected. But we also have a decades-long course of conduct that the county has apparently been following, and I say apparently because I don't have any firsthand knowledge, I just know what I've been told, and you know what you've been told, that apparently the practice has been that the building department issues, basically simultaneously, the principal use permit and the accessory structure permit. I know it didn't happen simultaneously, I'm told in this case, because apparently there was like a several-month period between the issuance of principal use permit and the secondary structure permit. So it is an issue that's now been identified. Clearly, it needs to be addressed, we've got inconsistencies between what the code says and what the practice has been, so uh, it's not particularly a good outcome one way or the other. However, my recommendation to the board frankly would be not to suspend, excuse me. Dang this cough, I'm sorry.
That's what California air does for it.
Yeah, I had lunch with Gavin Newsom at the French Laundry and that, but that's what did it.
Yeah.
So my recommendation would be we gotta fix the problem, uh, but we also have to deal with the issue at hand. And so I, my recommendation would be to follow what our custom and practice has been, but not going forward, going forward, follow the code. No more secondary structure permits to be issued until the principal structure has been erected. The chairman is, is correct, and some of the other commissioners that have mentioned the, the issue are, are correct. We don't have a rule that says what the maximum square footage of a secondary structure should be. In one form or another, I, I've been representing the board uh, since either ninety-three or ninety-four. I've never seen this issue come up in over thirty years, I mean, this, this, this is new to me as well. You know, I, I don't really have any day-to-day dealings with, you know, the operation of the Planning and Zoning Department, I mean, that was always a an Alan Pierce and Mark Harrington-led operation. So it was sort of news to me to find out that the permits had been issued simultaneously, but I can tell you in my experience, this is, this has never been a problem like this before. So my recommendation is let's fix the problem moving forward, not issue the stop work order for the, the accessory structure, which is the pool house. Mainly, it, it, I shouldn't say mainly, but partly because of what the chairman has pointed out, it's just a timing issue. At the end of the day, they're going to end up with these two structures. The principal and the pool house. Now, I know there's, the pool house has been described as a second unattached dwelling, I've, I've heard that mentioned. However, uh, in my discussions with staff, the way they, that's not the way your building department staff has viewed this, it is my understanding that that it is essentially a mother-in-law suite, but it's not a, a second unattached dwelling. So my recommendation is let's fix the problem moving forward by, as Ms. Sanders said, let's set a public hearing, adopt an ordinance that cures this problem. But, you know, you know, fool me once, shame on you, fool me twice, shame on us. So now that we know about it, let's fix it. So that's my advice to the board.
So we do have a motion by Commissioner Ward to issue a stop work order. Do we have a second? We do have a motion on Florida to issue a stop work order at 841 West Bay Shore for this accessory structure. Do we have a second?
I'm gonna second her motion.
Okay.
It's probably, it's probably gonna die because it probably ain't gonna have enough votes. But I support my commissioners. And I, I wasn't gonna do it, but I said, yep. She hollers out, and she's trying to do the right thing. And that's what we're trying to do, we're trying to do the right thing, so I join you, I join you, Jessica, I say.
And it is, I mean, if I don't-
I mean, that's the way I believe, no.
I, I did that, I don't care if I get, you know, it passes or not, I'm just thinking about what's written, not our practice, what's written per our zoning code and it's going against it, that's what I'm going with.
Well-
But, but, you know, I, I've had, made motions before that failed for a dime a second.
Me too.
It's okay, it's okay. We, that's what makes us so unique and so great, is that we, we all have differing opinions, and that's perfectly fine. And I, and I, and I'm called, it's, it's a hard decision.
It is.
Because I see everybody's side. But I'm basing my decision solely on the fact that I feel like this goes against what we have written. Not what our practice has been, because there's no practice written, and this is nothing against our building department, our building inspector, or staff, or anybody. I'm going by what I feel this is, is what is written. Period, plain and simple. If, if it dies, it dies, I'm like, yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
That's about it.
And honestly, I've, I've, every, every talking point I've had, everybody's touched on it. And, and honestly, from a, just a personal thing, I mean, I, I looked at it and I was like, ooh, uh, you know, I feel the same way. But at the end of the day, it's just like the chairman said, I mean, I have looked at it, I've tried to figure out a way to make peace with it and make a decision one way or the other. But at the end of the day, we have no minimum square footage guidelines on secondary structures. I mean, if this thing would've been called mother-in-law suite instead of pool house, would we even be having this discussion, you know?
In my top-
Understand it.
Hold on, sir, hold on, look.
But what, what I'm trying to say is, is, is you say secondary, or I mean, uh, uh, a, another dwelling. What I'm saying is, it's a secondary structure, but we don't have any square footage guidelines, I mean, we have no minimum on that. I mean, we, we don't. You know, we've already been, and, and, and myself, I, I believe, and I'm not trying, don't taste the wrong way, Commissioner Sanders, but she's the only one that's got any, you know, gears here. Been here two years. But we've been issuing permits simultaneously for what, twenty-five, thirty years now?
But, 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 Otis, the commissioners are not a part of the permitting process.
Oh, I understand that.
And it may have been done for forty years.
But what I'm saying is, is I've had this discussions where they're saying you're gonna set a precedent. I'm sorry, the precedent's already been set. But, you know, I hate, I feel like the ship sailed, but the only thing we can do is fix it going forward.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I, you know, I've, I've heard the, the, well, I'm gonna sue, this side's gonna sue, yada, yada, yada. Just me sitting here personally trying to figure out how to argue this, you know, to do a stop work order, I'm just sitting here, and, and I'm no attorney by any means, but if I'm a judge and I'm sitting here going, well, how do you single out this one individual when you've been doing this for how many years, allowing the permits to be issued simultaneously? Or, or, you know, we just have not had anything with any teeth, I don't see how we can defend it. You know, issuing the work, stop work order, that's, that's where I'm at with it. And the only other is- is, issue is, is that we, are we gonna single this one individual out, or are we gonna do a stop work order countywide on secondary structures? If we do that right now, I know there's one contractor that has three homes that has to have the pools in on the island, just sitting in counting, just, just the island itself. But he's gotta have three pools put in prior to driving pilings. So now you just shut down those three projects, that's just one contractor. How many other contractors are we shutting down? You know, I mean, it just throws a wrench into the whole wheel with this one thing, and I don't see, like Commissioner Jones said, at the end of the day, it's gonna eventually get done. I mean, you know, um, I, I, I just, I don't, I don't see how how doing that's gonna stop this. I mean, at, at some point, the structures are gonna be there.
And Mr. Chairman, I agree with that, I agree, I totally agree with that.
Hold on, sir.
The difference, though, between this and what I feel like everybody else is, this is, I don't feel like this is gonna make it where everybody else has it. What makes this different is people, how many accessory structures, secondary structures actually are built before the primary?
We don't know.
And we don't, that's my whole point.
I talked to Steve, and he said, it's, it's a few, it's a few sometimes, well, not sometimes, there's a few out there, because I asked him, I said, I said, Mr. Patterson, I said, here's the problem. Tell me if they put a stop work order and they do it countywide for all, how many are there? He said, Michael, off the top of my head, I could think of twenty, maybe thirty, but I'll have to go look, basically, they're gonna run a report. So, but that's, that's, Commissioner, I'm saying you do it county, countywide. I, I, but I, I wanna bring, bring another point home, slightly unrelated but tied to it. So I, I wanna be clear, so the, the stop work order is based on the the rule that we have written about building the secondary before the primary, is that what?
Yep.
I'm, I'm trying to understand what-
Yes, yes, that, that is my whole basis, and I'm gonna pull it up right now, because I've been, I've been researching this like nobody's business. I've, I've, I've read our ninety-seven-page planning and zoning code. I have, trust me.
Okay.
But let me, let me pull it up, you got it right here?
While you're looking at that, keep, keep something in mind, commissioners.
Okay.
R220.2.
"A structure or use customarily incidental and subordinate to the principal structure or use and located on the same lot. An accessory structure shall not be constructed nor accessory use allowed until such time as the principal structure is erected."
Okay.
That's what I'm basing my decision on. It has nothing to do with a pole barn, has nothing to do with a mother-in-law suite. The, the problem that I have with this is this person has built the secondary structure before the primary structure. Black and white, right here.
Okay, so let's, let's talk black and white. Okay, so let's, let's, let's talk black and white. R two and R four zones. The first thing on those two zones are what? One structure per unit, correct? R two, R four. I can bring it up if we, if we have to.
I actually tried to pull up that zone and I couldn't. Their zoning maps were down.
Yeah, well.
What's the zoning on that? What's that? Is it R one, this property?
I'm not sure. I'm just talking in general, R two, R four. So, R two, R four, one unit per, I think it's per acre, correct?
R two, okay, yeah.
I'm pulling, I'm pulling it up right now. Hold on a minute.
We've had multiple public discussions about locations, and I won't be specific, because I don't wanna seem like I'm, I'm tacking any particular neighborhood. And this is me talking to the board because of these discussions we've had. Multiple public discussions about more than one unit on some of these R two and R four lists that this Board of County Commissioners is aware of and said publicly that we won't enforce that right now because, one, we said about homeless problems and other things. That is written in the same zone that you're referring to. And I say that not as a got you moment. I say that I want you guys to be aware of what you've said in the past, what you're saying today, and how it might seem to contradict the two things. Same zone, same zoning ordinance, but we have delayed or deferred enforcing that rule in another part of the county. Some people might say it's unrelated. We're talking about, in your words, Commissioner Ward, black and white. Right words that are written on our, in our zoning. So, I just, this is me just trying to be careful and, and just keep the board informed of what we've said publicly and done in the past. That's it.
Mr. Jones.
I'm either.
Can you just say it in your hand? Hold on.
I'm, I'm not either which way on, on this, commissioners. Like, don't, don't take this the wrong way. This is me advising the board.
Oh, I know.
My role, my job. Commissioner Sanders will tell you the first rule we learn when, when we come to staff.
That man right there.
Yes.
Did protect the board at Alcoa.
Alcoa.
That's why he gave a recommendation of not doing a stop work order.
And that's, and that's all I'm saying.
But I have to agree with her, because I understand where she's coming from. I didn't until she said it out just a while ago. But it's, the point of her principle is that the secondary was completely built. I mean, yeah, the secondary was completely built, just about it, before your, your primaries even done. And we have got to stop that in this county. Now, I don't know how we're gonna do it, because you've got a lot, lot of places that's being done like that. And, you know, what's good for the island may not be good for Appalachia or Caravelle or, or that area. But, uh, but the island has its problems, just like everybody else does. And I, I just supported the commissioner there, because I'm one that believes that they need to do the primary before they do the secondary. I mean, that's just the way it is. And then I thought that's the way it had been done. I didn't, I wasn't aware of nothing.
Mr. Chairman, can I say one thing? Uh, Commissioner Ward, in your district over there off of, um, um, C C, C C Land, Firescape right there, that subdivision. I know you got phone calls on it, because I got them too. Pole barn sitting over there.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Is that, that's a secondary structure?
Yeah.
And it's there.
And I, and I actually talked to Steve about that.
I understand.
And it was a mistake.
The, yeah.
It was an oversight that the building department made by issuing the secondary structure permit. But the built, the pole barn was already built, which this place is built too, I guess.
Is, is, is there's other cases?
Oh, I know. Oh, yeah.
And it's, it's already, I mean, it's already been established. It's happened before. This has happened now. Trust me. I don't, I mean, I think it's obscene, but I mean, when I say that, let me, let me back up. I mean, I'm not here to judge what somebody deems this, you know, their, their pool house or whatever. I mean, if you, if you got it like that, you got it. I mean, you know. But what I'm getting at, to me, it, it's like, it's, it's obscene. But that's my personal opinion. But looking at where precedent's been set through the years.
Our zoning map system is there.
I don't know where we can really do it. I mean, I mean, it, you know, I'm trying to, and trust me, when I first looked at it, I, I've, I've had the same reaction everybody else has is, you know, you know, that, that feeling you get when you got got, you know, somebody figured it out and they socked it to you. That's basically what happened.
Mount the loophole.
Yeah.
Mount the loophole.
But, uh, but now, now, the problem we have is we have to face this. And I know we all don't like it and some of us don't like to hear this, but I don't see where we can do anything about this. But we can do a lot going forward. If, if we can get some ordinances passed and stop this from becoming something that's gonna be everywhere, on the island especially. But I don't know how to, to stop this, because, uh, I mean, at the end of the day, and this is just my opinion. I feel like we'll lose that, um, and, and it's gonna go up regardless.
I agree.
That, that's just my opinion on, on that part of it. But, I mean, I'm not, I'm not, I don't, I'm not happy with it. I never like, like that, had that feeling where somebody got one over, you know? But at the end of the day, what can we really do about it? In, in this particular case, but we can do something going forward. You know, that, and that's, that's kinda where I'm at with it.
Is there any more discussion? Mr. King is asked to speak again. Is there any more discussion by the commissioners before I call him up? Mr. King, please come forward. And before you speak, let me say this. I know that you're the next door neighbor. It immediately affects you. And that's why I'm asking to come up a second time, but that's not a normal procedure for us.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. I kinda think some of the board members are looking at this wrong, as far as it's gonna eventually get built anyway. This is a second house on this lot. It's not a secondary structure. This permit should have never been issued, much less issued later once the house was completed. We got two houses going on here. It's not a pole barn. It's not a garage. It's not a mother-in-law suite that's attached and you can put a garage and something over it. This is a house on one side of this lot with the primary gonna be on the other side of the lot. And it's not one of the smaller lots, uh, skinny lots that St. George is mostly made up. It's a little bit, uh, it's not as deep. It's a little wider. These things are way on either end of the lot. It's not that it's gonna get built anyway. What's the difference? I know we can move, you know, we can slow things down from this day forward. This is actually adding a, two houses on one lot. That permit should never have been issued, whether he calls it a pool house or a, uh, anything. That's a second house. It's got everything in there to live except a stove. It's got a full, it's got a full-size refrigerator, dishwasher, laundry room, washer and dryer, bedroom, living room. Got everything. First thing he's gonna go in there is a stove once the CO's issued. Gonna pull, it already got power in there. Already got a, a, a plug for washer, uh, dryer and, uh, it's gonna... The fact that he tried to do this before he even applied for a permit should tell you what his intentions were. Especially when he's a builder. He knows better. He had a porta potty and an empty pa- uh, permit box on the site, not to draw attention to this. And I think he said, I'm gonna go down the road of asking for forgiveness instead of permission. So, don't get blinded by, well, it's eventually gonna get like an accessory structure, secondary structure. I get what your point there. This should not, this type of secondary structure, it's not a secondary structure. It's a second house. So, I feel like the board should put a stop work order, maybe hear from Doc, from Mr. Gaddis. And, and find out why, who was in the, uh, Planning and Zoning or the Building Department that decided this didn't meet a, a dwelling? What's the interpretation of a dwelling? Because I've looked it up. I don't see anything that says leave out a stove and you don't have a dwelling. Not on any, any of the state of Florida sites. So, that's gonna be the, the, the question is, why is this not a dwelling? It's not a pole barn or anything else that got built before. This is something that should never have gotten to the, somebody should have never issued this permit. Not ahead of time, should never issue this permit. There's one unattached dwelling in R one. That's the practice, as far as I know, been moving on St. George Island for as long as I've been coming down here. The whole practice about issuing the secondary, uh, structure permits has been kind of the practice. Okay, that's not what we have here. This is a second house.
Mr. King, could, do you have anything other than, you've stated the same thing five times.
That's it. Well, I'm just trying to make sure.
Yeah, we heard you the first time.
Now, Mr. Chairman, it, it, it has been, it was brought to my attention, because I asked this question. But there's a breezeway that connects the two.
No.
According to the plans, I look at that, that there's a, there's a walkway. Now, 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 you know, a breezeway, I may be wrong here, but this is what I asked of the building department. It could be a paver connecting the two.
Yes.
Could be anything.
A paver now?
Okay, we're, we're not gonna have back and forth.
What, what I'm saying is.
I'm just going to tell you.
Uh, you know, because whenever I was thinking breezeway, and, and bear with me, because I'm, I'm somewhat new at this. I'm thinking that it's a walkway that's, uh, you know, level in the sky. And I'm like, that's forty foot. There's no way he's like, well, actually, a breezeway can be any type of structure on the ground or in the air that connects the two.
That's consistent.
I'm sorry?
That's consistent.
Yeah, that, and, and that's where I was at with that. I was like, well, now, you know, that's why I made the comment that if this was a mother-in-law suite, because it is, it does say, uh, that, you know, a mother-in-law suite has to be connected. But, I mean, that language is in there. I seen that. But I, you know, that's what I was asking. I said, well, why don't they just call it a mother-in-law suite and be done with it? But the architecture wrote it up as pool house, because, you know, whatever. But the, but it's my understanding that these will be connected. And that's why I'm saying it's, it's gonna be hard to argue that. Now, we can go forward with whatever y'all wanna do. I'm just playing the devil's advocate with that. Um, you know, it's one of them got you moments. We got got.
Any more discussion before we vote? So, we do have a motion and a second to approve the stop work order. We've discussed it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Approving that, and we will start negotiations very curtly.
So, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, we tackled Brumman Park Security System. We tackled the metal collection agreement. We're moving on to the city of Caravelle letter of support. The city of Caravelle is applying for Division's Special Category Historic Preservation Grant. They're gonna restore the Caravelle post office. Kinda odd it was a post office, but they got a grant for that in accordance with its historical significance. The city asked for a letter of support, which is attached from the board as part of the grant application, as Ms. Tamara Allen always does. Uh, and it was due yesterday, Monday, as the board has supported other similar restoration projects in Caravelle. I asked the chairman to sign the letter with the understanding that it would be ratified at today's meeting. Board action to ratify his signature on that letter.
So, second with comment.
That was quick. So, we have a motion by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Ward. Commissioner Ward, you gotta get faster.
Now, uh, Ms. Betty Webb called me four o'clock Friday?
Yes, it was.
It was Friday.
Thursday.
Four o'clock Thurs- Thursday.
Yeah, because I got it to them.
And it's like, hey, um, I need you, you to sign a letter of support. I'm like, uh, for one, I'm not gonna sign it. If, if it's, if, if it's a board, it's board. If you're gonna want board support, you gotta, it's not just me. I'm one of five. So, uh, I said, but it was time sensitive, so we kinda were on a time crunch, because I had to have this turned in by Monday. And this was Friday, so, or Thursday. And so, I asked Mr. Marone, I got on the phone with Mr. Marone right then before he left the office for the day and, um, had him do this. So, that's why it's kinda, right then before he left the office for the day and, um, had him do this. So, that's why it's kinda.
It was supposed to be an advisory. And a lot of the things that I'm concerned about now, that's been brought to my attention about Mr., you know, with Mr. Nobles, uh, i- is, I'm going, I just have to say, I'm gonna be watching it. And I will not hesitate to make a motion to disband, again, that airport committee because of the way it's going and the way it had been. It's doing exact, starting to do exactly like it did beforehand. They, they make all the decisions. They come and tell the board what they need to do. Um, rusty screws and all. Mr. Ted Mostella has been the operations manager of that, uh, that, that airport for many a years. But I just wanna say, I'm very upset and very concerned that it has gotten a point with this airport committee that Mark Nobles had to resign. And I'm, I'm just letting the commis- the commission know that. And, you know, that's the way I feel. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. So, Mr. Chairman, I, can I, since it was approved earlier in the, uh, thing, can I move on? Or you wanna take another vote on this?
I mean, we've already voted on it.
Okay.
Can, Mr. Chairman, can I just say one thing? Commissioner Sanders, I'm not trying to argue with you or anything, but I have been keeping my ear to the ground on this.
I know.
I've been listening to every meeting. And the airport board has not done anything and authority and recommending stuff all the time, and we don't go with it.
Well, the thing, the thing I'm talking about is, is, Otis, is, it's not, it's not authoritative now. But you can see that slippery slope where.
Well, that's, that's what, I think that's our job, us five, to say, hey, get back on, on track.
That's right.
But also, and I'll make you a copy of it, but I've got three pages of accomplishments that we've made out there over the last year at that airport, that really, without that board, I don't think we could have got done. Because I know personally, I have a, a, a business, a job. Everybody up here has a job. I couldn't have dedicated the time and effort that this collective group brought all this to us. I mean, I think they're doing a great job. I, I hate that Mr. Noble resigned. Um, I, I, like you, think he, he has a lot of wisdom there. But at the end of the day, I, I think we're doing a good job. I think we're on the right path out there. We got a lot of things moving, uh, if, if, if anything, um, honestly, I think, and I'm not bragging, because it's in my district, but that's the one area that we're actually making some progress. Everything else seems like we just bogged down in it. And I'm just talking about collectively with, with government. And I know that's not necessarily this commission's fault. We have to wait on, you know, wait on things, the wheels of, of government, so to speak. But, but I, I think, I think we're on the right path out there. But, yeah, I mean, that's why I keep close attention in these meetings. Me and Mr. Marone have after-action reviews after these meetings. He sits in on a lot of these meetings. And, uh, but, but, yeah, I, I understand where we were in the past. I don't think we're close to that, uh, at all. But I just wanted to make sure that, that since me and you could have this talk.
Oh, yeah, we can.
I couldn't call you later and say that.
No, you're not. But, but, but it's like one thing right here. It says the, the board recommends the county to advertise for two board members at large by resume. Don't you understand one of the people that resigned come out of my?
Uh, now, hold on, Commissioner.
No, 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 no. No, no, no.
But since we're all here to discuss it, some of that's gonna be changing going forward anyway. Because we hired Ms. Mary Swob.
Oh, absolutely.
Free Cow and Development.
Yeah.
Now, we're not telling her to take over the airport, but that's what we hired her for. Because, because of the connections, the understanding.
For the TDC, the two vacant seats on the TDC, um, board. They were previously held by both chambers, I believe. So, they were, they were non-collectors of the tax.
That's right.
And so, we tried to advertise just for that, because there were three confirmed collectors of tax on the board. There's possibly a fourth, which takes us to a limit. So, rather than not put somebody on the board, have to take him off for some reason, for that reason, we, we tried to advertise for non-collectors of the tax. I am, so, Commissioner advertised for non-collectors of the tax. I am, so, Commissioner.
Good?
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, um.
Give me a hard copy.
Oh, yeah. You want it on paper?
Yes.
Not, not scanned? Or you want both?
Both.
Can, um, do we need to give you the recommendations, like top rank, who we think versus?
Yeah, I would prefer that you at least give me the top, if it's two seats, I would ask for the top four.
Yes.
From each of you.
Okay.
And we would go with that. And we can look at the top vote getters and we go from there.
Top vote.
Yeah, at least.
Both of these seats have to be non.
Non-tax.
Yeah, non-collectors of the tax.
And, and all the applicants are non-collectors?
God, I can't guarantee, I would look.
Okay, okay, that's what I was.
Maybe you should look at that first.
Really good gesture and service part. He wasn't just us. He fed the, all your constitutional employees. He also fed your other county departments. They were welcome to come and pick up to-gos, you know, for all the staff. Hopefully, people like Parks and Rec were able to get some. I would really, really hope. I know you guys think they're my spoiled kids, but I, it's just, I just.
They, they all were caught on. They, they all were carded on our county.
And my, we'll be able to pick up our packets, our travel packets at the next meeting.
Yes, you will, your travel packets and hopefully your shirts.
I hope the shirts are done.
Is he watching? Let me see.
So, uh.
No, he's not. You're bending your zoning ordinance.
Well, I want him to be involved and he has to be, because he sees it, stuff every day.
Yes, I'll let Attorney Schuler sit, bring up the hearing and then away we go.
Sounds good.
But I will have Brian, usually Brian Hall usually comes in front of you, the board anyway. I'm surprised he hasn't called me yet to schedule him coming to present the audit to you. Because if you remember that's the last time, how you guys got down the road about separating EMS and all that.
Oh, we got some good numbers for that.
Yes, he was presenting that report.
And, and I think that the, I think what, what I did hear, I don't know, I know that the room, and, and I think that the, I think what, what I did hear, I don't know, I know that the room that they had that meeting is probably not the most sound efficient, but it sounded like he had some things on that, things on that. Some, some things that he said that I could hear that.
Things we need to address that seem to kind of keep being out of our reach for whatever reason, because of consensus. I think it's time for this board to consider making that St. George Island a special district in Arizona code.
Yes.
To, to address field, the types of field.
Sorry.
All those different things we're trying to accomplish. I, I, I don't wanna slow what we're talking about now with the size of the accessory, secondary structures down. But as soon as we get out of the way, we need to look at between the attorney, our planner, everybody else, we need to consider and try to pass something that does a special district of St. George Island.
Sort of like one art.
Yeah, I, I agree.
On the accessory structure use, we, we have not, which has been discussed, but I don't think it's gonna motion a second to authorize the workshop.
The second meeting in July?
I'm good with that, if, but.
During the meeting?
During the meeting?
During the meeting?
You want it like after lunch?
Well.
I have these four orders set for four to five. So it'll have to at least be at five.
Can I, can I say something with that though? Uh, that's a secondary structure?
Yes, just secondary structure stuff.
You may, we may need to do that and even, the reason why is just here, your contractors are gonna wanna.
You're right.
They wanna chime in on that.
Five o'clock then.
On the first or second meeting?
Why don't we do it at five thirty? Make sure they could be here.
Five thirty? Were you gonna buy me supper?
Yes, that's not a problem.
Why?
Y'all heard it.
Call the sheriff again.
Of the second meeting.
The first and the second meeting, which, uh, you gotta look at your calendars.
I'd probably do the second because it, it, Mr. Chairman, I'm not trying to jump out there, but you know, you, we, we're already bunched up right there on that holiday.
Where are you talking about? Are you talking about this month or July?
He's talking about July.
July.
Well, that's, that's, that's a month and a half away from now.
Oh, you wanted.
We're at the first meeting.
We can do it.
I thought we were talking about two weeks from now.
Oh, you wanted that workshop?
Yeah, why not?
It's just a workshop.
To run an ad for workshop, right? It's not like a public hearing.
You don't have.
Or you wanna treat it that way?
We need to advertise.
So you don't have time to do it for the two weeks then?
Well, see today's the board.
I could get it in on Friday, it'll run next week, Thursday.
You could run the ad next Thursday and then you want to have the workshop the evening of the eighteenth?
The evening of the eighteenth.
Sure.
Well, I'd rather be out, I'd rather be here for that.
That's why they say June, that's right.
I forgot about that.
His schedule is tight in June, so.
Yeah, I forgot about that. I just was thinking about a month and a half away.
Yeah.
It feels like we're, we're.
If we have, if we have other, if we have other permits that are issued between now and then, what are we doing?
But why don't we just do, uh, well, I'm just, just for my.
I, I really don't, I can't tell you that because at the time I was just starting.
Uh-huh. I heard of trying to defend that tax. I mean, we're at three percent. Look around, Walco is at four percent. They have nothing to offer. We got more tourism than Walco and Gulf County, why aren't we up there? Why aren't we collecting this? This is the tax that the tourists pay, not the Franklin County residents. Shouldn't have to be exhausting my energy defending it.
Well, one of the things in addition to that, not really about that same to, subject, but about those same dollars, pretty sure the governor just signed a, a Senate bill from this year. That gives areas of critical state concern, which we're a part of, the ability to use our T D C tax dollars for workforce housing, for the tourism field, the industry.
That's one.
The service.
I mean, there, there's even more incentive to get that percentage increase. But I just feel like just talking to people in my district and, and other districts as well, but, you know, their biggest, and it, their biggest complaint about the T D C is they don't, either they don't understand it. And that, there's the transparency gap right there, um, which is what a lot of them complain about, to be fair, even former Commissioners. I mean, I'm, I'm, I've had this discussion and it's just getting old that, that, you know, I don't want it to sound that bad, but I mean, you know, it, it is getting to a point where why, why do we have to, why do we have to explain this? This is the one tax you plan this week, this is the one tax you should, it's funny you should mention that because I just finished it this morning. All I have to do is take Commissioner Lockley's signature off, um, change it to the, the current chairman. I didn't get around to that part of it, but I mean, it's, it's tiki tax stuff.
In other words, they've got a document to work underneath.
Yeah, they've, they've had it, they've always had my laws. Uh, but, but there, there were some typos in there. Uh, I corrected the typos, you know, for example, uh, there was a typo where instead of saying, completing the fifty thousand dollar cap on their authority to enter into contracts, it was a typo that said five dollars in one section. It said fifty thousand in one section, another section said five dollars.
Okay.
Uh, they want to change the word assure to insure, uh, not insurance, but E N S U R E. I mean, it's, it's cleanup work and I, I, like I said, I finished it this morning. I'll finish up, or except for the signature line, so I gotta change that part.
Thank you for that, that.
A little bit, I listened to it when he was at the, the Weems Board of Directors meeting. It was insightful, some of the things he said, what I could hear him saying.
Well, that's, that was about to say, I couldn't hear that. I'm gonna go look over there.
They've got a bad audio system in there.
Royce is not, don't look at me. But, I, I was just.
It's, I think it's the room that they're in too, it's the bad.
It must be. But anyway, I just, uh, yeah, I'm leaving it alone for right now.
And I agree with you, but like I said, I think this is the, we're finally got to, in the last year or so, we're collecting enough that we can do that without repercussions on what we're trying to store and capital out later. I guess that's what I'm trying to say.
I guess I'm just being negative, but just looking at the past, every increase that we've had, because I saw something, I argued with, with the CEO of the line. It seemed like as the hospital tax increases, we were collecting more, they seemed to absorb it more.
Oh, yeah?
So, I don't, to be honest with you, I don't really see that business model changing. I mean, that's kind of what I think they do.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, one more, one more thing, uh, um, and this is something with F D O T. I want to, I know last couple of years ago, we each Commissioner brought up items in our district that we felt like needed to be addressed. I know, um, this light, having a light here Avenue E and ninety-eight, I know I had some, uh, in my district, like with double lines and cer, certain speed limit changes. I know they're starting the process of trying to for some, for some, an issue, and I just wanna make sure where we're safe.
You all been trying to schedule the same type of meeting we had a couple of years ago?
If we, yes, as long as the other Commissioners are okay. I know we got a couple of new Commissioners since we've had those meetings with F D O T, and I think it'd be prudent upon us to do that. If they say no, they say no, but.
No, they'll come and meet one-on-one, while they will not do a standard.
Well, that's what I said, I mean, I said, but what I'm saying is, the last time, you know, she gave me a stack this big of reasons why they could or couldn't do what we requested. So, let's what, let's keep asking.
Okay.
Doesn't hurt to keep asking.
No, it doesn't.
Now's the, now's the time to have that conversation too, because they, they've already got posted on their website that the date they're supposed to start from what they're gonna do in between Appalachia, Appalachia Col Bay Bridge and the John Dorie Bridge. And then right there by the Mexican Restaurant and Tamers, it's gonna be one project. They've already got that for November is when they're supposed to be doing it. And then in April of next year, they're supposed to be doing from there all the way to the Caravelle Bridge. So now's the time to have those conversations and make sure some of those things are being included.
Yeah, and one more, sorry, the Butcher's Pen. I, I, I went out on the river the other day and I was on my jet seat, I didn't see Butcher's Pen. But, yeah, what, what's the update on all that?
Well.
Cause.
I'm still waiting to hear back from Legislative, but I did talk to them and they said they were gonna research and get, they don't want to back from Legislative, but I did talk to them and they said they were gonna research and get. They don't want to be by ourselves and doing it, uh, as an entity when you've been turned down there by everybody else, you can basically come to us. We started working with the lenders and say, okay, who do you have that at eighty percent, you're not gonna do it, but we can come alongside and take care of twenty? And we can do it together, that way we're not really on the hook, it's tied in with a lender.
Yeah.
And it's seemed to be working a lot better, but like I said, they will be coming, because there's money available for Franklin County residents in this fund too. It's not just a, you know, Tallahassee or somewhere else. The other thing I will say, and I forgot to mention when Ms. Aaron's here, just a lot of things being discussed. One of the things I've asked her to do, uh, on behalf of my district.